Good afternoon, everybody. This is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission Holding a virtual meeting, uh, hearing on Thursday, July 6th, 2023. Uh, before we start this evening, we have two postponements, number, items number three and number six. Item number three is for Chasmar Road for a final subdivision at that address. And item in the R seven zone. And the second one is item number six, which is Michael Jones, uh, trustee Vicky Johnson, Nilly LLC Network Development Company for a final subdivision at Zero Sunshine Avenue and Zero Florence Road, uh, in the R seven as well. This evening, we are going to have some, the alternate seated part of the time. Uh, Mr. Lowe will be stepping out to another meeting at 6:00 PM. And Mr. Barilak would be the seated alternate for him. In addition, Mr. McRae must recuse from item four and Mr. Barilak will be seated for him. Mr. Mr. Barilak will participate in the discussion on 240 GA. However, he will not be seated in that item if a regular is absent. Ms. Jenkins will be seated instead. But Mr. Barilak will be involved in the discussion and will ask questions, but he will not be, uh, voting on the item. Okay. So with that, we begin with the first item, which is a decision item. Blue Meadow 29 LLC for a final site plan and special permit at 29 Meadowcroft Lane. And, uh, in the RA two zone, uh, Mr. McRae, I believe. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Leroy. Did you have something?
Uh, I'm sure. Did you want that recorded at all? Otherwise I, uh, we can just continue without, um.
What recorded?
The decision.
Sure. No, it's not. Let's go ahead and record it. We got, we're recording now anyway.
I meant, I'm sorry, transcribed. I apologize.
No, I don't think so. We don't normally.
I, I forgot to ask.
We're recording, um, before we get to the decision, then Mr. Wells, you wanted to ask if you were seated for Mr. Low, which you, you are.
Okay, thank you.
You are voting on this app. So seated on this application is Albin McRae, Levy, Wells for Low and Yeski. Mr. McRae, you're on.
Okay, uh, this is 29 Meadowcroft Road, PLPZ 2023, 186 Final Site Plan Special Permit. Applicant seeking to approval to construct a single-family, uh, home. Pull multi-sports court bar and site improvements located at, uh, 29 Meadowcroft Lane. Where the total volume of all structures would exceed 150,000 cubic feet in the RA two zone. The commission finds that the detached barn will exceed the maximum of 1,200 square foot feet in size allowable for accessory structures. And that it grants a special exception for the accessory structure to exceed the maximum of 1,200 square feet. Zoning issue comments on 615 23 indicating proposal meets the requirements of the BZR. Health Department issued memo indicating approval of a 10-bedroom septic system. Engineering issue comments, uh, 614 23 indicating, uh, we submit a part of zoning permit. Wetland additional permit number two, uh, 2023 029, uh, that was issued on 4/24/23. And conservation is comments on 5, 615 23 indicating recommendations to the proposal. And EMAC issue comments on, uh, 617 23 applying the proposed energy conservation proposed. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. Uh, the final landscape plan shall be reviewed by planning and zoning staff. All adding of the sports court is prohibited. Organized tournament play, tournament or sport play is prohibited. Uh, there shall be no commercial use of the sports court, including paid coaches, events, practice or umpires. Section 694A, two of the buildings and regulations, the sports court area shall be not open to the general public. And, uh, public address systems and amplified music is prohibited. Uh, the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or into departmental issues.
I have a second for that?
Second.
Mr. Wells has seconded. Mr. Wells, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Yeski?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. And with that, we go to the next item. The next item is one from the Greenwich Public Schools and the Board of Education for an application at Western Middle School. Before we start, for those of you who are here to speak about this application in regard to the middle school, to Western Middle. I would like to make a statement, which is that the commission has approved already the part of the application that applies to the remediation. In fact, from what I understand, the remediation has already begun at the site. However, the application submitted to the commission was incomplete when the remediation was submitted. We separated the parts that had not been completed by the Board of Education. So, and delayed them to another meeting, this one, so that we could move forward the first night with the remediation. So for those of you who think or are here to tell us that we have held up the project, I entreat you not to say that because we've bent over backwards to move forward, whatever we can move forward, so that Western Middle can regain its playing fields as quickly as possible. Uh, so I'm just going to ask you that, uh, we will turn to you for public comment. But again, this is not about the remediation. The remediation has started. It is about the landscaping and the lighting primarily. Thank you. And with that, we begin with, uh, the application from Western Middle. Uh, who will be speaking for the school?
It should be, uh, well, I think Joe's going to start and then, um, I don't know who from Langen is presenting, but.
We have Joe Avani? Is that right? I guess it is.
Hello, everybody.
Hello, Joe.
How's, how are you, Margarita?
Divine. Okay, Mr. Divine. And who is Joe Avani?
I don't know.
Hi, how you doing? I'm, uh, I'm the landscape architect.
Okay, okay. Well, you're a man we want to talk to, sir.
I understand.
Okay, Mr. Divine, um, we're trying to promote you. There you go. All right. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Kelly, if you would go ahead.
Okay, great. They asked me to start it off. You guys know how enthusiastic, enthusiastic I am about this project. And Margarita, no, in no way, shape or form do I think you have delayed us. You've actually helped us by splitting this application. Thank you for that. So, uh, uh, so that that's great. We hope to move forward. They kind of asked me to talk a little about turf and, uh, where I find myself as well, as certainly as the board chair. Uh, I, the board has decided some time ago, uh, that turf was the direct, well, Margarita, you're putting your hand up. Do you want to ask me?
Yeah, I, I think it might be a good time to clarify something for you, so you don't say a whole lot that, you know, tire yourself out.
Oh, good.
The question about the turf was raised originally by the Sustainability Committee and the Conservation Department. In fact, there is no zoning regulation that pertains to the, the use of artificial versus natural turf. Unless this were a special permit application, we would not be able to change what you are doing, artificial versus natural. You are putting it in as artificial. We understand that you made this decision. A couple of commissioners did want to know, do you guys still want to know the timing and how it all went about? It was just informational fundamentally, uh, we don't, we cannot, we cannot forbid you from using artificial. Um, the way our regulations are, we raised the question only because we had been asked to do so by Sustainability Committee and Conservation. So if that saves you on a hot day from any extra, extra conversation, run with it.
Margarita, you stole my thunder, but thank you very much for making things move by more quickly. Uh, yes, what I'll do is, uh, I say, uh, our team has worked diligently, uh, to make sure we fulfilled what was, uh, incomplete, uh, prior to, uh, in our last presentation. Uh, and hopefully, uh, when our team does present to you this time, it gives you exactly what you're looking for. Perfect. And I guess, Joe, that brings you up.
Uh, thank you. Uh, can everybody hear me? I'm having a little bit of trouble.
And just a second, Mr. Divine, is everybody on the commission comfortable with that? Nobody wants to ask any questions. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Divine.
Thank you. I'm sorry if, uh, had a little technical difficulty there.
Okay.
But I'm glad you can hear me now. Uh, again, my name's Joe Divine. I'm a civil engineer at Langen Engineering. With our offices located at 555 Long Wharf Drive in New Haven. And we've been working on the site plans submitted for this application. As Joe indicated, we've tried to, uh, address some of the questions and comments, uh, that came out of the first meeting we had on this project that were outlined in the, um, the letter from the April 18th meeting. And so we've hopefully addressed those, um, issues, uh, with the set of plans that we've submitted. Um, and I just wanted to walk through some of those items in that letter, um, starting off with the retaining walls. Uh, the retaining walls are proposed in two locations, um, at the site, uh, one between the two fields and one around the backstop. And if you can share, um, perhaps Joe can share a plan that will make it easier to speak to, but.
Yes, I was going to ask, am I allowed to screen share on this? It doesn't look like I have permission.
Patrick, where you?
You are. I just made you co-host.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, so you can see our, our site plan and Joe will walk through with me here, I guess, and highlight some of the areas, but, uh, we have a smaller wall where his cursor is now at the backstop. Um, and then we have a, a wall that runs between the fields. Uh, as he's showing here, and those walls were added to the plan to allow us to set the fields at different grades. Um, rather than having one common grade between the two of them. Uh, the intent was to minimize the amount of earthwork that was needed to build the fields and try to lower the cost of the project. So it was a cost-effective measure, um, for us to, to add that wall. That wall's ranges from about six inches to just over three feet tall. Um, it's a cast-in-place reinforced concrete wall that we're calling for, that we've designed. Our structural engineers will certify, uh, that wall in accordance with the requirements. The next item up was the high location of fencing and sports netting. And the athletic fields are each surrounded by an eight-foot tall chain link fence entirety. Uh, there are swing gates provided at specific locations for people and equipment to access the fields. In addition to the chain link fence, there is a panel of sports netting on the north end of Athletic Field One. As well as along the outfield of Athletic Field Two. That's an additional eight-foot height sports netting that rises up above the chain link fence. Um, and that's designed to keep balls from hitting unsuspecting players and observers as well as to keep the balls in the playing fields. Um, the net has a mast and pulley system that allows it to be raised and lowered. Uh, we expect that the net will largely be in the up position, uh, while the fields are in use. The next question we saw was the final grading and the slope of the new pathways. This site plan here shows a new sidewalk from the north face of the building extending up to Field One that provides an accessible route from the school exit point. It's, uh, an inclined walkway, maximum slope 3%. But it does include, uh, two landings at thirds throughout the walkway path. It has a, a handrail and some plantings, uh, on the downside of that for slope protection. Um, so that would provide an accessible route for students leaving, uh, the building on the north wall and trying to get up to the field. Uh, in addition, we have some accessible parking facilities that we're going to create in the eastern parking lot. Um, and that sidewalk at those parking stalls, as well as the walkway up to the field is all uh, is an accessible route as well. So we have accessible routes from the parking area as well as from the school up to the fields. Um, so I think that addresses some of the concerns about ADA accessibility. Uh, the next things up would be lighting design and planting. So I guess I'll turn it over to our landscape architect, Joe Vini, to go over those items.
Yes, thank you, Joe. Um, and for the record, my name is Joe Avini. I'm a licensed landscape architect in the state of Connecticut with Langen. Before we jump into what's proposed, just a little bit about what's existing on the site. And we've been working a lot with the town, Dr. Kramer, um, as well as Arbor, Arborist, just to confirm what's out there. So we did get an Arborist report. And right now, uh, what's shown on the strong, the black line is approximate limit of removal for soil removal.
Hold on a second, Mr. Avani. Uh, Patrick Leroy has his hand up.
Yes.
No, I, I, I'll wait for, uh, Mr. Avani to finish. I just wanted to give the commission an update. I did talk to Dr. Kramer.
Okay, okay, great.
I, I'll let, I'll let Joe go with his, his.
All right. Okay, go ahead.
Perfect. Thank you. So based on the Arborist report that we did receive within this area, there's approximate 185 trees that are be, to be removed. Now, these range anywhere from about two inches up to 24 inches, and this is within areas where soil was determined that, um, there were contamination levels. So, um, of those removal quantities, the primary species that we're looking at are Norway maple, black cherry. Uh, there was tree of heaven located within here. Um, there's some eastern white pine, black locust. Uh, about 35% of the estimate, of the estimated quantity of removal are in, considered invasive per the CT Invasive Plants Council. Um, so that's 35% invasive. There's about 23% that were four-inch diameter, breast height or smaller. And that's not to say that that's a good thing. It's just to make note that a four-inch caliber tree is smaller than the larger mature vegetation. Um, and there are options to replace at a similar size. Um, and of that 185 trees, about 17% based on the Arborist report were determined to be in either poor or dead condition. And those numbers are not additive. Those are just separate from each other. Uh, just to talk a little bit what's out there, everyone's familiar. So today's, uh, and today there's more of a dense vegetation in this location. It opens up a little bit as we get through and towards the northeast, it becomes denser again. And then as you move around north to the northwest, um, much, much more heavy undergrowth happening in these locations. And then it finally opens up to more of a lawn and larger shade trees and some larger evergreen trees, um, in this space. And there, there is something about the way the landscape lays out today that we don't want to change, but we think that we can improve it. Um, and that's some of the efforts that we have been working on to move forward. Um, so as we move on to, excuse me. So if we just move on to some of the objectives that we had while we're going through the design. So one objective primary is reintroduce native species and restore this tree canopy that is being removed. Um, native species, as you saw, a lot has been uncovered by, or covered by invasives at this point. There's a lot of Norway maple out there. And really what we want to do is because we're removing this ecosystem is bring back, uh, this ecosystem better than it was before as much as we can. So leave it better than we found it. So introduce that native species as one of the goals. Another is providing seasonal interest, a goal two. Um, this, there is some reality to the fact this is a school. This can act as a, education as well, these plantings. So not only is a habitat, it could be educational. Um, there is a lot of activity happening year round. So summertime might be ballgames. Uh, but during the fall and then through the spring is really where the school season are when students are out. So providing seasonal interest through bark, through leaves, uh, multi-season, uh, colors, uh, just so that you can provide more of an informal learning center as well. Uh, moving on to objective three, uh, I brushed on a little bit was wildlife habitat. So different species for different types of animals, whether it be pollinator species like birds, bees, butterflies or birds and butterflies, um, um, more for bird species for trees, uh, and then other ground species, groundhog, uh, there's rabbit. So making sure that there is, we are improving that wildlife habitat that is inevitably being removed with some of this remediation activity. Number four is implementing more of a successional landscape. Um, and so just to explain successional landscape a little bit, you hear a term a lot after forest fires and how that's a good thing. And obviously this is not that case, but it's something that occurs really during hundreds of years. So it's not something you can mimic immediately. But it's the idea that you go from bare rock and then slowly you get little weedier species, perennials, grasses. And then eventually in those hundred years, you have larger shade tolerance species, hickories, oaks, uh, things that wouldn't have necessarily grown when it was bare, when it was sunnier. So part of our goal is to sort of spark that successional landscape, uh, install plants at different sizes on day one. That could mean installing plantings at 24 to 36 inch height that will eventually become a maple or an oak. That can also mean installing plantings at something closer to two to three inch caliper, up to four inch caliper. And you'll see on the plant schedule that we do have a variety of sizes within different species. So we have hickories, we have different oaks. And you can go, you could see they vary from barely one inch caliper up to four and a half inch caliper. So providing those different sizes. You can also see within these restoration planting sizes that they have some of the similar species. So a sugar maple, which will grow out to a full shade tree in the future, or sycamore. These are only being installed at 18 inches to 24 inches height. So really sparking that. And what's not seen in the initial tree count is that you're actually getting a lot more species, um, in the future than what you might get if you try to just replace it out of one-to-one caliper or one-to-one, uh, tree removal, uh, calculation. So part of the benefits of the successional landscape and different sizes is it really helps to promote diversity in species. Not only flora, uh, but also fauna, uh, different types of animals can enjoy different types of habitats. So it provides, provides that diversity and a good diversity equals a good ecosystem generally. Um, and then another objective is really provide a cost beneficial landscape. Um, there is some, there's a lot of reality to that. Is we need it to be something that will succeed. Um, and that's something that we have been working on with Dr. Kramer. Um, as we go through these plans, uh, and I'll talk a little bit more about the theory behind each area, but there are ground covers here or different ground cover treatments, I should say. Uh, there is mulch in this location. There is, uh, meadow mix in this location. And then there is lawn in this location. Um, and there was a lot of discussion with Dr. Kramer about how do we provide an area that, uh, both serves ecologically, but can also be maintained. Because if it's something that's going to be overrun with invasive species over time, there's no point in installing it in the first place because it's not going to be something that's really sustainable and being able to be lasted. So there is that balance that we had to play with. Moving on to kind of what our description or how we broke up this landscape area. Um, and I know I kind of went through the species quickly and I probably won't go too in-depth just to save everyone a little bit of time of every species. But we can, I'm happy to talk more about it. Um, how we broke this landscape area up. So first off, what we call the restoration zone, and I'll do a little bit of live, um, circling as we go through. But this is what we refer to as the restoration zone. The area over here is what we refer to more of as transition zone. And an area up here referred to as education zone. Uh, now what do those mean? So starting at the restoration zone, we define this as a higher density planting. It's really intended to restore those plantings that have been removed or are going to be removed, where there's a lot of woodland vegetation. Uh, there's providing a green filter is something that we call. And what that is, is you'll see there's a lot of shrubs around here. A lot of this flora is used to shady conditions. Um, and when you start break, cutting down trees, there's reality that you're opening them up to sunnier conditions. So installing some shrubs that have a little bit more mass versus a tree on day one helps to provide more of that shade so that that fauna and a flora on the ground in those areas don't necessarily all get killed off. And it's trying to help restore that environment as quickly as we can after it has been disturbed. Uh, and then there's a blend of larger and smaller vegetation. As I discussed, uh, there's a lot of different tree sizes. So a single species might come in three different sizes on day one, but it also come in those planting restoration sizes. And again, those are more of a 24 to 30 inch size restoration plant that will grow into a large tree at the end of the day. And that's what's mimicked, uh, shown in each of these little clouded areas, just so that everyone's aware. So that's the restoration zone. Uh, the transition zone is more of a medium density and it serves as kind of a segue from this denser-packed, um, um, restoration zone to the education zone, which is a little sparser. Um, and it's really a passive landscape. It has those characteristics of both zones on either side. Uh, and what's under here is the understory seed mix. So this will be a meadow seed mix, a low-growing wildflower mix, a lot of grasses. There are meadow, there are, um, perennials in there as well. So it serves a variety of different habitats. Uh, there are a lot of larger shade trees intermixed within that meadow area. And this is basically the area where Dr. Kramer and DPW and us had a good conversation about what's really the limit where we want this area, um, where we want the seed mix so that it can be maintained. So we're trying to make clear that when someone is on a mower, uh, someone who might not have this plan, they're able to come through and easily work around each of these pods, putting plantings more together. So they can go back and forth and it doesn't become more of an issue to maintain, uh, than a benefit to the community and to the school around it. As we go around to the education zone, again, very similar to what's out there on site today, uh, lower density plantings. One of the things I loved about the area we were here is that it really served as a continuation of the basketball courts to the west where kids can run up and down and they go up on that slope. There's larger trees where people can go out and almost sit and you could sit underneath the shade and have a little bit of area of respite. And I really like that. Um, and so we want to mimic something similar to that is where we continue off these basketball courts, off these recess areas, up this slope. And this is going to be a lower lawn area, right? We don't want our children running around in, uh, a lot of high weeds. I could tell you that firsthand and ticks and there's, there's concern that there. So we want to make sure this is maintainable. Um, moving on, so that's a general on the landscape approach. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions in terms of plantings, but I will move on to lighting as well before we, uh, before we finish off. So proposed lighting, all fixtures being proposed as part of this project are, uh, 14-foot height pedestrian fixtures. They are all, uh, full, full cutoff. They're dark sky compliant and they're all LEDs with a 3,000 Kelvin comfort color temperature. Um, for those who aren't familiar with the color temperature spectrum, 3,000 K is more of a yellow, white. Um, there were some concerns back in the day with the white LEDs and wildlife being confused for them. And since then, the industry standard and also in order to be certified as a dark sky compliant fixture, you do have to go down to 3,000 Kelvin, um, which is what we are meeting. All fixtures also along the property line have a house side shield, which eliminates light spill onto the other properties. And then any parking areas, any walking surfaces are illuminating, are illuminated, excuse me, per IESNA, which is uh, the Illuminating Engineering Society of North America. And, um, they're basically, they provide the recommendations for how illuminated a place should be to, uh, provide safe light levels. And that's really the purpose of this is provide safe light levels for any students who are traveling down this walkway. We know it's used into this area in the future. Um, and with that, that is the site lighting, just to give an image of what these fixtures will look like. Um, if my plan wants to load, just, it will be this version with the two arms, not the single one arm, the Kim Oro post-top fixture. Um, and again, it's more of a pedestrian scale. Um, and with that, I am happy.
You considered, um, I, I guess you guys have, our, our lighting regulations aren't out yet, but you considered all the, the trying to keep the, the impact on the, the, you know, the dark sky.
Yes, exactly. So these are all.
And that's why it's the cap. Okay.
Exactly. So all LED nodes are facing downwards. There's no glare. Um, if we took a look back at this image, nothing goes above that zero plane. So basically dark sky compliant doesn't necessarily mean that, but the zero cutoff means this. And you can see this is IDA dark sky approved and it mentions 3,000 Kelvin and warmer color temperatures only. And we are at 3,000 Kelvin. So that confirms just that we are meeting the dark sky compliance.
All right, um, folks got questions?
Mr. Avani, uh.
Um, oh, actually, hold on a second. Before we go to the questions, Patrick wanted to, um, throw in the comments from Dr. Kramer.
Yeah, thank you, my pleasure. Uh, so I was able to get ahold of Mr. Dr. Kramer today. Uh, we, I confirmed with him that the, um, the 66, uh, 23 landscaping plan is the latest and greatest and incorporates, uh, I, I guess the conversation that, uh, that Joe was mentioning about, um, talking with DPW and himself in May. Um, the, he did want to just mention that there may be small edits to the plan as typical with any sort of, uh, layout with the field conditions or if there needs to be species switches and he's open to all of that. But, uh, by and large, you know, this, this is a complete and accurate, um, plan, you know, a list of planting plans that he, he feels is appropriate for the site and, and therefore, you know, he has no issues for the commission to consider.
All right. And if, so we could, we could leave that in, in a decision if we, if we were to move this that, subject to Mr. To Dr. Kramer approving any amendments. Nick, if you would hold on a second, Peter Low is raised his hand.
Yes, um, did I, uh, did I hear that, that all the lighting were on, um, the, the same height posts? And, and they were 14 feet? What was the?
Yes. So let me show you the site lighting schedule. Um, so the fixture mounting height is 14 feet. Why you see pole length height is 12 feet is because the fixture head itself is two feet and that's. Why you see pole length height is twelve feet is because the fixture head itself is two feet and the fixture LEDs at the top of the head. So it is a fourteen foot mounting height.
And, and there are no areas that would be susceptible to lower light fixtures?
Um, so in terms of, so are you concerned with the height? Is that, um, so?
Exactly. The height.
So there's a couple of items that come to consideration with, it's a good question. Lower light levels, so bollards. When we start going to down to bollards, which are about forty-two inches, facial recognition goes away. So basically any downlight won't face any people that are standing above that. So you can't really, there's no facial recognition. And then there's also a, there's mischief. I've seen a lot of issues where students see bollards and they want to jump on them. They want to hop on them and issues arise and that's some unavoidable thing. So you can't always fix that. Can we lower it to ten to twelve feet? I don't see why we wouldn't be able to. It might require one or two extra fixtures in a stretch this long. But there's nothing saying that we can't reduce it if there is a height that we're really trying to get, drop it down a little further.
Nick, do you recall what we did at New Lab?
It's a combination of light poles and bollards.
Do you remember what the heights are?
It's about fourteen feet and as Mr. Veni is talking about, as you get higher, there's less fixtures. You just have to be careful about the side shields and the glare. This particular fixture he's got in mind, actually, I think is actually going to be acceptable for both of those issues.
All right. Okay, Mr. Lo.
Okay.
Okay, then back to you, Nick. You had started to ask questions.
Mr. Veni, it says all the lighting is on a timer. What is the hours of the timer?
So we'll have, so I'm not the electrical engineer on this, so we'll have to confirm that, but we could definitely get that response to you. And Joe Devine, I'm not sure if you have anything pulled up that might give us that answer right off the bat.
Typically, it's on a photo cell. Yeah, there, it could be either on a photo cell or timer. The intent would be, and I don't want to speak for the board of education, but those things are adjustable. But the walkways used, you know, by people traveling from the school to the north and back. And it could be left on for the entire evening for security or it could be on a timer where it turns off at a certain point at the, in the evening. The intent though is to not have a sidewalk meandering away from the school through the woods, you know, that's not lit well enough for people to feel secure.
Right. It would seem that actually a celestial timer or so it's on a dusk off at sunrise would be probably the most easiest way of doing this.
Yeah.
If it was a time clock, it's got to be adjusted all the time and.
Right.
Well, you don't want to leave them on all night necessarily.
Well, the schools lit all night.
Why do we let the schools light all night? I thought we've been having that conversation for a while that we should let the, that this is one of the issues for the energy management people that the lights at the schools are on all night and they don't want them to be.
This is kind of the exterior lighting. I guess this is an operational issue we discussed with Mr. Walton.
Arn, do you have a question on that? Do you have a comment on that, on where the EMAC is on that? You're muted, so whatever you say will lose unless you want to mute. Arn, Arn, unmute. Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, I mean, EMAC's pointed out the high school is a huge energy user and, and the neighbors are all complaining that the lights are on all the time. So. Yeah, EMAC will be very supportive of
Not having them on all night.
Not at one AM, there shouldn't be lights on inside the school unless there's a security issue.
Outside, outside.
Outside, if you've got people, you know, staying late, working on projects, working on plays, they got to be able to walk home. So outside lighting to help people in their transportation. Sure, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, but middle school, they're not going to be there till one o'clock in the morning, hopefully.
No, but they're not be there till nine or 10 and in the winter it's pitch black.
Yep, definitely. Mr. Kelly?
Well, the, uh, thank you. The, uh, the point of security, we work very well, very closely with Chief Heavy. And, and if security issues are certainly addressed as far as lighting the schools and parking lots where we can and outside locations. I know we have some restrictions at the high school, which we do have to shut some things down at, at times. We'd like to keep them open, keep them on a little longer. But, but we do work very closely with the, the Greenwich PD upon what they want to do with far our security and the buildings go. There is some lighting. I know I've been on EMAC now for a couple of years and we've never really talked about the, we talked about certainly the use of electricity within the schools, but we never talked about shutting the lights out at night. That I'd be concerned about just having dealt with the security issues at the school. Some lighting we need on. Certainly we want to be careful about what we're leaving on to conserve as best we can, but we'll work that out with, with Tom Bobkowski and Chief Heavy for security reasons that would lights on at night.
Okay. Right now we have two hands up, Peter Levy and then Nick.
Yes, thank you. There is an uplight for the flag pole.
Yes.
So can you tell me how that works and with the?
So in turn, so the state of Connecticut, it requires flag poles to be illuminated. So three fixtures per flag is typical. You can do two, but you usually want to light it from all angles. And so these fixtures and flag lighting is exempt from like lead calculations. That's pretty industry standard. But they can be turned on, turned off. Again, it's probably a control item. Typically they're on the same time clock. And we can review that with the electrical engineer on how we prefer to do that, where you might be able to turn it off at certain times, just so that it's not always on. But those are three uplights. They're in concrete footings. They would be surrounding shining up at the flag in this location.
Are those existing or are they new?
Those are new.
Are they new? And?
And I can just pull up an image of those. So this is the footing and then these are one of, this is the uplight. It's the smaller one. If we have the dimensions here, I don't have them on this cut sheet, but it's about 10 inches wide, six inches tall.
Okay, so.
And we mounted it into.
How high is the flag?
So the flag right now is twenty-five foot or thirty foot, I believe to the top of it. So we're looking somewhere between twenty-five to thirty feet is where the actual flag itself is going to be, depending on the size of the American flag that's there. But we want to at least illuminate most of it.
Okay, so that's the strong line. Okay, I get the idea. And the slope of the hill there, what is slope?
So slope in this location, that is the existing contours there. So right in here, we essentially have a flat pad where this flagpole is sitting. As you get further down, it goes to a three to one slope.
Okay. And I'm sorry, is it going down or going up?
This, nope, no worries. This is the high side of the slope and it slopes down towards the basketball courts. So this is the low side.
All right. Okay, so we'll be able to see the flagpole everywhere.
You will see it.
What is the slope though?
Uh, what is in terms of the material?
No, no, what is, what is, what is the slope? Does it?
So right now we're looking at three to one going down the slope to this edge. Yep. In some areas, I believe you get up to two point five to one. Joe Devine, you might be able to speak to exactly where that occurs, but in any scenario on that, we will be proposing a rose control fabric, obviously, which is more of the temporary stabilization. And then a steep slope mix, which has deeper roots and helps to establish on these slopes so that it can be, so that it can grow and stabilize that soil.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, that's, that's fairly steep.
Right.
Okay. So it's not a viewing area for the, the playing field. It's looking down on the.
Correct. This is actually higher than the surroundings. So this is the reverse of versus like an amphitheater tiered seating.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Nick McRae is next, followed by Arn Wells.
Okay, Mr. Veni, the, I just thought, to be clear on the sports lighting.
Yes.
The foundations in kind of what are being put in, but not the lighting at this time.
There is not lighting at this time. So no fixtures will be proposed or purchased or installed. With the understanding that anything that would need to be purchased would need to go back in front of this group for review and approval.
Okay. And, but the foundations are being put in as part of this. So, okay.
Exactly. So the infrastructure and the foundations are being installed and that way in the future, if this does decide to go through and it's approved, we don't have to pull up more impacted soils and go, go forward with that.
Okay. It's going to be the same foundation or footing as pedestrian fixture?
No. So this is a larger footing. So it's going to end up being, these footings are typically about a four foot diameter because it serves a larger pole. A fixture footing pole at the surface is about eighteen inches, so one and a half feet. So the larger poles are usually about forty-eight inches.
Okay. I didn't see that, that detail. So, okay. Thanks for the clarification.
No problem.
Okay, Mr. Wells?
Yeah, thank you. Mr., so I have two questions, one for Mr. Veni, one for Mr. Kelly. For Mr. Veni, just wondering, you know, as you know, climate's getting warmer and certain species are migrating north. And is your, your species plan taking that into account? So I, you know, twenty years out, are the trees you're planting going to be one sort of right in the sweet spot of Connecticut or are they looking back to what's doing well now?
Yeah, no, it's a good point. It's a great point. So I was actually speaking with Dr. Kramer on the same issue. You'll see in here speckled within, we do account for that as we work and obviously native ranges, as you start getting further north and things are getting warmer, certain species are sort of phasing out, like you mentioned. One instance that you could see is Virginia pine, pine is virginiana, really that northern, the northern reach of that currently. And that's why I can't say it's a fully native. It's highly, highly native. There are some very adaptive species in here and Virginia pine is one of them. And it really extends up to Long Island and its native range. And as the climate's getting warmer, we're, we're in Greenwich, Connecticut. We're getting pretty close to that area at that point. Another one is Quercus fellus, Willow Oak. For the longest time, I know when back when we first started, that really only expanded up to New Jersey, Southern New Jersey, mid-New Jersey. And we're starting to see it more up towards Rye, New York and towards Long Island. So that's another species that really originated a little further south and then moved upwards. So there are some examples throughout here, hickories, eastern red cedar, which is obviously natural or which is native to this area, but we have taken that into consideration. It's a good point because we're not going to be staying here at the same climate for all, all of time.
Well, and Dr. Kramer has been changing the street trees also. So he's very conscious of that, Arn. He's been, he's been changing our, our plantings. If you start to look around, you'll see that some of the species he's putting in now are different. What else, Arn?
Great, thank you. Question for Mr. Kelly. And that, that is regarding the flag is, I guess, is it the, the town's policy to have the flags of the school up all the time? You know, as you know, if you take the flag down, you don't have to light it. And I'm just wondering, it might be, you know, a nice ceremony, flag raising, flag lowering, giving the kids some responsibility for that. As an alternative to, you know, keeping it up all the time and, you know, showing spotlights on it. Just throw that out.
Well, Arn, that's a great suggestion. I, I thought you were going to ask me about migration now, but now that I'm an empty nester, I thought you were asking me if I was going to migrate south for the, for the winter. But your question is about the flag, because you are correct. An unlit flagpole, you have to take the flag down and then put it up in the morning, take it down in the evening. So we, we don't, presently at the other schools, we do not have them lit. We've been talking about that a little bit. We, but we were approached about taking them up and down during the weekends. Now it's a, it's a union duty. So there's an added cost we have as a, as a district to deal with union workers having to come in on the weekend, putting them up, taking them down. So the lighting option would save us having to do that. Your suggestion of having it as a kid thing, that's a fantastic suggestion. I like that. I'm going to float that past the superintendent because I think that makes, makes a lot of sense. That would be very patriotic and something I'd be behind. Thank you for that suggestion.
Thank you.
That's a very good suggestion, Arn.
Thank you.
Okidok. Arn, you're done with questions?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Hearing none, I believe you could take down your screen share. Alrighty. Is there any objection to us going now to public comment? There are no further questions from the commission?
Nope.
Okay, so Patrick, I'm, I don't know how many people are here tonight, but I, given the volume of emails we've been receiving, I'm going to assume we've got quite a few speakers. So, because we've got a lot of people in the audience, so if you would time people for two minutes. We are going, aha, there's Mr. Pop. So we're going to public comment now. Our first speaker is public, is, is public comment. Our first speaker is going to be Mr. Pop. And anybody else who wishes to comment on this application, kindly raise your virtual hand and we will call you in order. So just raise away and welcome Mr. Pop and if you would unmute and Patrick, whatever you want to do with the two minute timer is good. After that, we have a speaker who's called NOC.
That, thank you. I was listening to the presentation and I think they said there was a hundred and eighty-five trees that need to, needed to be removed. I am just hoping that funding for the tree plan is guaranteed or some, some way it's bonded before the project starts. And I referenced what happened at New Lebanon where two hundred and six trees were removed and they came up forty trees short on that property. And as a result, the parking lot is underplanted and including the bus loop. And the playground area is shadeless and there's no spot for the children to get a little rest or in the shade. So, so it's really critical that the tree plan is funded before any trees are cut. But I, but I like what I see. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pop. Just so you know, we did explore that bonding question you raised in a separate email, in an email, and apparently it's never been done from town agency to town agency. I'm going to turn to Mr. Kelly to answer the funding question. I, I think he's the one to do that. And I share your concern. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, if. Mr. Kelly?
That's, that's certainly a great question. I will look into the, the bonding of it. I thought if we.
No, no, no. We, apparent from what we understood, Patrick, you can, I, I took him out already. From what I understood, Mr. Kelly, we have never done bonding from a town agency. So we would not explore that. But the question for Mr. Pop that stands is will you have sufficient funding? Have you obtained the funding? And he was asking, it's obviously not a zoning question, but it's a community concern here.
We, we will certainly make it a priority and I certainly understand in, in some of the shortfalls in the past, it wasn't, going forward it will be. So thank you, Alex, for that, that observation, that, that reminder.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is NOC. If you would go ahead, followed by Mike Pacino.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Nicole O'Connor and I thank you for your time tonight. I'm a neighbor of Western Middle School. I live on the same street as the school. My son just graduated from eighth grade at Western and my daughter is entering sixth grade at Western next year. So I have a very strong vested interest in the outcome of this project. And I just wanted to go in front of the commission tonight to say wholeheartedly support this project as it's been designed. I think this team did an amazing job of giving us really a fantastic facility for our children to, to play on and learn on. And I also appreciate as a taxpayer that we're putting turf on the field as a way to help minimize the expense of digging further and further down in the, the dirt. And, and also after seeing that landscaping plan, I'm especially appreciating that it's a absolutely beautiful design. So it, it, just a complete win, win, win of a design. And I can just say, I asked my kids, what would they say? And my son said, nothing. I don't go there anymore. And my daughter said, man, I would love to look at my bigger brother and say, na, 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 na. I got new fields and you didn't. So if, you know, if you need one more reason to say yes, you could just put that visual in your mind because it, it would really be a great well-used facility appreciated by the children that go there. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mike Pacino. Followed by Claire Co. Gallen. Mr. Pacino, if you would unmute and then Claire Co. Gallen, you'll be up next. Yes, sir.
Okay. For those of you that don't know, my name is Mike Pacino. I was a prior PTA president down there in New Lebanon school. And I was state representative for the hundred fiftieth district, which encompasses Western Middle School. Both of my sons have gone and attended to Western Middle School. Unfortunately, neither one had the opportunity to be on any of the fields as two baseball players. And the sad part is my son, my oldest is graduating high school. So this has been going on for way too long. So I applaud you all for your efforts to get this project moving forward. I want to let you know that I am, and many, many athletic parents are in full support of the athletic turf fields going down. I was in Hartford, um, elected to the children's committee. We had, um, a discussion about the, uh, toxicity, um, issues that were being thrown out there. We found that there was no viability to any of those accusations except for the fill, when it came to fill. And crumb rubber has been, uh, decided that it's not viable. Um, there are an incredible amount of, uh, many, many other fillers that I know that will be looked upon. So I think that what we need to do is understand that the athletic turf and the recommendations from deep are the way that we need to follow forward with this and move this project completely forward and get these kids back out there, um, in their athletic endeavors. To, to have a competitive baseball program in this neck of the woods, um, you need us, you need an artificial turf. And we have so many different programs and right now I'm also on the Board of Parks and Recreation and we are at a disadvantage with our fields. We have a very low inventory. This will, this project will inevitably create probably one of the greatest, um, athletic complexes that the town of Greenwich has seen. It will increase the usage for all of the kids across the town, not just Western Middle School, but for every program that's out there. So this is incredibly important. And the one beautiful part of this is that-
I'm timed, Mr. Pacino. I'm sorry, I didn't realize, Patrick didn't wake me up. Um, I didn't tell me time, sir.
Oh, time, okay. Well, thank you all again for your-
Thank you very much.
efforts and move forward.
The next speaker is Claire Kilgallen. Sorry, Patrick, I didn't, I kept looking at the clock and then when it ran out, I missed it. So maybe just give me a, give me a hi-ho next time.
Can you hear me? I'm sorry, I, I did say time, I just-
No, I didn't hear you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, maybe I was engrossed in what Mr. Kilgallen, uh, Mr. Pacino was saying. Uh, Claire Kilgallen, if you would unmute. And, uh, the next speaker is Joe Picora. Ma'am, if you would unmute. There you go.
Good evening, it's Claire Kilgallen. I'm a Byram resident, um, very involved in the community, want to thank this commission for its support, uh, and moving this forward as expeditiously as possible. Uh, like Mike, my children, um, have come through Western and never stepped foot on it. And, um, I think this, I'll take it from the angle of the opportunity to the community at large. I appreciate the accessibility of the paths and the thoughtfulness to the plantings and the pathways and the safety. And, um, I do think it is important to have the lighting, um, from the safety point of view because children are children and children will hang out regardless of whether it says, you know, leave at dusk. So, um, I do appreciate everything that's being done to move this forward. It's, I see that it's an extremely thoughtful plan, especially with the plantings. And I would appreciate this commission's, uh, expeditious and full support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kilgallen. Our, our next speaker is Joe Picora, followed by, I think it's Patricia Adams. And then after that, Gordon Beinstein. Uh, Mr. Picora, if you would go ahead.
Yeah, um, thank you for having me speak. Um, the, uh, the only comment I have is I, I, I heard something about shutting lights off, uh, outside and, uh, the pathway leading from Western Junior High to Armstrong Court is a pathway that is not just used for the children, but used 24/7, um, by people can, you know, walking, uh, to either work from Porchester or to Armstrong Court or people that just want to walk. It's more of a pathway. Um, very similar to Hamilton Avenue, uh, Field, um, where people use it to, to exercise and get around the neighborhood. Um, so having it lit at night, uh, not as if it's a spotlight, but, um, but for safety purposes would be wonderful. And if there were any, uh, I'm not sure if the town provides those blue lights like you would see on campuses. Um, maybe one or two of them, uh, in the middle somewhere, um, that would be wonderful as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Picora. The next speaker is, is I think that's Patricia Adams. I just promoted you. Thank you, sir.
Hi, yes, uh, thank you. It is Patricia Adams. Uh, I just have a question. I was looking at the plans and given all of the conversation around artificial turf, I didn't see any hatchment basins or monitoring stations set up to actually monitor the water quality running off from the fields. Maybe I missed that in the plans or something?
Uh, does somebody from Langdon wish to answer that question?
Sure, I can answer that. There are outlet control structures, um, that have manholes covers to them that you could access to, to do any kind of sampling you want of the flow before it leaves the field area. So all the flows from the under drains of the fields go through these outlet control manholes, um, that have access points. So you would be able to do sampling if, if that was something you wanted to accomplish.
The question is, will you be doing that?
Right, that's what I'm trying to find out because the Byram Beach, the water from the Western Middle School field streams down to the Byram Park Beach and that beach is routinely closed. So I want to just make sure that it's not adversely impacting the water quality at the beach as well. So will somebody be monitoring that, um, whether at Langdon or at the town? I'm not certain who would be doing that.
Uh, we'd have to take that up with, with the board and see, you know, what, there's no direct requirement that I'm aware of, um, but it's something that we could take into consideration.
Well, Ms. Adams, I'll certainly put that on my list of things to suggest, uh, to the superintendent of things to be aware of. So thank you for pointing that out.
Um, the other, go ahead, go ahead, ma'am.
Sorry, one last question. I didn't see the school garden on the plans that you just showed there.
I was wondering about that. Yeah, go ahead.
The trees and the other planting that was scheduled. I just saw a path where the garden is.
Yeah, so that's actually one of the items that Dr. Kramer and I, I think I have to discuss a little further as to how do we restore that, uh, garden. There was discussion, can we put fruiting trees back there? There were some concerns about the sub soils and putting fruit on top of that, even though that did exist previously, doesn't mean we would necessarily want to follow it. But the garden is a feature that the students use. So that's one of the items that Dr. Kramer and I have to resolve just to see. It might be the same location or similar, but we want to bring that back.
Okay, thank you.
And Ms. Adams, from what I know, the beach, the Byram Beach closures are not related to Western Middle. They are historically, uh, Patrick may remember as well, they're related to I-95 and runoff from, rain runoff from other areas of town, particularly, um, when there are, there's, uh, lack of stormwater capacity. I'll put it that way.
Yes, and, and it, some of it has to do with the, uh, nature of the bay in, in Byram where the water doesn't flush out, you know, like you, it just because of the fact of it being an alcove and everything like that. So a lumber of things contributing to it, but I'm not a weird school being a-
A contributor.
Contributor.
It's not, it doesn't, the water wouldn't be flowing that way. But it's an excellent point because I've got a sewer, the sewer department raised a similar issue, which we will ask them. Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Gordon Beinstein. And Gordon, if you would go ahead, you need to unmute. There you go.
Yeah, thank you. You guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, well, first of all, as the, uh, principal of Western for the last 10 years, I just want to thank you all sincerely, um, for the path we're going right now. I've heard over this time how much, you know, the, being from this town as well, the conversation about this would never have happened if it was at Eastern. Um, I heard a lot and I was assuring my constituency that was not the case and you've actually proven that to be true today. Um, it was the, the delays were not from the town's making. They were due to the complexity of the soil and the agent, number agencies involved, the amount of work that had to be done, the cost factors. But, um, you know, I was concerned over previous conversations about the turf versus grass and what that might do to, um, the timeline of this. But I, you guys heard from our constituency.
I, I just want to, I'm in a, I, I haven't said this to Joe Kelly yet, but while you're both here, uh, I'm going to say it on behalf of the commission bec- for there are several people on the commission who wish with all their hearts that we did have a regulation about artificial turf. There are people on the commission who continue to have significant concerns about the long-term safety of turf and who have, um, sent in for the record, uh, areas where turf has been completely, artificial turf has been completely outlawed in, in certain municipalities. I believe one of them was Boston and if, um, but again, because there is no regulation and we stick to the law and to our regulations, we can't touch this one because it's not a special permit. But there is an ongoing concern by members of the commission about the long-term safety. We're glad that the fill issue is being addressed and I know I'm eating up all your time, Mr. Beinstein, so I'm going to give it back to you. But, uh, we're glad that the, the, the crumb rubber is, you know, that that's been recognized. I believe the state is outlawing it anyway. But, uh, long-term, the carcinogenicity still bothers people. Okay, sir, having, having burst your bubble there, is there anything else?
I just, I'm excited that the students at Western Middle School will finally get this, the field that they deserve and the town will finally have the field that we deserve. So thank you guys for all your efforts. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Karen Hirsch. Followed by Joanne Messina.
Hi, sorry. Um, I just wanted to actually, as a, as a, both a board of education member and a, a, a parent, um, of two former Western Middle School students. First of all, say thank you for all the time and energy and effort you guys have put in, um, and making sure that you're listening to all voices in this conversation. Much like, uh, Principal Beinstein, um, I would say this is something that is long time coming, um, something that the students need and deserve. It's part of their educational requirements to have access to this field and give them that access. I had two children who, uh, have never had the opportunity to step foot on that field that went through that school. Um, and, uh, in regards to the lighting, again, it's necessary for us for not, you know, safety, vandalism, you know, to, to make sure that there is none, um, and also making, you know, sure it's safe for the neighbors as well. Um, but ultimately I just really wanted to say thank you for all the time and energy because I, I think the students, uh, and the community overall will be exceptionally thrilled with this field and, uh, it will be beneficial for the entire town. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, ma'am. And our next speaker is Joanne Messina.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to also, um, first reiterate what Mr. Pop said at the outset that historically the landscape plan is that which is last done and therefore funds are not available. So I also want to, uh, make sure there is some guarantee that that landscape is being done. Also want to give, um, the shout out to Dr. Kramer for having the survey done of the trees because as you recall, there were 325 trees that were to be removed from this area that would really, really make an impact on the, um, benefits of the tree canopy for these students. So I was happy to hear tonight that it's down to 185. Um, hopefully the tree canopy will be, um, figured out as to what's being lost and therefore what can be replaced. Um, as we know, it's not all about just the numbers of trees, but it's about the tree canopy specifically in the western part of town. So thank you for your diligence, um, in, in paying attention to those really important issues.
Thank you very much, Ms. Messina. Mr. McRae, you have a question?
Uh, if public, if comment's over, uh-
Yes, ma, yes, sir, it is. And nobody else has a hand up?
Okay, um, two things. Uh, Mr. Mr. Divine?
Yes.
The collector pipes in under drains, uh, are embedded in the controlled cap?
Yes.
So it's not collecting any water that's actually in the, in the contaminated soils?
No, this is well above the groundwater table. This would be just rainwater that hits the fields.
Okay, and that the outfall of that actually follows the existing course and it goes down, uh, the hill towards the parking lot, it out into the wetland area?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the sewer department asked a similar question to what was raised, uh, Nick, they asked if any of the, um-
During the remediation, if the water is going to be collected?
And if any of the-
That was actually-
No, we don't foresee the need to do construction de-watering during the project. We're above the water table. The soils are somewhat highly, uh, conductive. And so we don't see the need. If, if we do find that that's not the case, but, you know, not consistent with all of our information to date, as we get into the project, we will have to go before and get a permit from sewer and from the state
Right.
to, uh, you know, process remediation wastewater and put into the sewer. But right now that's not our, our expectation.
Exactly. So Nick, that's exactly the question from, um, Mr. Feminella is if there is to be future, um, if the, if the wastewater from the remediation, uh, was going to go into their system at all, they would want to be alerted of that. So that would be a condition.
I read that in the notes. It's not-
Okeydoke.
Uh, Langdon's, Langdon's responses to that actually really covered that at set.
Okay, but I just-
Would be actually collected and, and separated.
But it, it should still be in, in our letter that should that ever change? That they should seek permission from the sewer department and the state?
Yeah, that's part, that's actually part of the, yeah, they, it's part of the acknowledgement.
Right, yep.
Um, one other thing, I just, for New Lebanon School, um, the landscape plan has been instituted, the trees around the bus loop are installed. There were no trees in the parking, in the playgrounds. And, uh, it's my understanding that actually once the project was completed, there were 40 odd trees that were left over. Um, that were going to be used in other areas in town because they were just the place to plant them in, on the New Lebanon site.
You'd want to know if someone still has those trees?
Uh, I'm not too sure what happened to the trees or the funding for them, but they were left over.
I think Mr. Kelly's, Mr. Kelly's already spent that money somewhere else because he was scavenging, he was scrounging for money for Cardinal. So, okay, anything else? Um, somebody else has raised a hand, but we had finished with the public comments, so, um, if, uh, Ms. Natali, if you have, it's, it's patrick.laroe@grenwichct.org. If you would just send him your comments, he will be looking for them, okay? Just send him whatever you wanted to say and he'll pass it on to us. All right, um, I had that question. Is there any further questions or comments from the commission at this time?
No.
Are there any objections to closing this item?
No.
Seeing no objection, this item is hereby closed. Why we would entertain a motion if someone were willing to make a motion, Mr. Secretary. And seated, seated, not necessarily, you could try delegate one day. So, uh, seated on this item are all the regulars.
Okay, uh, this is, uh, One Western Junior Highway, uh, Western Middle School Fields, PLPZ 2023 237 Final Site Plan. Applicant seeking approval for improvements to existing athletic fields, site drainage, landscape and lighting following remediation removal of impacted fill materials beneath the site on a 21.4 acre property located in the R6 zone. The commission finds that on April 18th, 22, 2023, the commission approved so a remediation plan, uh, under file PLPZ 2023, uh, oh, five, four, uh, for the site, as so as not to delay that portion of work related to the environmental cleanup. Uh, zoning issue comments, uh, 626 indicating proposal meets recurrence of the BZR. Conservation issue comments dated, uh, 62323 noting concerns, uh, on the use of artificial turf. Sewer division issue comments, uh, 5323 requesting applicant submit a signed letter acknowledging receipt of the P and Z comments and resubmit all partisan permit. Uh, engineering issue comments on 628 indicating resubmit all partisan bill, uh, and building permit. Uh, wetlands issued permit number 2023, uh, on eight, two, T222. Um, and E-MAC issue comments dated, uh, 61723, um, with recommendations to the energy conservation, uh, proposal. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. For the town tree warden, uh, the 6623 plan is acceptable subject to field conditions. Uh, like Fisher foundations and conduit for the athletic field lighting can be installed during remediation. So now, uh, so as not to disturb the soils cap at a later date. Um, any proposed athletic field lighting must return to P and Z A R C for review party installation. Um, per sewer division comment, the applicant- Pursuer division comment, the applicant has submitted an email and low acknowledging of the sewer conditions uh, dated six-six twenty-three. And the applicant shall address any and all remaining staff or interdepartmental issues.
Is there any further comment? Nick, did you say MI?
No.
Okay.
We did that already.
There is no MI related to this.
There is no MI on this.
Yeah, we, we did it back in April.
No.
No, not.
No MI.
Not at all, okay.
Not at all.
Hey, no, there's no MI.
Not an MI.
But it actually, interestingly, it was a member of the public who texted me and said, what's the MI? And I was like, what MI? I missed that. All right. So we are amending that motion to remove that, to remove the reference to the MI now, Mr. Levy.
I didn't, I didn't say anything about an MI.
Oh, we thought you, we heard, two of us heard, thought we heard, two people thought you said it. Okay.
Hey, there's no MI in this one.
In April, in April, there was no MI.
Right, and there was no MI in that one either.
Okey dokey. Um, Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Um, is there something you would like to say about artificial turf?
Okay.
Um, or do you want me to start it, which is-
Why don't you? Yes.
Okay, so um, Nick, help me with this. So uh, or, and Patrick, so uh, although the question, uh, the choice of turf natural versus artificial turf is not subject to uh, the scope of the current zoning regulations, the commission ha- uh, continues to express concern about the potential uh, environmental and health issues associated with artificial turf and uh, what else? Should we just stop there?
Yeah.
That sounds good.
Okay, is um, I don't think we want to put more on the record about that. Uh, there are, it was Boston that you sent us, Mr. Levy, that has completely, completely prohibited artificial?
Uh, whatever the article said.
Fair job. All right. So with those amendments, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. McRae?
Aye.
Mr. Lo?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. Uh, congratul- oh, congratulations to you guys.
Thank you, everybody. That's great. West side, best side, right? I'm supposed to say that after this is over. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Gosh, I was gonna quit, quit leave. I didn't want to leave, did I? Alrighty, okay. Thank you, everybody from Langdon. Nick, uh, you did say that um, it was, it was um, Mr. Cr- Dr. Kramer could revise stuff, right?
Yeah, yeah, I think the statement was that um,
Okay.
He thought it was acceptable and that uh, if there were field conditions, he, they could be minor adjustments.
So with that, um, we move to the next application. We are skipping number three because that has been postponed and we are going to number four on our agenda, which is Renata Papone, twenty-twenty revocable trust, Ido Papone revocable trust and Villa Gioya LLC for a final coastal subdivision at two-seventy-eight and two-eighty Otter Rock Drive to consolidate two properties into one, uh, combining into a two-point-three-four acre piece of parcel in the RA one. And with that, Mr. Cohen?
Uh, don't forget to call me back. I'll see you guys soon.
Okay, so um, thank you for the reminder. Mr. McRae is recused and Mr. Baralec is seated for Mr. McRae. So Baralec for McRae. Okey dokey. Mr. Cohen?
Uh, evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission, Bruce Cohen representing the applicants. This is an application to permit uh, the consolidation of two lots uh, at two-seventy-eight and two-eighty Otter Rock Drive in the Bell Haven area. Um, I think uh, the first image that we sent over to Pat uh, kind of illustrates what we're talking about. It's an aerial uh, photograph uh, showing the two lots that we'd like to consolidate. It outlined in yellow, Pat.
Um, are we waiting for that? Oh, yeah, Mr. LaRose looking for it? Okay.
So let me just uh, begin uh, while uh,
Yeah, go ahead and start.
Say that uh, Mr. and Mrs. Aldo Papone purchased the property in nineteen seventy-five as their residence and they resided there uh, for uh, their entire lives. They bought it as a single uh, parcel. Um, a parcel, there you have, but uh, they, they bought the two uh, parcel shown in yellow is a single uh, two-point-three-four acre parcel. It had been uh, part of the original uh, uh, Bell Haven subdivision, which goes back to the eighteen nineties. Um, in nineteen eighty-six, uh, wishing to provide a separate home for their daughter. Uh, they uh, went to the Bell Haven Land Company who has jurisdiction over these things for the purpose of dividing uh, what had been uh, two-eighty into uh, those uh, two lots. Um, both of which were conforming and uh, it allowed the Papones to build a uh, smaller house for their daughter on uh, on uh, two-seventy-eight. Um, it, it's shown again, Pat, on the, on a survey. Thank you. Uh, the entire parcel, blue and yellow, is what we seek to consolidate the uh, two lots uh, into. In nineteen eighty-six, uh, Bell Haven Land Company uh, approved this, the division. Uh, the uh, Ms. and Mrs. Papone went to P and Z, who determined that the uh, lot division did not constitute a subdivision or a re-subdivision. Time has passed now and uh, both uh, Mrs. uh, Mr. and Mrs. Papone have passed away. And the two properties are owned by a separate trust for the benefit of their estates. The trustees now wish to revert to the original eighteen ninety single lot configuration uh, for the purpose of actually conforming uh, the property to what, what is around it and making, thereby making the property more marketable. Uh, Pat, if you could go back to what uh, the prior, uh, you'll see that the two lots, when they were divided, were a little out of keeping with the immediately adjacent parcels and this sort of restores that the uh, guest house that had been built um, for the, their, the Papone's daughter has now been uh, demolished. Uh, the uh, trustees went to the land company who, subject to that uh, removal of that house and the approval of the lock and consolidation that we're now seeking, has also uh, approved this consolidation. In reviewing the uh, title records uh, and the history that we, I just reviewed with you, uh, we believe that the consolidation under the subdivision regulations does not constitute a subdivision or re-subdivision. And um, with this application, we're requesting the commission's confirmation of that determination.
Thank you, sir. Uh, questions for you? Can you tell me why in nineteen ninety-one they came forward to the commission on it when they had it as a free split? I thought that was interesting.
Uh, we, I think we've attached a copy, uh,
I saw the minutes, but I couldn't figure out exactly what, they still would have had the free split, why they were before the commission with it. The, they, they had the free throw, that's, it wasn't, it hadn't been eliminated yet. And yet they came before the commission. I didn't understand why they came before the commission.
To be honest with you, I'm not sure. Uh, it looks like what was approved, at least with the uh, portion that I have, was a uh, let's see.
Yes, because if you look at it, they did the, they did the free throw in eighty-six and then they come to the commission in ninety-one to get it approved. It just didn't, I didn't understand why five years later.
I think what, what happened was that the policy of the commission had changed in that period of time. In nineteen eighty-six, uh, you may remember-
We had the free throw.
We had the free throw and you did it on the basis of essentially attorney's opinion. So they didn't go before uh, the planning and zoning. This one did. Uh, and then uh, when that uh, approach changed, and I'm not sure when that happened,
Two thousand and five.
The commission uh, uh, assumed responsibility to confirm that determination, which is what we're seeking now.
Well, from what we recalled yesterday, it's two thousand and five that that changed. That's why, it's just confusing. I mean, I don't have a problem with it. It was just weird that they came forward with it in ninety-one.
I, I, I was here in nineteen ninety-one, but I did not represent this, this Papone.
Yeah, um, I, I just curious. Uh, I don't think it makes a material difference, but we didn't get rid of the, of the free throw until um, until two thousand and five. So that would not have been the reason.
Hmm, okay, I, I-
So, it, it, don't get it.
I wish I could.
Okay, well, I suppose it doesn't really matter. And that whole thing about denying it to approve it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
It's goofy. I, we stopped that at some point. Patrick?
Please let history not repeat itself in that fashion.
Yeah.
Strange time.
A more practical question for you. Uh, two-seventy-eight. Um, the sewer comments are that if it, prior to demolition, that you ensure that the, the sewer line is capped, et cetera, but it's already been demolished. Has that been taken care of with sewer? Are they happy campers?
Yes, I believe that they are.
I mean, you've acknowledged their comments, but you've not said whether or not you kept in de- on demo.
The, the, it was done under the permit and I believe that everything required by the permit was completed.
All right, all right. Um, those were the only two que- oh, I want, I had one more question. When they did the subdivision, that had they ever filed a map? When they divided it in two, when they did the free throw, I shouldn't call it a subdivision, when they did the free throw, did they file a map?
I believe they did, yes. Um, I think SC Minor did.
So tell me, now that a map then gets filed, that, that then has been subject to a map filing. And we have in our comments that it hasn't been because the subdivision itself, the general subdivision existed prior. Patrick, you're going to tell me the answer to this.
So it, it's all about whether a map was filed uh, as part of an approval of the commission. So a decision of subdivision or re-subdivision and a map related to that would be the-
Bingo. Nineteen ninety-one, okay. So now you've got my questions all in sequence, except for the sewer one. Nineteen ninety-one, the commission makes that finding, they then file a map. So why is-
They don't make a finding of subdivision, I believe, right? They make a-
All right, and that's the, okay.
It would be equivalent to today, us, the commission making a decision of not finding a sub or re-sub. And then any map that was uh, attached to that is not a subdivision action that automatically requires re-subdivision decisions.
Okay, I don't have any further questions. I'm looking at our deputy director because I know she's going to rewrite this for us, coming with fresh perspective. You know all the things that are making me uncomfortable about our regulation.
She's learning Greek very fast, I'm sure.
Yeah, well, we're all so, I mean, it's, it's open, my eyes are fresh. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this? No. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this proposal for two-seventy-eight and two-eighty Otter Rock Drive to merge? No comments from the public. With that, does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No.
Seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed. I would note that, again, that Mr. Baralec is seated for Mr. McRae and that otherwise all the regulars are seated on this item. And with that, I hereby move that the commission find that this is neither a subdivision or a re-subdivision. This is a proposal at uh, two-seventy-eight and two-eighty Otter Rock Drive to combine two existing parcels into one two-point-three-four acre parcel upon which uh, the, one of the existing houses located at what is now two-seventy-eight Otter Rock Drive has already been demolished. Number two-eighty is being retained and does not create any non-conformity. Uh, DPW uh, has signed off on six-twenty-eight, I think it is, conservation on six-twenty-three. Deep had no comment on six-twenty, I can't read my own handwriting, call that twenty-two. Um, IWWA had issued a green sheet on five-seventeen. The CEO had no comments on six-twenty-six. Sewer department had asked for an acknowledgement and had no further comment, except for the one about the demolition, uh, which we have discussed and that sewer comments have been acknowledged on seven-six. Um, I wo- would request um, that the applicant file a Mylar with the new consolidated lot at this time. And there are, I have no further uh, comments on that. Um, any other outstanding departmental issues should be addressed, however. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Lo has seconded. Mr. Yaski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. Lo?
Aye.
Mr. Baralec?
Aye.
Albin is also aye. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. Thank you very much. Mr. Cohen? And with that, we will open the, no, I'm sorry, we're going to go to Crazy Goody's LLC. Mr. DeAndrea, is he representing? All right, Mr. McRae, if you would come back. Mr. McRae? You might have to, there he is. Okay. And Mr. Andrea has raised his hand. Is he representing the applicant for Crazy Goody's?
He is, ma'am, sure.
Alrighty. And is Jeremiah Hancock also?
Uh, I'm not aware.
Okay, Mr. DeAndrea?
Good afternoon.
Hello, is Jeremiah Hancock with you?
Excuse me?
Jeremiah Hancock, Hank- Hancock, is he with you?
Not to my knowledge. Gil Olds may be present and he would be um, joining.
Alrighty, but not Jeremiah Hancock. He's got his hand up.
Let's see what he has to say.
Hello, I'm here.
He took it down. Okay, hello, Mr. Els. Okay.
I was just waiting uh, to be let in. Thank you.
Okey dokey. So uh, we now go to item number five on our agenda. It's Crazy Goody's LLC for a final site plan to construct a three-hundred-and-five, three-hundred-and-six square foot addition to extend the first floor retail use, demolish the existing rear stairs and to reconstruct the stairs for interior, for exterior ingress, ingress and egress. Uh, I'm reading it all to you. At three-ninety-eight Greenwich Avenue, I've read you the whole application because we discussed the zoning issues on, on the parts of it yesterday. Uh,
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, I am representing Crazy Goody's LLC and they are the owner of the property at three-ninety-eight Greenwich Avenue. Um, as you pointed out and succinctly um, mentioned, it's three-hundred-and-six square feet on the westly side of the building. As you know, um, now, the building is located between the front and rear building lines. Yesterday, I think there was a little confusion as to whether or not that was um, not um, correct, but it isn't correct. It is correct and therefore um, we are allowed to extend the building within that area without providing parking for the retail use. The lot is very small, as you can tell. It's twenty-three-hundred-and-eighty-eight square feet and it has a building with a total floor area, floor area currently of forty-three-hundred-and-eleven square feet. The purpose of the addition is to expand the retail section on the ground floor um, for Round Hill Music, which is a retailer of many things, including, but not limited to musical instruments, recording and collector's items. Gil Olds can add to that. I'm sure he has some additional information specific to that um, use. The upper two floors of the building have been um, and will continue to be used as office. They are considered legally non-conforming, as confirmed by Katie DeLuca and Jody Couture in an email from Mr. DeLuca dated June sixteenth, twenty-twenty. Basically, I summarize very quickly based on the documentation, document- Basically, I summarize very quickly based on the documentation documentation provided, the uses on the second and third floors are legally nonconforming office uses and can continue as such regardless of the owner. That was from Katie dated June sixteenth, twenty twenty. Copy to Jody Couture. As proposed, the um access to the retail area will be via one door on Greenwich Avenue, basically centered in the retail space. And that's shown on the architectural plans G one hundred. There is a door on the northerly side of um the building, which provides access to a stairwell that leads to the second and third floors of the building for the office space. The basement area, as proposed, um will be dedicated to computer equipment, guitar storage, and um other storage uses for the retail um such as inventory. The architectural plans demonstrate that there's going to be a terrace on the top of the roof, the flat roof of the addition. There'll be a fire escape um from the third floor exiting onto the roof of the of the addition, and then another set of stairs to get the um um occupants down to ground level. Uh, Mister Olds um presented the application to the A R C. Um, they received support with a recommendation from A R C to review the windows with H D C. Uh, Mister Olds then presented the plans to Stephen Bishop, who reviewed it with the uh members and summarized in an email that um their only concern was that the windows should be historically significant, which would be six over one. Uh sewer issue of the building, as you know, the sewer department is always eager to repair and replace if necessary. However, in March of thirteen, March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty three, the sewer department issued a sewer final um for the building, which involved relining or lining the existing lateral. So the sewer has all been addressed. Then the construction um would not increase coverage because the back of the building is currently paved. Therefore, the site is um eligible for an exemption which we filed. Um, so there'd be no increase in runoff and no change in the drainage um patterns. As I mentioned earlier on, the lot is small, twenty three hundred and eighty eight square feet. Access is provided by or through or over an eight foot wide right of way um located to the south of the building. Um, in accordance with the site plan, you notice that there are parking spaces diagonal adjacent to this building. They are dedicated to the the building on the corner um at four um at three ninety six Greenwich Avenue. That's where the uh M and T Bank is currently located, formerly Peoples. There is another easement behind or to the west of three ninety eight that provides access to three ninety six, which is just to the north of the um the building we're discussing. I will say, having been down to witness the operation on a couple of occasions, that the use of the right of way, which provides access to several properties behind uh buildings on Railroad Avenue, it does take a significant amount of cooperation. It's a tight area, especially when cars are parked um on the south side of building number three ninety eight. But I think that um the owner is um willing and able um to continue that cooperative nature during construction, and we're hoping that um everybody in the neighborhood can accommodate that um proposal. And through that effort, then we think that the access for construction will be quick and efficient. Mister um Olds can now again expand on this, but is going to seek um approval or um permission to rent two spaces directly in front of the building, thereby preserving the handicap space and the spaces in front of the neighboring properties to the north. By taking away only two spaces, he'll be able to um unload construction vehicles with their tools and equipment for the day, move them in from the front and access the addition um as soon as the construction of the foundation is complete. So with that effort of um of planning and phasing, um there'll be little little impact on the use of the easement and the right of way. In that simple and brief presentation
Thank you.
is all I have to offer at this time.
Thank you, Mister DeAndrea. Does anybody on the commission have any questions or comments?
Uh, Mister DeAndrea?
Yes, sir.
Um. Uh, just one one note. I'm sure actually the design team knows this. They should be aware of a possible issue with the curtain wall that faces the uh parking lot. Um, a glass wall, uh it may have to be fire rated, et cetera, so on and so forth, but look at that code.
Right.
Um, I guess we'll hear.
Could I just speak to that?
So wait, wait a second, but before we get to that.
Of course, I apologize.
So um I guess we'll we'll we hear from, I guess, uh Mister Hegney's representing the neighbors.
Yes.
The the easement, that's all been resolved? The the parking. Yes, I just want to make sure. I I just understand. Keeping keeping that easement area in the back is open?
Correct.
Okay.
I'll let um Mister Olds discuss that. We have both had conversations with um. Well, I've had a conversation with Mister Hegney. Now Mister Olds has will recount his conversations with owners um on either property. But as I mentioned, the idea is to um provide efficient access and cooperation, which will expedite um the construction process um and streamlined to the benefit of everyone. So.
Okay, uh, the building area is.
Speak to that in more detail.
The building area is nonconforming as it exists. So you're requesting an increase in the nonconformancy?
Yes.
The building area um is not um building coverage, uh Mister uh DeAndrea is the is the number we're looking at.
The building coverage.
Oh. Okay. Excuse me for a minute.
Well, he's addressing that. I just wanted to um yeah, point out the the curtain wall glass uh that was planned, we've removed um because of it being on the property line, and we're staying with the inverted bay window. And the updated drawings I had shared with uh Marissa and Doreen and um asked that they be shared with you all, but um just so you know, the existing inverted bay window will remain, so there won't be any issue uh in that respect.
So if we go back to um building area, which I think is what Mister MacRae is questioning, right?
Yes.
Okay. So under.
Building coverage, right, Mister Mac?
No, yeah, but she's got it here. Um, no, lot coverage isn't what he's asking about. He's asking about building coverage.
Well, we're asking, I think what we're discussing is the maximum building area in the C G B R.
Right.
So in the C G B R, the initially, the requirement is thirty percent. But by the single asterisk, if I read it correctly and then based on experience, the um existence of the front and rear building lines eliminates any concern about the building coverage.
That only applies to F A R.
No, I'm reading from maximum building area. So in the C G B R, maximum building area is thirty percent. However, because it's in between the two building lines, front and rear, then there is there's no, it's not applicable, I'm quoting, not applicable to buildings or additions thereto between the front and rear building lines for any lots that existed at the date the building lines were established. So this building is not new, therefore it complies.
Now, the area outside of the the building lines, the rear building line, Mister uh DeAndrea, is that over thirty percent, that that rear piece?
Mm hmm. I I don't know what you're asking.
We're not building over the rear building line.
I believe there's there's not an addition.
There's an addition of three hundred and five, three hundred and six feet, which increase, which decreases your rear setback from thirty four and a half feet to twenty one and a half feet.
I'm gonna find the drawing. I I thought I understood it, that you were building outside the rear building line.
No, sir.
Definitely not.
No.
Um, and the and the neighboring buildings um up up Greenwich Avenue.
Let's pull the drawing before we go there.
Have all actually built even further.
Correct.
Okay, could we pull the drawing? And the second thing is, Patrick, on the on the building area.
Yes.
Um, uh, Patrick. Um. If if I read six two oh five, I if I'm if I'm reading six two oh five, not applicable to buildings or additions thereto between the front and rear building lines for any lots that existed at the date the building lines were. So it's not it's not applicable at all?
Not applicable at all. And also, if you.
Wait, wait, I'm talking to Patrick, Mister.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know that.
Sorry, I said Mister, I said Patrick a couple of times in there.
Uh, Madam Chair, so yes, that's correct. My our understanding is, well, we we've been interpreting that more recently than I think perhaps in the last thirty years, but we we went, we had another application. I'm struggling to remember the address where we had this discussion at length, that Mister Hasland was the applicant for it. And uh when we went back through the history of the language, that our understanding is exactly how you read it. Between if the building existed when the front and rear building lines were created, the building coverage is not applicable to that part of the structure. However, anything outside of that, and that's what I was pulling up, um would be strict to standard zoning.
All right. And you've almost got it.
Almost. Yeah, thank you very much.
And then just for continuing, the addition is more than ten feet or more than ten percent of the lot depth, so setbacks are compliant in that regard. The minimum side yards, as we know, are are zero. So we believe that the building as proposed and the addition is all compliant with the C G B R.
All right, I still can't really see it. Well, Patrick, can you can you guys see it well enough?
The 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 heavy dash line is parallel.
This is not the.
Right on the middle of the parking space. There you go.
That, okay, so that this area here is the parking lot that this this box here?
That's the that's the preservation of one parking space on the property for convenience of the owner.
Understood.
It does not, it does not affect the access along the westerly boundary, which straddles the rear property line. There's a, you know, dedicated, no parking area that everyone abides by because it if um it facilitates turning and maneuvering in and out of that tight area.
All right. Okay, now.
So Madam Chair, for purposes of discussion, again, this appears to be the established front building line.
And the rear building line.
To be the rear and the 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 edge of the foundation of the new addition is in this area. So.
Doesn't encroach.
I, yeah, so I would, I would, I under, looking at this, I agree with Mister DeAndrea that this is all between the front and rear.
Okey doke.
The the westerly portion, if you will, um is is the stairwell representation. The area where we show thirteen point one feet wide and twenty three feet of north to south, that's the addition. And then to the left of that is the stairwell, the fire escape apparatus to get down from the third floor of the existing building. Currently, there are stairs there being reconstructed.
This this area is covered?
Excuse me?
This area is covered, the stairwell?
No, it is not.
Okay, I did. Did has has code enforcement looked at this too? Because I I I my understanding is exterior stairs would have to have some shelter over it, so.
Uh, we'll certainly investigate that. If it's not correct, the architects went through a very extensive code review here, so if um if that has to be reviewed again, I'm sure they will.
Okay, I I would just, I know it doesn't apply because we're not the building, the front rear building line, but even if there was a roof over this, this would still be building coverage and and lot coverage. Right, so I just I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you.
Okay, so the discussion we were having yesterday that um we had misunderstood the drawing and that we thought that it crossed the building, the rear building line. So now we go back to uh Mister DeAndrea, when when building, when applications on the avenue come before us, they normally only go to H D C. Because it's a National Register Historic District. Somehow or other, you ended up at A R C.
I can explain how that happens.
Okay.
Would you like to hear?
I would actually was wondering, do you is what one of the things I'd like to do is not have both groups giving you an opinion?
I understand.
Okay, because we find that that is a great amount of torture for applicants. Because you get more opinions. So would you be amenable? And Patrick, is it possible? I don't know if Patrick's still there. Oh, good, there he is. Is it? Can we switch it so that you just go to H D C? Get the window fixed?
Yes, we've uh we've already done that, and they've accepted or suggested the six over one, and we've accepted the six over.
So you'll, if there's a delicate way of dropping the A R C thing.
I thought it was the other way around.
No, they went to A R C.
Right, and A R C wanted them to come back to a full meeting.
And we and we want them to go to H D C because it's a National Register Historic District. We would prefer to do what we always do on the avenue.
We we will, and we've done that.
Okay. Great.
Do that. We have a, we have correspondence from the chairman.
Yes.
Steve Bishop, who said that the consensus was everything is fine, except they prefer to have the windows six over one. And as Mister Olds just expressed, they've agreed to that, and the um plans will be sent back to confirm.
Now, you would go to A R C for any lighting or signage. But for the facade of the building itself, we would just ask you, just for the sake of purity, unless you feel like being a ping pong ball, in which case be our guest. No, didn't think so.
No.
Okay.
We're good on all aspects of that.
Sorry, okay. Um. All right, so I that was a concern I had just because it makes the process bad. Is there, are there any questions or comments from the commission otherwise?
No.
No questions or comments. Um. Do I have any comments from the public? Mister Hegney now here. All right, Mister Hegney. There he is. Hello, Mister Hegney, just unmute and you'll be all set. Hello.
Evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. For the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of four ten Greenwich LLC and three ninety six Greenwich LLC, they're the owners of the properties to the north and to the south where M and T Bank is and the parking that's associated with that building. And the building to the north, which is where, but I'm sure there's retail on the first floor, but I think of it as the place where Classic Barber is located. Uh, since I only go to that door. Uh, uh, I had sent the letter uh to you uh through uh Marissa uh and uh copied a number of documents. Uh, there was a stipulated settlement, which was a result of some fairly heated uh litigation between a former tenant in the building at three ninety eight. Uh, that resulted in that area that's listed as no parking uh within my client's property at four ten. Uh, since that tenant is no longer there and the stipulation uh has been terminated, uh, the only real access is that eight foot right of way from the deed that uh established it in nineteen thirteen. Um, although that no parking area has uh is shown still on the um on the pavement, uh, it uh it has been terminated uh through the operation of that uh that stipulated settlement. Uh, this is, as uh the staff pointed out, and Mister DeAndrea also said, uh, this is an active driveway um and uh does need to be kept open. Uh, the other concern that my clients have is the undermining of the foundation at three ninety six. Uh, uh, we had uh saw the letter from uh Mister Olds with assurances. Uh, we would like the commission to uh incorporate those uh into its decision uh that they will be required to have parking on and for storage and and demolition uh available on Greenwich Avenue uh that the uh the construction phasing plan, which incorporates. The construction phasing plan, which incorporates that be submitted prior to a zoning permit. That structural engineer report. Be submitted prior to zoning permit. As detailing what. Steps need to be taken in order to ensure the foundation of the building at three ninety six. And to prohibit any staging or parking in the eight foot right of way. If we could have those that my my client has no objection to the. Construction of this as long as their property is protected and the and the right of way is maintained as open.
So the open right of way and the protection of your foundation.
Those are the two concerns, yes.
Now, on the concern about the foundation, how would you how what would satisfy that if we? And inspection, I don't know how to word that. Does anybody know?
My my suggestion is that there'd be a report from a structural engineer prior to zoning permit. That. Will state that the construction of this three hundred square foot addition will not impact the structural integrity of the building to the north.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Thank you.
Mr. Hegney, when you say building to the north, what address is that?
It's three ninety six.
Three ninety six, but the owner that he's representing, the person that. It he says he's representing four ten?
I represent both four ten and three ninety six.
Okay. All right. All right, Mr. Town Planner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just, this is more of a heads up for everybody, but Mr. Alls and and Mr. Dandry, this is intended to be office on the upper floors?
Yes, it is. It's the second and third floors are are fully office.
And and the reason that they think they can do it is they have a letter from Katie saying it's a nonconforming and existing nonconformity.
Yeah, that's not, I I I understand, I read that, I understand that decision. That my only concern is that, just warning that if anyone wants to convert this to residential. I believe the code compliance is going to require retrofitting of the space. So I I don't want to make decisions for you, but if you are thinking about that in the future. It may be worthwhile building it to that standard now since you have the building open up, but. I I just wanted to put that thought in your head because it's not, it would require return to the Commission for approval, but it would also. Require some retrofit and I just wanted to make you guys aware of that.
Understood, and thank you. We're we're fully intending for the second and third floor to remain office for the foreseeable future and. You know, we would address that if it ever changed with the Commission again separately.
All right, thank you, Mr. Alls. Any further comments or questions from the Commission?
Um, Mr. LaRoe, Ms. Kulkowski, did we get the acknowledgement letter for sewer?
The sewer. As I remember.
Was that a, was that a?
Hold on, hold on, yes.
Was that the question? Did we have a letter from sewer?
Yes, and somebody replied, it was benign, they acknowledged it, they signed the acknowledgement and they said they thought the comments were benign. Isn't that what you said, Mr. Alls? Somebody said that. Is that you?
The critical element of it is that the lining of the sewer lateral was done and signed off in March of twenty twenty three, so the hard part's been done. The other comment was relative to whether or not we were going to come outside the building, but any plumbing, if necessary, would be internal to the existing infrastructure.
So no, but that's not the question. The question he's asking you is whether you did the sewer acknowledgement letter, and I thought I had seen it.
I did not take part in writing another letter since we already had a sewer final.
Mister, Mister DeAndrea. Mister DeAndrea. All we're asking is if you acknowledge the sewer comments, you know that we have.
The answer is, I did not prepare a letter.
You don't have to.
Current sewer comments, no.
We we do acknowledge them, yes, and.
We have to write a letter, Gil.
Yeah, you.
Madam Chair, there's an email in your folders.
That's what I.
Uh, that was, came in today. It said, we've reviewed it and that they look, it it says benign.
They look benign, that's what I remembered, and I just couldn't find it just now. But yes, who signed that that they don't know they signed it?
No, it's Mr. Alls said that he he sent that email, so.
Yeah, Mr. Alls, you said I acknowledge the comments and they look benign.
Yes.
You did that. Mr. Alls has done it, okay.
Yes, I have.
All right, Mr. McRae, we got you. I just remembered how cute it was that he said the word benign. I was picturing, I was, I was trying to picture what malignant.
Four, four, four months of of work with the sewer department was the malignant part.
Okay, all right, let's go, Mr. McRae, anything else? All right, any other comments from the Commission? Does anybody object to closing this application at this time?
No. So are we going, is it going back to HTC?
It is going, it, well. Here's the problem, Mister DeAndrea, no, no. Incorrect from a statutory point of view, HTC is a statutory agency. I believe that they have to meet, have a quorum and take a vote. Having a letter from the chairman that says there is a consensus without having held a public hearing, I believe does not satisfy state law.
So.
Does not meet FOI, it does not meet FOI.
We went to ARC first because we were told to and and they approved it, subject to us sending a satisfactory window detail.
They asked you to come back to a meeting.
No, definitely not. They they authorized, they authorized.
Look, you guys, you agreed to just.
Administrative only.
Mister DeAndrea gets it and agreed to just deal with HTC.
I have a.
Wait, 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 stop.
No, no, don't go on, please.
Nick, stop.
I'm reading this right here. It says round hill music. It says return to a meeting, submit PDF plans. That's what it says in their last meeting.
I know that.
That's the question I have, and this is six twenty one. The question I have is it go back to round hill or or back to HC, HC or ARC?
Then, okay, Nick, thank you very much for that. Mister DeAndrea has agreed to only deal with HTC, which is what we do on the avenue. We are not going to send it back to ARC. Because ARC does not do the avenue. It was a mistake that it went to them. Second. I believe that under FOI, the chairman of the HTC cannot write and say we have a consensus. He must hold a public hearing. He must hold up publicly noticed meeting and take a vote that is available to the public. Mister LaRoe or Ms. Kulkowski, would you please advise me if I am incorrect?
I I I don't know what the requirement would be because, again, this is not a certificate of appropriate situation. This is the Commission. Asking for advisory opinion, so I I don't, I don't know offhand what the requirement would be from a state law standpoint.
Okay, so let me just, yeah, FOI, I'm just saying, from an FOI point of view. The chair of a commission can't just say, hey, I talk, send an email saying, hey, I talked to people. And everybody's okay with doing a six over one. It doesn't, I can't do that.
Right.
Okay, it isn't whether or not they are doing a certificate of appropriateness, it is whether they have met the requirements of the Freedom of Information Act. And they have held a publicly noticed meeting. And made a decision as a body. So Mister DeAndrea. What I I would suggest is that you work with Patrick to resolve that and with Mr. Bishop, so that you don't have a big hassle. Mister McRae, we don't want to set the precedent of maybe you to go to ARC and maybe you go to HTC on the avenue because we have a long standing, okay?
Completely agree with you. I think it was actually.
Talking over me when I was trying to say that, I do not appreciate that. Okay? All right. Thank you. All right, Mister DeAndrea, if we we have closed it, we're going to close this, I'm going to close it again.
Did we?
Yeah, I was trying to close it.
But.
I don't believe we close it, and if it still has HTC to go to, I don't know if we can can't close this.
We have a comment, Nick, from. The HTC Chair that he believes they can reach a consensus. I believe that we can just say, since it's not a certificate of appropriateness. We can say, subject to a final review by the HTC. Patrick?
I I agree, I that we have a substantive comment that says that there's something that we can agree to. So I don't think there's an issue with. Moving it to that point. I just wanted to go over past practices with the avenue. Because I think there's some confusion amongst the Commission about what goes to where. It has always been additions and upper floor changes. I've gone to HTC. This storefront signage and lighting that was been the ARC, so.
We said that, we've said that. I made that very clear to the Commission fifteen minutes ago.
I I'm sorry, I did not hear that. Sorry, Madam Chair.
I said to Mister DeAndrea, more the point. I said to Mister DeAndrea, for signage and lighting, you return to ARC. For facade changes, you go to HTC only. That is the practice of the Commission.
Okay, I didn't hear that. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
That's all right, maybe this Mister McRae wasn't. I'm sorry.
I was talking over everybody.
Yep. All right. Okay.
May I close? Usually I get a chance to close, right?
Well, no, we're you're you're in pretty good shape. I think all you got to do is we're going to fix it so that you get the HTC. Is there anything else you want?
No, no, I was going to say that I think that the the suggestions Mr. Hegney made as conditions of approval. If you add on that we at least confirm whether or not legally we have to go back physically, that could be a condition that we satisfy HTC. Because you wouldn't have anything to do with it at that point.
That's exactly right, and I think they're only going to have an issue with the window and you're also, we're also going to condition you that you return to ARC only for the landscape, for the, I'm sorry, the lighting. And any signage changes.
Agreed.
Okay. With that. And we do Mister Hegney's two conditions. He wants a letter from an engineer.
Yes.
And he wants the act of eight foot accessway protected.
Agreed.
Okay. And then there's a subsequent engineering inspection.
Correct.
All right. Okay, does anybody object to closing this item at this time?
No.
Seeing no objection, this item is therefore closed.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I'm gonna give this a whack, okay? And Nick.
You want me to do it?
Um, are you ready to do it? I had the feeling that you weren't. But I'll jump in.
Let's see what we can do.
All right, so you have, we hereby move approval. Um, go ahead, you start. And I promise I will let you finish your sentences.
Okay.
You're in the doghouse, dude. Don't do it again.
I don't think I've ever left. Nine, three ninety eight Greenwich Avenue, PLPC twenty twenty three, one nine, uh, one nine eight. Applicant is seeking to construct a three hundred six, one story addition to the rear of the building. And remove and replace the rear staircase. At three ninety eight Greenwich Avenue in the CGBR zone. The Commission finds that zoning issued comments on three twenty six, meaning BZR. Uh, the engineer of record, civil engineer recorded file of exemption. Sewer Division issued comments requesting an acknowledgement letter, which was received on seven five twenty three by email. ARC had reviewed. And suggested comments. And Commission noted notes that the nonconforming second and third floor use of office is acceptable. Therefore, motion to approve with the following comment. Prior to zoning permit, the applicant to return to HTC. For final review and return to ARC for signage and lighting. A construction phasing plan shall be submitted. Indicating two spaces in front being rented for construction purposes. And indicating that the the eight foot right of way at the west side of the property keep is kept open during construction. That a third party structural engineers report is required. To outline the undermining procedures for the construction of the. Addition. And a post inspection. To secure that there is no impact to three ninety six Greenwich Avenue. And I think that's it. Did we miss anything?
Well, all staff departments have, first of all, that all step and that they have a drainage exemption and that they've signed this, so. Okay, so the next thing is the Commission finds. That, and Patrick, help me a little bit with this wording because I think it needs to go in the decision letter, that the Commission finds. That because this proposed. Addition is within. The rear building line. The increase. In. FAR.
Building coverage.
No, Mister DeAndrea, you don't say a word.
Sorry.
Yep.
That was me, Madam Chair. I I will say building coverage.
The increase in FAR, building coverage and the reduction in the rear setback. Do not. Are subject to the provisions of six two oh five and therefore do not increase a nonconformity.
I would just add front and rear building line in there and the and the description is in asterisk three of the of table two oh five, so.
Yeah, it's really the only only the rear building line that is impacted here that affects, but okay, we can say front and rear.
Well, i- it's it's the only one that it's approaching, but it you need to have both for qualification under the regulation, so and this has that.
All right, okay, so I I think that I think what we have to make on the record is that we are not creating a nonconformity. That we are not enhancing, increasing a nonconformity. And with that. We can go for. A second.
Second.
Mister Levy has seconded. Mister Yeski, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mister Levy.
Second, I mean.
So I know, I do that. Like, oh, my God, I'm so tired. Mister Levy has has voted yea. And Mister Lowe, who we're holding up, sorry.
Aye, bye.
Aye, Mister McRae?
Uh, aye.
Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five, nothing, and we can go to the public hearing.
Thank you.
Bye bye. Okay, so from here on in.
Thank you.
Mister Barilak, um, public hearing, Mister Basili, sound test.
Hello, I hear you just fine.
Okey doke.
All the cutting in and everything, I'm hearing.
And all the cutting remarks? And the and the slapping, the virtual slapping, you got all of those? Okay. Okay, so. Uh, next up, Mister Tessie is of a representing the applicant. Just to go over the seating, Mister Barilank is recusing from this item, but he will. Be participating in the decision and Mister. Mister Jenkins, Ms. Ms. Jenkins.
All right, let me, let me try. I'm.
Yeah, yeah, that's clarified.
I I I'm recusing, but will participate in the conversation to the extent it it. Only to the extent that it impacts things done by the Affordable Housing Trust, of which I am the chair.
I think that's good, and Ms. Jenkins will be seated for Mister Lowe. Uh, Mister Tessie is representing the applicant, and with that. We go to item number seven, two forty GA LLC application. For a final site plan and special permit to construct a forty thousand, four forty thousand. Three hundred and forty four square foot, four story, forty unit assisted housing development. Which is under section eight thirty G of the Connecticut General Statutes at two forty Greenwich Avenue. In the CGB, CGBR and CGIOZ zones. And with that, Mister Tessie, if you would go ahead. Um, hold on a second, Mister Tessie, um, oh, no, I'm sorry, Mister Malkin has his hand up, but he's actually opposing and you get to go first. Go ahead. Wait a minute, you look like you're in Connecticut.
I am in Connecticut. I look like I'm trying to stay out of the shadow, but I keep going back into it.
Okay, that's all right. Okay, Mister Tessie.
It matters, thank you. First, I want to welcome Mister McCary to my house, so. Come, Nick. I am, yes, John Tessie.
You mean the doghouse, right?
Is there any other one for me? I'll try to get out tonight.
Yeah, I haven't even started yet.
This application was described by you, Madam Chair, so I will not describe it again. I would like. I would like to say I am here representing the owner of the property. Um. As a subject matter of the application and that I have here with me. Uh, Mr. DeAndrea, the project engineer. Project Coordinator. Kevin Molnar, uh, our architect, design architect. Uh, Ron Hoina, uh, and our traffic engineers and our landscape architects. I believe particularly given uh uh the content of your staff briefing yesterday that we do not have, that we're not that. There's no reason to put in on a full bore um presentation for you going on. Uh. Perhaps longer than necessary, uh, but I want to let you know that everyone is available to answer questions. Um. On the commission's part or as a result of uh. Area resident comments. Or if I need to call upon them as we uh go through our uh application. Uh, with the commission members. This uh application uh comes about after a pre-application. Was submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission, as you all know. And after uh our client took the opportunity of. Working with the. Uh, Housing Trust Fund, Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And Mr. Barilak uh as chairman. Um, to arrive at the plan before you today. A couple of points here, I I know you all were discussing. Uh, the twenty percent versus the thirty percent um. With respect to this application, thirty percent being the set aside criteria, as you all know, under eight thirty G. Um, the twenty percent came came about uh as we discussed what it would take. For uh our client to cut back. The originally intended six story building, six floors of uh residential and two stories of uh. Lower level. Parking uh to something uh less. Um, spent a fair amount of time, uh, actually the numbers crunchers did, not necessarily myself. Um, but with my encouragement to work together. And we were pleased to arrive at a uh mutually acceptable reduction. In the original concept for the property. Uh, regarding this particular building. Um. And. Interesting that. In your s- just. So you know, and you may already know. Under if this were a. Six one ten application for moderate income project. Under your regulations. The percentage would would be twenty percent. For the number of units. Uh. Um, so it gives you some context here. I thought it was worth at least bringing that up. Say that it's not an artificially low number. Um. But rather it's. It's consistent with what you would expect for a project of this. Uh, size. Uh, in the in the affected zone, which would be C G, which would be uh C G B, uh, C, C G B. Which is this building's location. No part of the building is in the C G B R zone. Was discussion yesterday with respect to the. Uh, fire department. Access uh was brought up by the D P W, the concerns about the trucks entering into the site between the two buildings. That would be to the west of our. I'm sorry, uh, existing building and east of the proposed residential building. Um, actually, uh, both Mr. Hoina and. Mr. Molnar had spent a fair amount of time. With. Went to trap with the uh fire marshal and also with Peter Robinson of the Building Department last year. When the building was a six story building. Uh, as to uh what would be a satisfactory approach to the fire marshal and to Mr. Robinson. Uh, regarding fire access to the site. And I believe you did receive actually uh an email today. That I don't know if it got disseminated to the commission members. Um, has.
Mm hmm.
And also I sent an email, you know, citing the particulars they were looking for. Uh, that Mr. Molnar had forwarded me, which is basically um. Drop curb. Uh, access. Uh, to accommodate the trucks. That was the recommendation of both Mr. Robinson and Mr. Natali, uh, the fire marshal. So that that issue, we believe, uh, should be off the table. It's an important one. Um, but it's one that was thought out. And reconciled with the the appropriate powers that be. On the subject of. The uh. Air uh apartment apparatus. Access to the building as as needed for uh his sign off. There was some discussion made yesterday on the uh parking. On the site. Uh, there may not have been a little confusion, but we've submitted a a report, a traffic consultant against here is also a parking consultant. Um, and we submitted materials. That. Demonstrate. That actually statistically speaking. Um, this site can accommodate. Both the new building and the existing building expected. Uh, expected uh parking needs. Um, except I think it's between like, excuse me, during the business days. Uh, twelve and two o'clock. And that was one or two parking spaces short, if you will. Now, parking itself. As I think Madam Chair, you certainly have said a number of times, is not a factor in any thirty G. Application, certainly not a material factor unless you get to the point of. The issue of safety and and our traffic engineer is already appined on that and you have a separate. Uh, opinion or memorandum from our traffic on that. Um, so unlike some other eight thirty Gs and. Applications that uh you've seen or gone so far. Well, we're actually providing here, our client is providing here. Uh. The whole. Sufficient parking. Um. And the backdrop is of having parking spaces available in the street for anyone, customers of the building, for instance, the commercial building. Um, we don't see that as that issue as getting anywhere near. The uh. Uh, level of a uh a safety. Or health issue. Uh, criteria. To be um. Nestered at, you know, adversely basically to the application. We don't see that at all. Uh, I think we've documented it more than sufficiently. Um. With regard to. The sewer department. Um. I saw the last memo from. Mr. Feminella. Um, where he's asked for flows. Um, it's coming a little late in the game. Um, Mr. DeAndrea did provide the flows.
No, no, he's not. No, wait, he's not asking for flows. His comment was that. He has not had a chance to analyze the data he received because it was given to him late in the game. He's not asking for them, as you just said, he is.
No, no, I I I shouldn't have used the word asked. I should have used the word asking, asked for them.
We're gonna need an addition on that house.
Um. I need some water here. Not, excuse me. But I'm saying we we supplied that information. We see he needs more time to resolve. Um, and uh, we're respectful of respectful of that. We've worked very closely with Mr. D N G and myself. Actually, and Mr. Molnar. With uh sewer department. We don't envision any issues there. You know, whether or not. Mission wanted to make a decision or didn't want to make a decision because he he hasn't given a final commentary. At the end of the day, we need a sore permit anyway for the building, right? And that's not going to be just my decision or the commission's decision. It'll be. It'll be D T D P W through the sewer division and Mr. Feminella. Um, but we're happy to continue to work with him, so too with D P W. Or. Um, over and above the issue of. The fire app apparatus access, which we believe should be put to bed. We're we're submitting the uh. Requisite modifications to our site plan. Um, to adjust the fire market. Issue, Mr. DeAndrea can comment further on it, but he's confident that. The issues or the requests are easily attainable on our site.
Um. Miss, Mr. Tessie.
Yes.
If I might ask you, I think the commission has looked at a lot of this. We know some of the outstanding issues. One of the ones we talked about a great deal yesterday. Uh, was the uh, you have. Uh, a neighbor who is opposing and you have a letter from the opposing attorney. Do you wish to comment on that at this time or do you wish to wait for the opposing attorney to speak?
Um, I have a fair amount to say about that. I I think it's best that the commission doesn't have to hear me twice. So.
You would.
You will let Mr. Con speak. Um.
Okay.
Excuse me what the. What the commission, uh, what what comments you made particularly and also Mr. Leroy, I I think they're all spot on and Mr. Barilak.
Okay.
Um, but I'm not going to start editorializing now.
Okay.
Go on to.
All right, we'll give you an opportunity to do it later.
Yes, we would like to do it all as a summation. I would like to hear that one. Uh, I think this application that we've presented to you at the end of the day is a fairly balanced. Application and it's at the right location as we've stated many times, and I think it's important for this community that this commission also, but. Um. Now, work work with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, as you said you would, and work with applicants. So that uh affordable units can continue to be basically constructed and made available to our population. Uh, for the foreseeable future. And you got to start somewhere and. We're happy to bring this application to you because we think it's the right application at the right time, as I just said.
Okay.
Um, with that, I I. I'm happy to answer specific questions. Or refer to our consultants in their various disciplines.
Okay, so commissioners, do you have any questions or comments on this?
Mr. Tessie, uh.
Yes.
The Department of Public Works uh issued a uh traffic memo.
Yes.
Six twenty nine. We submit final to prior to final.
Yeah.
It specifically from as I'm reading this talks about the turning radius and the turning movements in the street.
Mm hmm.
Not particularly on the site, but in the street.
Right.
Okay, so it seems to be that actually we're talking about. Uh, there your emails is talking about the A meeting that you had with the fire marshal.
Right.
Um, and the chief planning examiner concerning internal. And this seems to be all about external. Um, and our. One of our main charges is safety in the streets. We've heard a lot of issues. With neighbors about safety in the streets and how congested that section of Elm Street is.
Yes.
Um, I think that's the real thing is actually to start to really can. Put a concerted effort to. Is what happens in the street. With the training movements of vehicles entering and exiting the site. This talks about pumper trucks and center and that kind of thing. But you have how many units there? How many units are in here? Thirty two plus eight, right?
Forty.
Forty, okay, so there's forty people moving in and out.
Right.
So we're going to have moving vans. We're going to have delivery vans, all kinds of things happening here at the same time. Um, the other thing I would say is that I'm glad that Mr. Molnar. Um, and Mr. DeAndrea has uh met with the the fire marshal and all that. But I would like to have a something definitive in writing other than an email from your associate to say we met. I want to know exactly what they're thinking in writing so we can actually get something into the record on this.
Well, we do have their comments, Nick. We do have the fire department's comments.
Do we? I don't I don't remember saying it. I remember the email.
They want the. It came in. Sorry, Madam Chair, go ahead.
Yeah, they, thank you, um. Um, that they wanted the mountable curbs.
Oh, yeah, I saw that in an email, but I don't believe I saw it.
But no.
A letter from them.
No, you got it in an email from staff who had received the comments from the fire department.
We'll follow up. Mr. Molnar is happy to follow up with.
Oh.
The fire marshal and we can talk more, Mr. DeAndrea can, because we've been, he's been working on the uh. The request regarding turning movements. I think you have to be. You have to realize that. Um. The issue. The. The turning movements on the site are being worked on. They accommodate all trucks. Mr. DeAndrea will tell you, well. As D P W said. Um, for the for the fire apparatus. That would be an issue, but if there's a fire on the site, the street's going to be blocked anyway. There's not going to be anybody on the street. And there's isn't a property, I I in in the whole town probably where those trucks wouldn't wouldn't have to cross the median line. There has to be a level of practicality here. And in. We'll deal with it as much as we can deal with it. Fire marshal understands it. Um, people do move in and out. I I certainly think that people can be. Scheduled to go move in and out of this building. In a way where they don't all move in it on one day. Uh, but I don't believe, I I feel strongly about this, that the idea that people moving in out, moving in and out of a of a building. And having van trucks come to move them in the building. Constitutes anything close. To a safety issue that the courts would recognize. Because it would make no sense. Most virtually all. Buildings have that same issue when people are moving out in and out, and that to me would sound more like an excuse than a reason to deny an application. That's my.
Ms. Jenkins has a question.
Um, yes, um, I'm still troubled by the parking. Because you have forty units, but you have sixty four bedrooms. And you're saying that you only need forty parking spaces for the residential units. You've got a short, a serious shortfall and you're. The traffic consult, I believe, talks about the availability of on-street parking or the availability of other parking lots in the neighborhood. Including Town Hall, which I believe that's that is still an unsettled question. Um. That section of West Elm is so congested. And it's overparked and it's double parked now and there are businesses. Directly across the street. And, you know, the residential uh building next door. And I'm very concerned that. You've got a lot of people looking for places to park and moving in and out and trying to find parking spaces. Where there really is not a lot of things available now, much less adding sixty four bedrooms. Um, so I'm kind of concerned because the congestion is bad, the pedestrian situation is not good. The sightlines are difficult on Benedict Place and on Field Point. Um, from West Elm. And so I know it's quote only a parking issue. But it becomes a safety issue when you're adding. More cars um in an area where there's already significant so uh congestion. And I think saying that it would have an in the your traffic consultant says minimal insignificant impact. Two, two or three more cars regularly on that street is going to make it. Significant because it's already overparked and basically my concern is. The congestion and the pedestrian safety, much less the uh turning safety in and of the building.
Well, I I know that street very well. I've lived here all my life. I I don't see where the problematic sightlines, first of all.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Tessie.
Number one.
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
Number two is we've submitted a study by our. By our traffic engineers. Using the. Traffic engineering criteria to assess. To assess the needs of. Uh, the parking needs of this property. And as I stated earlier. They show statistically that the property actually works well. And we're not showing any. Any meaningful. Or flow. Are there occasions where it may happen? Yes, it may happen. But those are the numbers and most projects cannot support, actually, eight thirty G projects, support. Uh, the kind of parking that they need. Fortunately, this site. Is being proposed. To be developed in a way where we are adding material number of parking spaces. And it's always a good. I've always found to be the case. It's always a good marriage, if you will. Between uses when you have offices, primarily offices and residential. Because there are times of maximum. Uh, utilization. Are different. Evenings. Versus business day. So I just beg to differ with all due respect. Ms. Jenkins, that this project comes anywhere near. Anywhere near being a safety. Issue type of project. Irrespective of the high burden. That existed that exists. Under the standards to be utilized by the courts. In in. I'm saying in the ordinary course, which is the way we asked our asked our engineer to look at it. This is not a problematic project when it comes to traffic or parking in our in our opinion. Reasonable minds minds can differ, but that's what we believe and it's backed up statistically by the law and the facts.
And the fifty five parking spaces for the business on that property. And the fifty-five parking spaces for the business on that property, those get priority during the business day though. Isn't that correct, including?
Absolutely, that's absolutely.
I'm sorry, may I finish my question, please? Including they get priority for certain parking within the building, is my understanding, within the residential building? Is that not the case?
Under the law, under.
I have an answer to my question, Mr. Tessie, please.
I'm answering the question. Section six, one fifty-eight of the bill, I believe it's one fifty-eight, but maybe one fifty-five, I don't know, from the other building zone regulations requires, requires that the required parking be made available during, during the morning, during the uh, business hours of the business uses on the properties. That's a building zone requirement. And we stated we will meet that and we will have a, that we will meet that requirement. So you are absolutely right. All I want to say is I agree with you. Those are the priority, fifty-five parking spaces. And they were taken into account in the study and analysis done by our traffic engineer. During, again, those hours when the businesses are operating, which is normally, uh, let's just say, because there are a lot of offices there from nine o'clock, I forget what it is, but eight thirty, nine o'clock through five or six o'clock.
Thank you, Mr. Tess.
Welcome.
Any other comments from the commission, questions?
All right. I just wanted to ask one thing. Uh, there are comments from EMAC. Um, it says committing to not using gas. Um, I, I'd just like to get some clarity. Why would you commit to not using gas?
Are you asking me?
Yeah.
So I made sure you were finished before I hit.
Actually, actually, Mr. Levy, um, that would be Mr. Wells who would answer.
Oh, but please, please.
Or do we? Uh, well, it's been the objective of EMAC to reduce the use of fossil fuels uh, to reduce greenhouse gases because the deleterious effect of greenhouse gases on the atmosphere and on pollution and on climate change. So that, that's their, their objective. Uh, you can agree or disagree, but that, that's, that's the emphasis behind their, uh, suggestion. And, and also they were just following up, Mr. Levy, on the comment from the applicant that they were desirous of, uh, minimizing the use of uh, fossil fuels, but they didn't commit to it. So EMAC was just saying, sounds like you're desirous, how about committing to it?
Oh, okay, so now, oh, yeah, that's, I, I, I was, um, getting a little confused. Like, this is just from EMAC. It's not, it's not what the, uh, applicant is doing. Okay.
Right, right.
And, and so I, uh, uh, then from, uh, Mr. Tessie.
Yes.
Uh, did you comment on, on EMAC yet?
I would defer to Mr. Molnar.
Yeah.
To respond to that question. No, I don't, he's raised his hand, I don't know.
Um, I think that, uh, Mr. Wells's answer was sufficient because Mr. Levy was just asking why they were looking for no gas. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yep, thank you.
Any other comments? So Mr. Mr. Levy, they have, they have a mission, the Energy Management Advisory Committee of the First Selectmen. And, um, that's, so they tell us what to do to be, you know, more and, more environmentally nicer, if you will. And, um, but again, it can't be mandated at this point by us. Uh, if there are no other comments from the commission, uh, Mr. Tessie, are you amenable to my turning for public comment?
Thank you for asking, but certainly.
Alrighty, with that, we will turn to, um, for public comment. Now, Mr. Cohen has his hand up first and as the opposing attorney, I'm going to let him go first. And after that will be Mr. Malkin and Jody Stewart. And Mr. Mr. Cohen, welcome back.
Uh, evening, uh, Ms. Alman, members of the commission, Bruce Cohen, representing for the Harborview Condominium Association, which is the condominium association of all, uh, condominium owners, uh, of the, uh, Harborview condominium, uh, next door to this, uh, site, uh, Harborview is located at forty West Elm Street and, uh, I make these comments really in opposition uh, to the application. Um, as a, a preliminary, uh, statement, uh, I would note which I believe the commission, uh, is aware of, that, uh, the property on which the proposed building is to be built uh, is, uh, shown as a part of a recorded condominium, uh, declaration. Uh, and specifically, uh, shown, uh, graphically on map of fifty-eight forty-nine, which I provided to the commission in a letter that I submitted on, uh, June one. I've also submitted a copy of the fairly lengthy condom, uh, condominium declaration, which has a specific provision in it uh, to the effect that, uh, uh, residential uses will not be, uh, permitted on, uh, that property. The applicant has, uh, uh, objected to that, uh, determination, uh, that I've made. And, uh, to establish, uh, the, the fact that, uh, this piece of property is no longer, uh, burdened by the declaration, uh, the applicant has brought a, uh, lawsuit. And that lawsuit is scheduled to be tried as to the issues I've just described uh, in October of this year. And although I'm very much aware that the commission does not uh, consider or act upon matters of title, uh, I would, uh, point out that, uh, because of uh, this pending action and the importance of determining exactly whether or not the restriction applies and whether or not the owners of the property at issue, which are all the condominium owners uh, should be, uh, uh, a party to this, uh, application. Uh, I would, uh, request that the consider, uh, the commission consider, uh, that, uh, this application is premature and should await uh, determination by the, uh, Superior Court, uh, when, uh, the case is tried in October. Uh, going into some of the background information, uh, as I believe you know, this is the third application made by two forty GA LLC for approval to, uh, develop an apartment house, uh, at this location. The first two having, uh, been withdrawn. Uh, the first application, uh, as noted by Mr. Tessie, was filed under the provisions of six, one, ten G. Uh, which, uh, he correctly noted only, uh, provided for twenty percent of the re, of the, uh, units that are being, uh, restricted for affordable, uh, families. Uh, that's true, but, uh, as you know, six dash one ten G also provides for a lower, uh, rent based upon, uh, workforce average. And it also requires compliance with, uh, Greenwich zoning regulations, which, uh, of course is not the case, uh, necessarily with, uh, an eight dash thirty, uh, G application. Uh, my clients, the residents at, uh, forty West Elm Street, um, have a number of issues with some of which have been brought to your attention through written communications, uh, others you'll you may hear tonight with the folks that may want to speak, but basically, uh, their concern is that, uh, uh, the, the building is too big, it's too close to forty West Elm Street. It's too much FAR and it's grossly underparked. Uh, if, if, uh, one were to apply zoning regulations, this building couldn't get close to being built. Uh, in addition, there are, uh, commercial elements to the application, which I will uh, describe a little more in, uh, in a minute. Uh, but the, uh, a, a leading one has to do with, uh, how the parking is going to be handled, how the uh, the fact that the site is grossly underpacked, underparked is going to be dealt with. And how do you accommodate all this on this site and still move the, uh, bank's FA, uh, ATM uh, to a point where it clearly, uh, interferes with, uh, traffic circulation, uh, on the site. Um, so, uh, I, I would also point out that, uh, it, uh, even assuming that eight dash thirty G were to help, be held to apply to this application, there are significant safety and health issues that the commission should, uh, determine. You heard, uh, Mr. Tessie talk about the fact that they're, uh, still working out issues, uh, having to do with, uh, uh, access in and out for emergency, uh, vehicles. There are other significant issues that arise from, uh, the, the way this project is being, uh, constructed and, and planned, uh, and, uh, for the purpose of assessing these issues, which largely arise from, uh, uh, underparking and, and traffic related issues. Um, we've, uh, brought to the commission's attention a peer, uh, review, uh, issued by uh, Mitchell Engineering, uh, Traffic, uh, uh, Traffic Engineering and, uh, Stephen Mitchell, the author of that peer review is with me tonight to, to briefly, uh, uh, address those, uh, issues. Um, specifically, and in, in summary, uh, high on the list is the, the absence of uh, sufficient a, access for, uh, trucks and emergency vehicles. I think the, um, the, uh, turning templates that the applicant submitted uh, indicate clearly that, uh, for, uh, trucks of any size to access and exit the property, uh, they would be interfering with parking areas, uh, uh, ADA spaces and, uh, possible, uh, pedestrian routes. There's an absence in their plans for indicating safe uh, pedestrian routes. And, uh, there is also no indication of how, uh, uh, these circulation patterns are going to work out. If you look carefully at how they're proposing to egress from the two new parking levels, they go right into the ATM parking lines and to do so, they have to make turns that I think, uh, most of us would find challenging. So to, to avoid some of these, uh, all of these zoning issues that, uh, are of concern, uh, to my clients. Uh, the, uh, applicant has fashioned, uh, his application as an eight dash thirty G. Uh, and we believe that eight dash thirty G does not apply to this application. And I say that for the following reasons. Um, as the commission well knows, the, uh, the commission in the past has permitted, uh, shall we say, mixed use developments inclusive of an eight dash thirty G residential, uh, uh, portion. However, uh, only to the extent that the a commercial portion completely, uh, uh, complies with Greenwich zoning regulation. And I've got an example of that myself, uh, on a project that, uh, the commission approved on uh, Hamilton Avenue with a combined, uh, uh, commercial and, uh, residential, uh, component. However, we were very careful and the commission was very careful in that case to be sure that the retail component on the ground floor of a, of a new residential building complied uh, with, uh, zoning in every respect, and it did. Uh, this is not the case with the present application. Because of the gross, uh, uh, underparking that is apparent in this application. And when I say gross underparking, putting aside the, the only fifty-five spaces for the existing commercial building, which we know is legally non-conforming, putting that aside, they're adding twenty-three spaces for forty, uh, new units, sixty-four bedroom. Now, I have never seen in my practice before the commission, anything less than one space per unit for re- residential multifamily family apartment building. Uh, that, maybe I'm wrong, maybe there are examples, but this to me seems to be deficient. So to make up for the deficiency, uh, the applicant has proposed, uh, a number of things. First, uh, they're looking to, uh, have a pooled parking arrangement. Pooled parking means what, what it sounds like, which is that the residential can use the uh, commercial spaces at appropriate time and vice versa. Of course, the, the applicant has not really addressed how that would work in praxis, but simply saying that by signage and possibly the use of valet, it'll all work out. But I don't think it'll work out because, uh, it relies on the fact that, uh, uh, there won't be any activity in the bank or the office on Saturdays. It relies on the fact that people don't work late in their offices. And, and it possibly relies on the fact that right now, the applicant doesn't have, uh, or hasn't, uh, tenanted the, uh, the office space and the bank has been, uh, closed for a while, as you know. So the first thing that they've got to do is they've got to arrange for a pooled parking arrangement. Now pooled parking is, is something that the commission has addressed before. For the applicant to achieve a pooled parking approval, he must apply to the commission under six dash one sixty-two for site plan approval or based parking, uh, pooled parking arrangement. Although the applicant hasn't specifically done that, that's, that's really what he's doing. And it's sort of interesting because if you look at six, one sixty-two, in order to approve a, a pooled parking arrangement, the commission has to determine that, uh, that, uh, it will improve circulation, that parking arrangement. I don't think an examination of circulation patterns proves that. And it generally has to improve the appearance of the particular area. I doubt that the commission could make a finding to that effect. So the first portion of how this is a commercial application is for the requirements that the, the applicant has to achieve, uh, uh, approval from the commission for a site plan allowing pooled parking with those findings. Uh, also, uh, a number of the, uh, parking spaces now conveniently located for the commercial use at grade are going to be relocated to the basement or the lowest level of the apartment house. That's a, that's a new change in the commercial site plan. And, and finally, in order for, uh, the applicant to make room for his new construction, he must relocate and replace his, uh, ATM function. Right now, the ATM, which I don't know if, if it's working anymore, but for years it had. But it will be, and it's shown on the plan, it will be placed, uh, in a location that happens to in, be interfering with the residential, uh, traffic on the site. So that, there are three areas that I count and maybe there are more in which there must be changes to the commercial portion of, of the site. Remembering it's a single zoning line. In order to make the residential building take place. In my view, each of these requirements makes the existing commercial parking more non-conforming than it is right now. The second reason that we believe that eight dash thirty G doesn't apply is because of the, the, uh, standards established in the affordability plan. It, when I say standards, the, the affordability plan states that, uh, the, the development that they're proposing meets the criteria for assisted housing as defined in section eight dash thirty G by providing that twenty percent of the affordable the, uh, as twenty percent will, of the units will be affordable to families earning eight, eighty percent or less of the area or, or state median income, which is ever greater. They've changed that in the latest version of the, uh, of the affordability plan, but it is the, uh, area uh, uh, median income, uh, standard that is being used. So where does the twenty percent come from? And where does it say that, uh, this must be, uh, a forty-year requirement? Uh, neither requirement is, is stated anywhere. This is done as I understand it purely by the action of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. What, uh, what is the state authorization that allows these uh, uh, areas of discretion to be utilized? I don't believe they're applicable because I, I don't believe that authorization exists. I believe. I believe that the, uh, uh, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which is a terrific idea, uh, was established on the basis of the, a state authorization allowing sinking funds to be created in, in municipality. And this fund is sort of a sinking fund, but it, but the rules are made up as they kind of go along as, as, uh, uh, Mr. Tessie has testified. And they result in kind of a free pass for developers to, uh, to skirt the requirements of a set aside development uh, in the name of, uh, providing, uh, some level of affordability. Concept is, is not a bad idea, but I'm not sure that it is authorized. So that's the second reason that I don't believe that, that eight dash thirty G is applicable. Uh, finally, and before I ask, uh, Ms. Albin, uh, Steve Mitchell to make a few comments, uh, relating to the traffic issue, which, and parking is issues, which I know are important to the commission. Let me point out that there are, that, that the applicant is seeking a special permit. And if, if it is determined that, uh, in fact, there are commercial elements to this application, these special permit standards are, are applicable. And they include, uh, requirements such as a determination that the proposal not materially adversely affect adjacent areas within the closest proximity to the use, not materially obstruct significant use, and will not materially adversely affect residential uses nor be detrimental to a neighborhood or its residents, nor alter a neighborhood's essential characteristics. We think none of those findings could be made to support a special permit in, in this case. Uh, now, um, those are my comments. Uh, uh, Ms. Albin, may I introduce, uh, Stephen Mitchell?
I believe the commission is going to want to ask you some questions on those first. So if let's just give them an opportunity to ask you questions. Uh, does anybody from the commission wish to, Mr. Barilak?
I do. Uh, thank you, Mr. Cohen. Um, I, I would like to focus, um, my, my comments, as I mentioned at the, at the start of this meeting, I am, as a commissioner, recused from this application speaking, uh, and asking questions really only in my capacity as the chair of the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, and to that, to that question, I really want to focus on the, 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 the last points that you made. Um, you, you sent a letter on June first, as you, as you mentioned, that, that has a, that, that has a section that, that, that says that you believe the applicant improperly attempts to qualify the development as assisted housing. And, and the, in the second page, you very helpfully quote the statutory definition of assisted housing. And if you, if you, if you don't mind, I'd like to walk through that with you and just make sure I understand the basis of, uh, of your, of your views that it doesn't qualify. The, 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 the definition in the statute of assisted housing is housing that is receiving or will receive financial assistance from any governmental program for the construction of low and moderate income housing. So, uh, I, I think it's clear that you would agree that the loan that the trust has committed to give to this project is financial assistance. Is that, that's not your, that's not your claim, is it?
I- is it financial assistance? I, I think it's, um, to be honest with you, Mr. Barilak, who, with respect, I think it's eye wash. We're on a project of this size, a conditional loan that stays open until the end of two thousand fifteen for a hundred thousand dollars is, is not significant by way of assistance. No.
Okay. So let me ask you another question. Uh, have, have you found in the statute eight thirty G, any provision that, that limits or sets a minor, a, a, a dollar amount on the financial assistance the statute requires before it constitutes financial assistance under the statute? And I will tell you that I have read it and I have not, but you may have found something I did not.
No, but I did find a specific definition of median income, which is really the only place that it, it pops up, which is the lesser of area or state median income. And the, uh, uh, board of the trust fund has, uh, chosen, or at least the affordability seems to, uh, uh, agree that it is the, uh, it is the area median income that applies. So no, the answer to your question, I, I did not find a limit as to the amount.
Okay. So, so it doesn't seem that you're, you really are, um, contesting, at least under the words of the statute, that the loan constitutes financial assistance. And I'm, I'm also, um, taking as an assumption, but please correct me if I'm wrong, that you're not contesting that the trust doesn't qualify as a governmental unit uh, capable of providing financial assistance under the, and as, as a, as an assisted housing.
Uh, I don't know the answer to that question, really, Bob. Uh, it's, uh, it, it was established, the way it was established, the basis for which it's being established had to do with municipalities being granted the authority to establish sinking funds, uh, not the authority to uh, change the percentage of assistance or the period of time within which affordability must last. So I, I, it's a legal matter that I'm really not prepared to answer right now.
Okay. Well, let me then, um, Patrick, maybe you could, you could make me a co-host. I'm going to share a screen just to put on the record something that I'm going to discuss with Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cohen, I don't know, uh, maybe you can tell me if you're familiar with the regulations that have been issued by the State Department of Economic and Community Development under eight thirty G, uh, defining and adding more, more context to the definition of assisted housing. Um, but I, but if Patrick will let me share a screen, I'll show you those now.
You're all set.
Okay, let's see if I can do this. Okay. Uh, and let me just scroll down so that you can see what I'm looking at. Uh, this is page four of a, of a regulation issued by the Department of Economic and Community Development under eight thirty-one G. And down here in section G two B, it says, if you can see my, and I'll see if I can enlarge this a little bit for you. It says to be considered affordable house, to be a considered assisted housing, the housing must meet the following conditions. First of all, it says that the assistance may come from federal, state, or local government. So are you, did you think that, do you, you, I think you would probably agree that the, the, that the city or the town of Greenwich and its Affordable Housing Trust Fund is a unit of local government. You're not, that's not your, that's not your contention, correct?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that, based upon the way it was established, uh, by, uh, through the RDM, based upon the state's authorization to, uh, uh, to, uh, set up, uh, uh, sinking funds. Uh, this has to do, really, I think this regulation has to do with what counts toward the ten percent, doesn't it, Bob?
Uh, well, it has to do with, uh, this regulation has to do with a lot of things, including what counts towards the ten percent, including a lot of mechanics about how the rent and income limits that are applicable to set aside projects are computed. And, and it very helpfully, uh, adds what I consider to be important, uh, important, in, uh, filler, if you will, the way that, that regulations of governmental entities often do around statutory language. The most important thing I want to call your attention to is the yellow highlighted language, as you can see on the screen here in, in where my cursor is. It says the assistance for construction or establish a substantial renovation of, of housing as defined by the income eligibility rules of the governmental program providing the assistance. The, the same concept appears just a little lower. The housing must be for low and moderate income persons as defined by the income eligibility rules of the governmental program providing the financial assistance. So Patrick, I'm going to stop sharing this now. You can, you can make me no longer a host because I think.
Could you, could you kindly email that to Patrick, um, so that it goes into the record?
I will.
You'll, you'll need to submit it for the public record.
I certainly will. So the, the, the point is that, um, for assisted housing, not for, not for set aside projects, for assisted housing, which receives financial assistance from a governmental unit, it is quite appropriately by this regulation, the governmental unit provides the assistance which defines the rent and income restrictions. Um, you're familiar, aren't you, generally with federal low income housing tax credits? That's a, that is a governmental program, the federal government program administered by the state, uh, which provides financial assistance for the construction of affordable housing. It has its own set of rent and income restrictions. Uh, would you contend that Greenwich communities, when they come in with a, with an approval with a project with tax credits, um, must, must rent at the lower of state or area median, even though those numbers, even though that provision is not part of the federal low income housing tax credit panoply?
No.
Yeah. Um, Madam Chair, that's, that's all my questions.
Um, thank you. Uh, I had a, a couple of, of comments. Mr. Cohen, uh, there's one point, at one point you said that we should not entertain another application while litigation is pending on a property. Uh, I can think of a lot of instances in the past uh, where we have done so. A recent one would have been Greenwich Hospital. Um, there was litigation pending. They came in with a new application, but they did not withdraw their lawsuit on the first application. So, uh, it is not our normal process. Uh, we, we receive a de novo application and we hear it. So I, I, I don't believe we would change that. They, I did have a question for you on this issue of the commercial because I'm, I kept reading your letter and not following. There is no increase that I'm seeing in the non-conformity on the commercial. What am I missing?
No increase in the non-conformity.
On the commercial. What, where we have been is that we don't allow.
I, I agree with that, that they, they started out with, I think, fifty-five spaces and they end up with fifty-five spaces.
So on the, on the commercial, they haven't, yeah. Okay, sorry, I talked over you because I didn't realize, so you're saying they start out with fifty-five and?
Now they're sharing them. And they're moving around to a place that is less accessible.
So you're saying they are increasing in some manner the non-conformity of the commercial?
Absolutely.
Because of the way they're relocating the commercial spaces?
Uh, you're correct.
All right, okay. I, I, it, it, okay, that is really a question that I'm going to need some advice on from council. To me, there's fifty-five spaces. You know, as long as they retain the number of, of spaces they have. And this, it doesn't say anywhere in our regulations that a non-conformity is created when you make something less convenient. So it just says you will have X spaces or you don't have X spaces. Arn gives an example of, you know, you start with two lots, you end with two lots. That's kind of the question. So I'm not seeing an increase in the non-conformity and therefore I don't see your commercial point because to me it's versus the regulations, not whether it's more, more convenient or less convenient. Although for the users, yes, great point, Miss, Mr. Cohen, I don't disagree with you. You want to make it convenient for the users, but that's what you would do if you didn't have on eight thirty G. Uh, so those were the two big comments I had. Did you have something else on that? I'm sorry, sir.
It's, it's not a question of convenience, it's a question of adequacy. Uh, the, the, the fifty-five spaces that now are, exist are going to have to be shared, uh, according to this, uh, parking plan with the, uh, with the new residents. And they're going to be residents of forty, uh, new units. And they have to share those spaces and they only have a very small number, really half the number that, that the commission has generally approved, uh, to be added to this group. So I think on analysis, uh, uh, you'll see that the there's going to be overflow here and because there, certainly in plenty ti- plenty of, uh, uh, times of the day, uh, such as, uh, Saturday morning, for example, when the, the bank is open and, uh, uh, there may be some office users and all of the folks who live in their new apartments are going to be home. Uh, there certainly won't be, uh, sufficient parking. So people will go in the street and see what they can find.
So for the commission to think about the interpretation of our parking regulations as, uh, in regards to the commercial use is up to us. We can obviously, we, we will seek counsel, council's view. Um, but it is up to us to interpret whether this change in the, in the parking, whether that, what that means in terms of a non-conformity. Because where what we have decided on the eight thirty Gs is that they can't create a, a non-conformity in the commercial. And we have been supported by other, other cases, I think, at this point, at least one other one. Um, okay, that was me. Anybody from the commission have questions?
Also, so to go a little further with that, so let's say that, uh, the, uh, those commercial spaces, um, it's not that they're less accessible, it's that there, there's some kind of using a word like there's a kind of an obstruction to, to, uh, kind of the use of it some, the availability of it. So in other words, there, there is some kind of, um, uh, is the point that, uh, at some point you have to, um, make, uh, an assessment that there is a change that, uh, pertains to the availability of those spaces.
Yeah.
I don't know what the words are.
Yeah.
That would, that would make, make them, uh, um, not, uh, not, uh, less conforming.
Right.
In other words, there, there has to be something that, where you can, uh, uh, say, oh, well, because of this, it's no longer conformant. And there's no, it's, it's less conformant.
Something like that. That's what he's trying to get to. Yeah.
May I respond, Mrs. Albin?
Yeah, okay, sure.
Uh, to, to, uh, Mr. Levy's comment, um, the, the, the problem here is that this, there will be a number of, uh, of commercial spaces that will be in the, let's say, the lowest level of the new parking lot. I, the last I counted was eleven. Uh, what's going to happen, uh, when Saturday morning comes? Uh, and the folks, uh, who live there are, are parked. Where, where do the bank people go? In other words, the, the movement of these spaces and the requirement to relocate the commercial spaces into the new, uh, residential building uh, creates, I think, a dangerous and difficult situation that'll lead to the need to, to park elsewhere, not on the site.
Well, that needs to be demonstrated somehow and, and, and there has to be some kind of way of of evaluating that.
Exactly.
We've, we have submitted our, uh, an, analysis based on a peer review by, uh, by Mr. Mitchell that I'd like to have discussed.
All right, um, Mr. Yeski's next.
Okay, uh, are we going to hear the traffic or you, may I ask my question?
Ask your question.
Okay. Mr. Cohen, I want to come back to the eight thirty G nature. Um, I was taking detailed notes and I also read all the, the files. You, you're saying that this doesn't, I, I, I don't want to talk about the traffic, the parking, uh, all the other areas you're bringing up. I get it. Commercial, retail, I get it. But it comes back eight thirty G. You're, I think you said you don't believe this is a, a qualified eight thirty G because of the, uh, stipulation in there that it's twenty percent, which I think they're meeting. But it also is the lesser of area versus state median income. In this case, we could go into the discussion of the trust fund, but they're doing it differently, obviously. And you're saying, is that your main argument why it's not an eight thirty G? Not the traffic, Greenwich zoning, which you know is overruled by eight thirty G. Um, is, is there another facet to your belief that this isn't a qualified eight thirty G application?
I, I have two reasons, uh, Ms. Jaski. The first is that they are asking for changes in the existing commercial use that will make it, uh, more non-conforming. That's, that's, and that is a basis on the which, on which the commission has acted before. But the second basis, which I think you're getting to. But the second basis, which I think you're getting to, which is that it, uh, it doesn't qualify, uh, as assisted housing. Uh, because, uh, the, the, the rules that the, uh, Assistant Housing Trust Fund has, has made up are not provided for in the, in the state regulation. For example, the, uh, twenty percent, uh, why shouldn't it be the thirty percent that, uh, you've got to come up with for, uh, uh, for a set aside development, which really is what this is? And why forty years that this is going to last? Why not per, perpetual, uh, for a project like this? So there are a couple of reasons that I don't believe that eight dash thirty, uh, G, uh, is applicable.
Okay, got it.
And, um, so Mr. Yeski, that's a question because, um, an eight thirty G, under eight thirty G, there are two types of developments. One's a set aside and the other's an assisted. The set aside has to have thirty percent and the set aside language is for the lesser of AMI or SMI. The, the assisted actually has no specificity, which is, I believe, the, you know, leaves the question of what does comply and what does not. Mr. Barilak, would you like to make a comment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm confused, Mr. Cohen. I thought that at the end of my comments, you agreed with me that, that a, a project, for example, that, that received HUD financial assistance or low-income housing tax credit financial assistance could comply with the rent and income restrictions established by those programs and still qualify as assisted housing under eight thirty G, even though it did, it had some number different than thirty percent of its units that were set aside. And even though, um, that the, 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 the income standard that it was based upon was area median and not state median. Did I misunderstand you?
No, no, you didn't. Uh, however, the, the standards, the standards for that, those kinds of grants are quite different from what we're talking about here. We're talking, we're, we're talking about, the, the way you qualify is you get a conditional equipment that has no, uh, a very long end date for a miniscule portion of the construction cost. That doesn't sound right to me. It doesn't sound right to me that, that the commission, I'm sorry, the board, uh, the, the Assistant Housing Trust Fund Board can decide that this should last for forty years or, or perpetually or twenty years? Or that, you know, twenty percent is the right amount or how about ten percent? Where does it say in the state authorizing regulation, uh, statute that these are within the purview of the local board? I don't see it. I think, what I do, let me finish. What I do see is a very specific about state assistance uh, i- in section eight dash thirty-seven double P, which provides for what assistance really means when coming through the state or a state agency. And, and that kind of assistant, assistance must be for an eligible applicant. An eligible applicant is somebody like the Greenwich Housing Authority, uh, somebody like Hill House. In other words, somebody who's really in the business of providing affordable housing. Not, not a set aside arrangement.
Hmm.
I'm not gonna argue with you, but I, I, I would suggest that you go back and study the regulations that I just, just showed you.
Yeah.
I, 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 I can't believe that the plain language, plain English meaning, the words that I've read there, uh, don't, don't offer some, um, some suggestion to you that you might want to reconsider that statement.
I, and I think, I, what I would like to ask Mr. Cohen is that, I'm trying to figure out how to word this, Mr. Cohen, but you have, um, have represented other projects on which you have had a different view of some of the points you're making and I'm interested-
I heard you say that yesterday and you're absolutely wrong. On the project, the one project that I can think of where we had a mixed use, the, the commercial portion of the application absolutely complied with zoning. No, no request to establish or enlarge a non-conformity was present in those situations.
But as I remember, that project only had one space per residential unit.
Right, we, we settled out of court for that.
Okay, now you did mention earlier that it was unprecedented to have only one space per unit.
No, I said, I said in my experience, there's never been a situation where the commission went below that standard.
I see. Okay, I heard you say it had never had one, one space. Okay. Um, is everybody questioned out, Mr. Yeski?
Where I was going with it before I was cut off.
Sorry, very sorry.
Yeah, if we're gonna rule on this application somewhere down the line, we're assuming we're gonna get credit uh, for affordable units.
Yes.
And I guess, having just been burned by the state in another area where we thought we were okay, um, I'm wondering what we do to verify that this would be a qualified eight thirty G. Now, maybe all the arguments that uh, Mr. Cohen is bringing up, uh, don't hold, but I guess, I, I don't want to go down the road. We're voting on an eight thirty G. He's saying it's not an eight thirty G. At some point, we need to get some assurances of that because we have different sets of regulations dealing with this.
Yes.
I don't know where that, how we do that. I don't think we've faced that.
Couple of things, yes. In fact, we, we pretty much have and a couple of things. First of all, we're gonna, we're gonna, we've, we're gonna kick this to our town council for review. But the other thing is, we have sought legal opinions already on what the trust is doing and on whether it stands up. We mentioned some of those were informal, but we have also um, sought formal legal opinions, at least one, if that is correct, Mr. Barilak?
Yes.
Um, so we have sought those and it-
Good to hear.
So that is the big question. Uh, there, uh, there has seemed, there has appeared to be consensus around this process that, that, that this works, but you raise an excellent point, Mr. Yeski. We will go back to council and we will discuss it again and seek, find out if we need to get yet another legal opinion. And, you know, the problem is actually that the state statute is silent in regard to many of these issues. It's just dead silent in regard to what it constitutes assisted. So it's a fill-in-the-blank kind of a situation. It doesn't speak to it. And your question is, is that a permissive or a prohibitive silence? And our interpretation, based on the views we've gotten, is that it allows this negotiation that's occurring. Mr. Barilak?
Well, just one more sort of, a slightly different way of saying, I think, what you're trying to say, Madam Chair. The, the, the state statute does leave, um, a lot of, of infill. The, in situations like that, regulatory bodies, administrators, like the Department of Economic and Community Development frequently step up and write black and white regulations which fill in the blanks.
And this has not happened.
Which it has. It is, it has exactly happened. In this case, what the, what, what the, what the Economic and Community Development regulations provide is that the, that, that, the, the source of the rent and income restrictions, the source of all of the substance of the affordable housing financing program that is recognized as providing assisted housing will be determined by the governmental unit that provides the housing. How could, provides the assistance, rather. How could it be otherwise? How could it be otherwise? That's why when, when Greenwich communities came in here with an application for an assisted housing project, let's say, if they came, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak to past cases. If they came in with an, with an application for assisted housing uh, and, and pointed to financial assistance from the state of Connecticut using federal low-income housing tax credits, they would absolutely not have to depart from the area meeting income standard that the tax credit program provides and go instead to state. They would absolutely not. And the regulations that I've, I've, I've presented tonight make clear that, that, the, 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 the regulators who enforce eight thirty G think it's just fine, that, that, that the governmental unit that provides the, the financing can dictate the rent and income standards. That's exactly what the Affordable Housing Trust Fund has done. It is, it is the governmental unit that is providing assistance. It, therefore, under the regulations that the state of Connecticut has the power to determine what the rent and income restrictions will be, it has determined that eighty percent of area meeting income is appropriate.
And our greatest mandate at this point is a state mandate to increase affordable housing under the full, and that starts at eighty percent of area median. Okay, any further questions for, for Mr. Cohen? No. All right, I am going to turn to-
May I ask, Madam Chair?
Yes, sure.
If the commission would like to hear from our traffic consultant?
Yes, I was going to turn to our next, he's on the list as, and you'll have to make the choice. I've got three people on the list here, Peter Malkin, Jody Stewart, and Steve Mitchell. What order would you like? Those are all your people, Mr. Cohen?
Uh, I think so, but that, that order is true.
Okay. And then we've got Marlene Alonso is probably a member of the public and-
She's also a, a member of the board, of the, uh, my client.
Of your client. And Christine Mac, uh, can't see the whole thing, McAllier? Okay, maybe we have a real, okay, so Peter Malkin first? Is that what you said, sir?
Yeah, yes, fine.
All right. Okeydoke, Mr. Malkin, you're on. Mr. Malkin?
Yes.
Hello, there you are. You're all set.
Uh, Madam Chairman and members of the commission, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Uh, I want to make clear that I support affordable housing, but this application raises serious health and safety issues that mitigate against it being approved. Parking and traffic, Mr. Yeski, do apply if safety and health are impacted. Our position is that the inadequacy of parking, the poor design of the entrance and exit, the inability for emergency vehicles to get in and out of the property as designed are all very serious health and safety issues. In addition, anybody who's been on West Elm Street and our traffic consultant will so advise knows that there is no parking on the south side of the street. And there is very little parking left on the north side of the street because the restaurants have built out and have, the, the town has enclosed what used to be parking spaces for the three restaurants that are on the street. And now, a substantial number of the patrons for those restaurants either park in this parking lot that the applicant wants to develop or double park. And since there is no provision for trucks and services to enter into the lot without interfering with the parking, the new building, there will be more congestion, more double parking, and there are serious health and safety issues on turning ratios, on sightline, and, uh, other things that our, uh, consultant will bring forward. Uh, one of the things that strikes me is really odd supplementing what Bruce Cohen has said is the assumption that from nine to five, five days a week, none of the residents will have their cars in the lower-level parking area. If they choose to stay home and leave their cars there, where do the commercial users get the fifty-five parking spaces that Mr. Levy was asking about? They don't. Are you going to have someone evict these people from their parking places during the nine to five, five days a week, or during the nine to two or three on Saturdays? Uh, when the, the commercial people need those spaces? They don't have the commercial spaces necessary uh, for the, for. The, there is a serious traffic issue on people coming in and out of the proposed building facing into people coming in and out of the parking garage immediately across the street per twenty-five West Elm Street. And the parking alley for the very large parking lot on Greenwich Avenue, which you get access to and from, uh, from West Elm Street, uh, between the two commercial buildings, the Oyster House and the, the mix. Uh, and so you have part, people come into and out of confronting each other in four places in a very small area where there's virtually no street parking, where there's already double parking and in a very narrow two-lane street. These are serious health and safety issues. There will be accidents. There will be dangers and there is no provision for pedestrian access in, in and out. There's no sidewalk that's not interfered with. There's no provision for ADA access to the ADA parking places. Certainly, I'd like to hear Mr. Gunsberg talk about the impact on ADA in the lower-level ADA parking places, which have to be vacated five days a week from nine to five, uh, by the handicap people who have no way to get in and out of the garage, uh, from their handicap access parking places. And there's no way for the people going to, uh, the bank from the, so if they do get parking in the lower level, how do they get out of the lower level? Walk across the access, walk across the, uh, entrance for the upper level? No sidewalk and no, no way. I mean, these things are very serious health and safety issues. This goes far beyond normal zoning parking issues. These go far beyond eight thirty G and they really must be recognized. And finally, while I'm not, I know you're going to town council for this, clearly avoiding the rule of lower income by taking the higher-income area clearly contradicts the purpose of eight thirty G. And I frankly doubt that the Housing Trust Fund constitutes a governmental entity. Uh, it may be authorized by the town of Greenwich. It is not the town of Greenwich. It has a separate board headed by Mr. Barilak and it is not a town, uh, uh, or agency. So thank you very much, Madam Chairman and commissioners for permitting me to raise these issues. I should have started out by saying that my wife and I are long-term residents of forty West Elm Street. And we are, I personally am someone who is somewhat handicapped, uh, must use assisted, uh, cane and, uh, walker. And I would be put at great danger by this project and personally object to it.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, our next speaker is Jody Stewart. Uh, we forgot, I forgot to ask Patrick to run the clock. Um, what we'll, we're gonna do is, um, on the speakers that are just on the board and they're just members of the public, if you will, uh, and not counsel, uh, we will, and we will limit to two minutes. Uh, Jody Stewart, if you would kindly unmute and go ahead.
Hey. Hello.
Yes, hello. Unmute, Mr. Stewart or Ms. Stewart? This is bizarre. Um, John Tessie, you need to mute. I'm gonna mute you, okay? All right. Um, yeah, go ahead, Jody Stewart.
All right. Hi, I'm Jody Stewart. I live at forty West Elm Street. Harper View was built in nineteen thirty-nine. It's a home for many seniors. I have lived in Manhattan practically all my life. My issue is pedestrian safety. Crossing Elm and Benedict is already more dangerous than just about any Manhattan street. I say this from experience. I've almost been hit by cars on Elm Street dozens of times at the crosswalk. It is also a big challenge to drive out of my garage on Elm Street. Cars back up all the way to town- Cars back up all the way to Town Hall. Fact, Greenwich Avenue has been getting incredibly busy and unsafe for pedestrians and drivers alike. Even after the bump outs were installed, the last thing that we need is two stories worth of cars from forty, not fifty-five spaces or more being added to Elm Street and Greenwich Avenue. It'll further worsen the safety for pedestrians and drivers on those streets. All the equipment on the roof without noise abatement will also be a health issue. And close to my heart are the heirloom trees with their huge trunks that must be at least a hundred years old and adding to the beautiful shade of the beautiful building forty West Elm Street. This is the wrong location. Thank you for your time.
Perfectly timed, ma'am. Thank you very much. Um, okay, uh, I'm not sure what the protocol should be with Steve Mitchell. He's next, but he's part of opposition, so he's public. Is he part of council? Do we treat him as we treat an attorney?
I, I would appreciate that.
Yes, I know, Mr. Cohen, but my question is to Mr. LaRoe.
He's expert testimony.
So he should be allowed to speak. Okey dokey. Thank you. So, Mr. Mitchell? There you go. And if you would unmute, sir? Yeah, I, I know how you feel. I'm sorry, Mr. Mitchell. Go ahead.
Am I on?
Yes, you're on. There you go.
Thank you, thank you. And, uh, it's moments like this, I'm, I'm happier being an engineer than an attorney, I have to tell you, but, um, so my name, I'll just introduce myself very briefly. My name is Steve Mitchell. I'm a traffic engineer. I have been practicing as a consulting engineer and land planner for over forty-five years. Uh, most of my career has been spent working for developers and, and dealing with planning developments. And I also, as, as part of my career, have done peer reviews mostly for municipalities, but occasionally for, uh, local, uh, groups. Uh, I, I reviewed, uh, all of the various, uh, pieces of information that had been, uh, provided by the applicant and I, I'm boiling down and I'm sure you've seen my report. It's like fifteen pages long. I'm going to boil it down into three points and try to get through this, not in two minutes, but very quickly. Um, the first is, uh, the, the three points are traffic impacts, uh, parking and site circulation. Uh, traffic impacts, I'll, I'll be very brief. Uh, the applicant has stated that they are, uh, with this development, they are going to have less traffic than was on the site previously, and therefore they have no impact. Unfortunately, um, they did a number of things incorrectly in, in, in trying to do these calculations. Uh, primarily, they used, uh, the I T E trip generation report, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. Uh, but they used an outdated version. They, they did not pick the latest version. Latest version has been in effect since, uh, twenty twenty-one, but somehow, uh, they did not use that. Um, they use square footages in their traffic statement that simply, I cannot confirm. They do not agree with the narrative that was presented as part of the application. They do not agree with the plans. Uh, basically, none of the numbers add up. So, uh, whatever they did in doing these calculations simply can't be replicated. So, uh, and then thirdly, they did some of the calculations incorrectly. I've, I've, I've put it in the report, but they, uh, they eliminated certain pieces of square footage that you're not allowed to eliminate. And, and basically every traffic engineer knows that. So I'm not sure what happened here. Uh, but I could not replicate their, uh, position that, that they are, uh, reducing traffic. They, they might be, but it's just not possible, uh, to determine that from the materials they submitted. Secondly, onsite parking. So there is a number of things here that you should be aware of. Uh, we have talked about the existing non-conformity. Uh, the existing facility had fifty-five parking spaces, and it is required that redevelopment of the site provides fifty-five parking spaces for the commercial building. Uh, using parking generation, that building actually should, uh, generate about a hundred and thirty-three parking spaces. So, uh, the fifty-five is far short of what it actually needs. And, but the town has recognized that and we don't know where those cars are going. They're going somewhere else and they're parking in another place. It's important to note that they talked about, and I wasn't, wasn't gonna bring this up, but they talked about it earlier, that they are improving the parking as though it's getting so much better. They are adding twenty-three parking spaces and they are adding forty residential units. That's, that's only a slight bit more than a half a space per unit. I, I don't know how you would uh, characterize that as improving the parking. That is not really enough parking for that just on its face. They also did parking calculations and once again, uh, they made a fundamental error in doing the calculations. They looked at the residential, uh, parking as low-rise residential. By I T E definition, it is not. It is mid-rise, uh, residential. Low-rise is two stories or less. Mid-rise is three to ten. We have four stories of residential units here, so they should have used the mid-rise units. I redid all of the calculations for the residential. I, I did, uh, submit those as part of my report. I don't know if I am able to uh, share screen. Am I able to, uh, share a screen and show you this, um?
Patrick, would you do that?
Yep, should be good now.
Thank you. Whoop. Uh, where did you go? Oh, I've hit this. So if you look, this is the weekday parking profile, which is done using I T E. And this shows the total number of available spaces, the, the number that are assigned, the fifty-five to commercial, and how much is less left for the residential to use. And you can see that basically at all of the hours that the fifty-five vehicles are, are transferred over to commercial, uh, we have a, a deficit of parking. So, uh, thirteen cars through the day, it's not as many, eight, five, two, and then in the evening, eleven and twelve again. I should point out that I chose from seven AM to seven PM for that fifty-five car, uh, shift, if you will, but I don't know that those numbers are right. Uh, there is retail as part of this development, the commercial development. Are, are the fifty-five supposed to be given over during all of the hours of operation of the retail? Well, that will push it much later, of course, and you can see the deficits will be much more serious. On Saturday, it's even worse. On Saturday, throughout the entire day, we have at least more than ten cars as a deficit, sometimes as many as twenty-five. So the, the applicant's report that claims only one or two spaces as a deficit, which they actually quoted today in their presentation, is simply inaccurate. It's just not correct. They have a, a substantially higher, uh, deficit than that per the actual calculation. Um, we believe that these deficiencies do, in fact, and it was also stated, uh, that, that parking deficiencies are not a matter of, of safety and welfare. Well, they are. You're talking about people coming home to their house, coming home to where they live and not being able to park their cars. That's a serious deficiency. That means they are going to be looking for other spaces. They're going to be trying to park in other places that they're probably not supposed to park. They're certainly going to be circulating far more than they should be circulating. And every one of those movements creates a potential for safety and it creates a potential for, uh, a, a problem with uh, the benefit to the overall society in the area. It was also talked about briefly about the non-conformity uh, and whether there is an increase in non-conformity. Now, I'm not an attorney and I can't address some of those, uh, legal aspects of conformity. What I can say is that as a plan, as a land planner, a parking space that is for a specific restricted use has a higher value than a shared parking space. A parking space that is used only for one user is their sole propriety. When it is now shared with others, you lose some of that propriety. And then in generally, in general terms, that would be considered increasing a non-conformity. And I've dealt with many multi-use developments across the state where we would approach it that way and we would look at trying to reduce that non-conformity by increasing the parking. Uh, lastly, I just note, there was an analysis in the traffic report about the, the, uh, town parking garage right down the block. And it had been noted by your consultant beta that, that that was inappropriate and yet it's still, and that was a long time ago that they provided that information. And yet it still showed up in the traffic, uh, analysis. I don't know why. It is just not appropriate, uh, to this site. Last, I'm gonna just talk about some of the onsite circulation and the traffic hazards. The first thing I'd, I'd like to bring up is the, there has been a lot of discussion about the emergency vehicle access and, and, and fire department access. In a sense, that is normally not a big consideration. Normally, fire trucks, lights, sirens, they can get in. They can figure out a way to get in. But they have to go onto the wrong side of the road in order to make a swing. They can do that. All of that is something that is, is considered acceptable because it's an unusual situation. In this case, however, we've seen from what the applicant provided that even a pumper truck barely makes it in, runs over curbs on both sides, runs over landscaped areas and grazes the back of the ATM machine. The, the DPW made a statement that that's good for the pumper truck, but their ladder truck is even longer. That will not be able to get into the site. Now, you know, I, 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 again, I say this is not normally something we focus on. But in this case, the access is so poor that this is going to be a problem if an emergency occurs on the site. Secondly, there is no designated loading or unloading zone. There's nothing. There's nothing that says how anyone makes a delivery. There's nothing saying how Amazon shows up and does something, the, how the mail truck shows up, how the garbage truck shows up, how, uh, people show up for maintenance or the plumber, nothing. There is not a single parking space provided anywhere on the site for any of these, uh, trucks, any of these utility vehicles. Again, the applicant has provided a plan showing an SU thirty truck, which is a large truck, but it is a single unit truck. I want to make sure you understand, this is not a trailer truck. This is just a regular straight body truck. And they don't fit. They run over the curbs on both sides. They go on the wrong side of the road to get in or out of the site. And they run over the handicap ramps on the sidewalks on both the east and west uh, areas of the sidewalk. That, that's, that is absolutely incredibly dangerous. A, a handicap person is relying on those handicap ramps to be a safe zone. They are not expecting a truck to run over those areas. I've, I frankly, I've never seen a situation where that was the case. The delivery trucks not being able to get on and off the site are probably going to park on the street. They're going to park on West Elm Street. And when they do that, they're going to influence, first of all, there's only, if they're going in the eastbound direction, there is no other lane. They're in one lane of traffic. So they're gonna block that lane and force through traffic to cross the W line onto the wrong side of the road. They're going to block the sightlines, both from the subject site and from the site of the apartment building next door. This is, this is simply improper design. This is not a good way to design this. The residential vehicles, if you recall what the site plan looks like, and I didn't take their site plan and put it on my presentation, but if you remember what their site plan looks like, they have, uh, a situation where if you're coming out of the upper level of the garage, you come out of the garage, turn to the left and come down so that you are parallel with the incoming traffic, but on the wrong side of them. You're on the left side of the incoming traffic. So you now must make a U-turn to the right in order to get into the entering lane so that then you can make a U-turn to the left to get into the exiting lane.
Oh, wait.
This is.
I'm sorry, sir.
Apologize.
Before you go to that, can you roll back to your last table? Um, just because I was having trouble with this. Okay, so you start out, um, just walk me through. I got the required commercial par- parking. That column I understand. Residential.
Okay.
You go, you need fifty spaces at midnight.
So, correct, fifty spaces was the maximum parking required by the correct calculation.
Okay, for forty units. Okay, you need, and, and this is for a mid-rise building?
Yep.
With forty units in it. You would require fifty spaces and you got that from the new I T E? No, the new parking standards?
The parking, I, the I T, the I T parking generation, that's correct.
The I T parking generation. Okay, so you've got that at fifty. Um, now you, and you, and you say, okay, you're cool. You've got a surplus of seventeen. Now you drop down in the middle of the day, go down to where you get your first deficit, because this is where I was having trouble. Okay. So you, when you go to minus twenty-five, you say
Right.
At seven.
Now, this is on a Saturday, remember. This is on a Saturday. Not to interrupt you, but Saturday, so there's not as many people going, leaving to go to work.
At seven AM, you trigger commercial use at seven AM on a Saturday. I don't think anything is open on the avenue at seven AM on Saturday, but okay. Let's pretend, let's pretend it is. Okay, somebody says there is. Dennis, who walks the avenue twice a day.
There, there are trucks, there are trucks parked all over the place, uh, early in the morning on the avenue.
Okay, but they can't, okay, so let's say there is, they're delivering though and you're not open for business. You are just taking deliveries. You're just the store owner taking deliveries. Okay, so you now drop the residential to forty-eight, um, and you did that based on what?
There are, there are tables, uh, again with I T E that show the, the entire day's profile of parking. So they will say based on, so from, uh, midnight until, uh, five AM, a hundred percent of the cars are still parked. Then, and that's the very first column. I don't know if, can you see my cursor? So this very first column, that's the profile from I T E. So a hundred percent of the cars are still expected to be parked until four AM, then it goes down to ninety-nine percent, ninety-seven percent, ninety-five percent through, through the day.
So you're using the tables the whole time? Okay.
That's correct.
Alrighty, then. Available onsite. Now, um, you, tell me, okay, so because you've lost two spaces, how do you get to the seventy-eight available onsite? You really lost me here. So available onsite, you not enough seventy-eight. Where'd you get the extra eleven spaces?
So those are the eleven spaces under the bank building.
And why did they only come in to be, I mean, how did they kind of chop in at seven AM?
Because my assumption, and again, this is, this is explained in the report. My, my assumption, those are gated parking spaces and they are under the commercial building which contains a bank. My assumption is that they are not going to be allowed to be open to the public while the bank, while that building is closed. So they will only be
All right.
available once the bank, once the commercial building's in operation.
Okay, and I'm sorry I missed that. So, um, all right, I think I understand the chart completely now.
Um, right, so they, they come into effect at the same time that the fifth, the need for the fifty-five shows up.
Okay, I gotta play with this a little bit. Now that I understand, I was, I saw this and I, I was a little confused. Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead and you can go to your next one, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I'm sorry I'm going so fast, I'm just trying to.
No, no, it's not that. We want you to go fast, we're, we're ready for dinner.
I guess, I figured that, so am I, actually. Okay, so, so the, so here is a diagram of a passenger car pulling out of the upper level of the garage. This, the garage is back here. Out they come, it's two lanes, there's the center line. And they're right against the center line and they try to make this turn to turn here and look what happens. They are up on the median. They're not just a little up on them, they're completely up on them. Okay, now this is a standard design passenger car. By today's standards, it's a large car. But it is not as large as a full-size SUV or a full-size pickup truck. They're worse. He can't do it. What he has to do, if he doesn't want to be on the median, is he has to come down the entrance on the exit, I'm sorry, down the exit on the entrance side. He has to drive down the wrong side of the road so that he can make this turn and not run into the median. Having done this for forty-five years, I'm not ashamed to make the statement, this is past bad design. This is impossible.
Okay.
And once he does that, he then, look what he has to do. He has to make another U-turn around this way in order to get the heck out again. That's, that's a resident, coming out, coming out for, you know, going, let's, let's, you know, take, take the kids down to soccer, they gotta do all of this to get out of that garage. Mr. Mitchell. And that's every day. That's not a fire truck, that's every day. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mitchell, so this is a vehicle maneuvering on this site. So if it's that difficult, if I had an SU thirty, SU thirty on this site, I'm doing all kinds of crazy maneuvering to get in and to get out again?
An SU thirty, an actual truck?
Yeah.
You can't, you can't do it.
Okay.
I mean, he'll, he'll be, he doesn't, there's no way he fits, there's just, he is so, I mean, and they, and actually, the applicant demonstrated that. They, they provided this kind of diagram, they did it with a computer, I couldn't, because I didn't, all I had was their PDF file. But they did it with a computer and it shows, shows them running over both sides of the curb and on the other side of the street.
Okay, I don't have the turning drawings, they were not available on our packages. When you were looking at this, did you actually have the landscape plan with the other impediments other than the ATM to look at?
Well, to be honest with you, I did, but this was, was so bad that I didn't dig deeper.
Okay.
The only place that I, I apologize, go ahead.
Yeah, you had mentioned that actually, one of the, one of the touring maneuvers actually scrapes the back of the ATM. So in a sense, the landscape plan, it would actually take out the light fixture that's there too?
If you give me a moment, I will find that for you. So these are the two turning diagrams provided by the applicant. This one is a fire truck. The fire truck, as you can see, now it's very difficult because they put the inbound and outbound from both directions on the same plan. So there's a lot of lines. But what you can see is if the truck to get in, he's on the wrong side of the road, coming in, he runs over the handicap ramp, he runs over the curb, he runs over the curb on this side, coming from this direction, he act, I'm sorry, this is him, from this direction, he actually brushes against the side of the ATM right there. And that's the pumper, which DPW has said is not their largest truck. They have a bigger truck.
Right, but an SU thirty or a moving van would be as similar size as a pump truck?
Well, here's an SU thirty, so they provided that as well. So the SU thirty comes down the road on the wrong side of the road, comes across, runs over the handicap ramp here, runs over the curb here, and then comes in, makes this turn, comes out. And if he's turning left, he's okay, but if he's turning right, he runs over the handicap ramp here and he's on the wrong side of the road to try to get by. And that's just to get in and out. What he does once he's in here, I don't know, because there's nowhere for him to stop and park to unload.
Understood, okay. Thank you very much for the clarification.
Okie dokie.
That's okay.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I had a couple.
Yes, sir, Mr. Wells.
I did have, actually, I'm sorry, I have, I do have one last thing, but I'll answer your questions first if you'd like, because I wanted to talk about pedestrian safety very quickly. But answer your questions first if you'd like.
Okay, I'll just, I'll just go ahead, thank you. The, as you know, the state's encouraging multifamily housing and affordable housing close to transportation centers in this building, I don't know, half a mile from the railroad station. When you do your analysis for any sort of building, do you, do you take into account proximity to railroad stations whereby some people may feel they don't need a car because, you know, they can, they can walk to the, to the train and also there are grocery stores nearby, i.e. you live in a more urban environment and you're, you're doing more walking than, than driving. Do you, do you take that into account and did you take that into account in your analysis here?
And the answer to both of those questions is yes. I have worked on projects in more dense urban areas where there is literally no parking provided. I have worked on, on projects in, you know, in New York City where it's normal that there's no parking provided. I have even, even in places, I have worked in Stanford, I've worked in New Haven, where the parking is very, very minimal, very, very minimal, but there is a, Greenwich is, is a kind of an interesting place. It has a lot of urban characteristics, but it is not a fully urbanized area. It has, people still need a car for, if you're not just taking the train into the city, or if you're not just, you know, you can't do all of your shopping on Greenwich Avenue. So you, you end up needing a car and you've got forty apartments. Yeah, there's a few people in there who won't have a car, but.
To answer the question another way, Mr. Wells, this, the state statute with which you are well familiar, PA twenty-one twenty-nine, has a provision that housing be, that, that projects like this one be, housing in general, multifamily be looked at in terms of vehicle miles traveled as a result of the build, non-build and that, you know, and not the parking demand per se. So it's another way of looking at it that we haven't adopted in which PA twenty-one twenty-nine says should be adopted. They don't mandate that we only look at that, but they say we should be looking at it. And that would, that's kind of where you're headed, is what happens? How much traffic are you generating and it, does some of it go away because you now have this building?
Right.
Does some of this parking demand actually go away? And they're giving themselves the credit and, but we're not doing the vehicle miles traveled analysis. Okay, is that it, Mr. Mitchell? I'm sorry. No, wait, wait, Mr. Wells has another question.
Yeah, one more question. If you, if you take out the ATM, you lose it, no ATM, how does that impact your, you know, turning radius and, and all that? I mean, does it help significantly or is it just, you know, doesn't make a whole lot of difference?
Well, I honestly did not do that exercise. My, my guess is that if the ATM was not there, you would not need to have the in and out driveways configured the way they are with the median where it is. And then you would not need to have the parking garage drives configured the way they are, which is, which is, you know, not, not a reasonable configuration. So its potential is that, yes, that you, you might solve a lot of the problems, but in fairness, I did not investigate that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And to just, to second, your first question is, the parking generation database does include nearness to rail stations and nearness to transit and things like that. So that is part of the calculation.
Thank you.
Very, very last thing, I need about thirty more seconds, pedestrian safety. There are a number of issues involving pedestrian safety. First of all, as we've noted, the lower level of the garage is going to be used during the daytime mostly by the commercial people who are heading toward the old bank building, heading toward the commercial building. If they desire to cross to that building, it is not an easy thing. Either they have to use the elevator to go up one flight, then across to the sidewalk and then along the sidewalk, or more likely, they're going to want to just walk across the parking lot. But if they walk across the parking lot, there is no access to the parking lot from the lower level for a pedestrian. They have to go down the entrance drive, which is just an improper way for that to exist. It looks as though there's a sidewalk there next to the drive, but it doesn't actually access the garage, there's a wall in the way. So I'm not sure if that was simply not completed or if the engineers intended to fix that or what, but it hasn't, it doesn't quite make the connection. Secondly, there is a handicap space in the lower level and there is no actual accessible route from that space to anywhere. That's probably something that can be fixed, but it is not shown on the plans at this time. Secondly, the, there are two handicap parking spaces opposite the ATM on the outbound drive. Those two spaces have no accessibility to anywhere. They cannot be accessed to the sidewalk in front of them because there's a wall in the way. And that means that the handicap people will have to go to the back of the cars, go along the back of the cars in the exit lane, out to the sidewalk. That simply is against all of the ADA requirements. You're not allowed to go behind parked cars and you're certainly not allowed to be in an exit lane. But that is the only accessibility that those people have. Last, oh, lastly, the two, the three parking spaces opposite the ATM will be blocked anytime there is somebody using the ATM. People will not be able to pull in or out of those spaces. And if there's a queue there, who knows, you know, they'll just be trying to figure out a way in and out. It's just not, it's not a proper way to have designed that. And it will lead to conflicts and lead to potential crashes and, I mean, they'll be minor, of course, right? People are backing out or not letting someone in. But it's, it's just not, not the appropriate way to have handled that. So our summary is that we believe that this site plan, as shown, will create a serious adverse impact on public health and safety, both on the site and in the immediate vicinity.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Appreciate your time and I'll happy to answer any other questions you have.
Any other questions from the commission? Alrighty, Patrick, you're gonna have to have Mr. Mitchell. Our next public speaker is Marlene Alonso and we're gonna go back to it being timed, folks, two minutes. Ma'am, if you would unmute, you can go ahead. Ms. Alonso, if you would unmute. There you go.
Okay, Madam Chair, I, you know, all my comments were covered by everyone else, so I'm going to pass at this time. Thank you.
Hungry people are grateful to you.
I'm hungry too.
Thank you. Our speaker after that is Christine McAlire. Ms. McAlire? There she goes, alright. Christina McAlire, if you would unmute, you're already. Ms. McAlire, if you can find your unmute?
Mitchell and you and Mel.
Wait, wait, whoever I'm listening to needs to mute.
It was Mr. Cohen, I got him.
Mr. Cohen, okay. All right. Okay, Ms. McAlire, can you unmute? All right, while Ms. McAlire is working on that, I'm gonna go to Brooke Fitzgerald. Thank you, Ms. Fitzgerald, if you would unmute, you can go ahead.
You. Thank you to the Planning and Zoning Commission for your time and for the opportunity to speak in opposition to the proposed plan for the rental building known as two forty Greenwich Avenue. Born and raised in Greenwich, I'm a first-time homeowner of an apartment on the fifth floor eastern side of Greenwich Harbor View at forty West Elm with beautiful views over Greenwich Avenue and the surrounding foliage. The plans for the rental two forty Greenwich Avenue building could not be more in the face of my fellow neighbors and me at forty West Elm, especially those of us on the east side, essentially an air shaft away from the proposed structure. The proposed building is simply too tall, too close, too noisy, too dangerous. It profoundly disrespects the existing residents of this wonderful neighborhood. Apologies for reiterating what we have already extensively covered, but I am alarmed that fire trucks will clearly lose critical life-saving time to reach my rear fifth floor apartment due to the new traffic situation. I fear that the plans of the new building will threaten the structural integrity of our almost one-hundred-year-old building, putting my life and that of my neighbors at grave risk. As a professional writer working remotely, I take great inspiration and joy from being able to look out my window while I'm writing. If the proposed plans for two forty Greenwich Avenue go ahead as proposed, I'll be staring directly at a brick wall into people's bedrooms and noisy balconies and rooftop in the dark echoing polluted and depressing canyon that the new building will create. Many of us on my side of the building either work remotely or are retired and spend significant time at home. Our physical and mental health will suffer as a result as a loss of this light and clean airflow. I invested my home and this community because Greenwich is a special town with residents who respect this historic downtown with its smaller town character and open spaces and sensible scale. I chose not to live in the tall, deeply saturated concrete canyons of New York again. This building does not serve this community in any way. Thank you for your time.
Perfectly done, ma'am, thank you very much. Ms. McAlire, have you been able to unmute? All right, I'm gonna move you back to the participants. If you would just kindly send an email instead, because we're gonna continue this application, patrick.laro, you can see his name on the screen at greenwichct.org. All right, Mr. Cohen is having a grand time there. All right, that is it for the public comment. Mr. Tessie, and I'm gonna go to you for summation. And you need to unmute yourself, my friend.
Thank you. Think I'm unmuted, right?
Yes, you are.
The opportunity to sum up and also make a few responses. So far as Mr. Cohen's characterization of the lawsuit in the issues, I would just leave it at this, that the hierarchy in Mr. Cohen, the hierarchy of our review condominium, Mr. Cohen made it crystal clear that no matter what, what project was proposed that had a residential component, is the reason why they said that on this site, would be, would be opposed vehemently. And it's been true, it's been true right along. We started with a, with actually even a smaller building three years ago and held out numerous olive branches to work with them and they weren't interested. So I say that in this context, that, so we expect each and every possible objection to be raised, even if it's. objection to be raised, even if it's, it defies logic. One being such a fight over the, this particular application for 40 units. When Mr., when Mr., I have to laugh a little bit. But Mr. Ferrari is more than happy to build this 60 units that we came in with, to you last summer with. It was only at the commission's urging that we worked with the Housing Trust Fund that reluctantly, Mr. Ferrari agreed to reduce the size of the building to four stories as opposed to six stories of residential use. But that's what we're all dealing with. And I should think we should take everyone's comments right from the opposition with that background of what, what you're all dealing with here. So insofar as his request that the commission somehow has the authority not to hear an application, I think you summed it up correctly, Madam Chair. That's not the case at all with pending application, pending litigation, particularly litigation that really has nothing to do with any aspect of zoning. It specifically has to do with rights that are really, again, I'm not gonna adveratize, adveratize on the subject. There'll be, there'll be a hearing in God soon and these issues would be put to bed satisfactorily. Declaration of condominium incited is one that clearly spells out for the record, and as Mr. Cohen well knows, knows in Article nine, Section G, in case any commission members are interested in reviewing it, that our client has the full right to develop this particular portion of its property. They, it was an LLC owns it, Mr. Ferrari's property, so long as implies with the building code and obtains a certificate of occupancy for whatever building it is. The residential restrictions referring to has to do with the occupancy of, of remote teller kiosks, not the land. And that's right in the declaration, then, more for the record. When it comes to Mr. Cohen's comments about shared parking and how it, and how it, Section 162 of the regulations comes into play, if you read Section 162 of the regulations, you see that it has to do with separate parcels of land, not one parcel of land where there's a pool, where there's a sharing or a pooling of parking in those contexts. It's not appropriate for this application. As I've reiterated, as stated and I reiterate again, we understand our zoning obligation to continue to maintain 55 parking spaces during normal business hours under Section 6158 of the regulations of the commercial building. Retail may be open a little later. Retail component of the building has a certain parking requirement. Majority of the parking requirements allocated actually to the office space. The retail component takes up about 5% of the entire building. So it's, it's a non-issue. It's thrown up against the wall. If it sticks, it doesn't stick. What I tried to say is that when anybody's operating a, a parking lot that we're open to have it work as efficiently as possible, whether it's by signage or, or some managed parking, the word pool was, word pooled was never used. That's a different context, that the parking can be managed. And I think it's important that there is full cooperation here. Well, none is really needed because parking or the lack of parking is not, under 830G, a life safety factor. Though it's like no good deed goes unpunished by providing the parking. But we're providing it and we're gonna manage it so that it makes total sense without jeopardizing the requirements to maintain that commercial building with its constituent conditions, which principally parking, as was noted by Mr. Rello, Rello later. All these issues about, well, the parking's remote, it's not, some of the parking's remote, it's not easily accessible. The parking's in the same area as it exists today. That's where the parking lot is, except it's undercover. Some people probably be happy that their parking, that, that their cars are undercover, whatever that's worth, which is really not much in this context.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell's comments are concerned, I, I think in terms of the site traffic, EPW has expressed some issues, concerns, and as I said earlier, I highlighted it, that was one area we still have to work with EPW on. So the fact that he brought that up, thank you. We're aware that there may have to be some modifications and we will work with EPW on that. We trust they will work in good faith with us, as they always do, to come up with a plan that is, that is as possible it could be for this property. And so far as Mitchell, Mr. Mitchell's analysis, I've had, I have gone back and forth a bit with our traffic engineer and what we'll do is we'll provide a written response because we don't believe he took the proper credits in his chart for an urban setting and the type of parking that we have here that's shared. There's a major difference between his numbers and our numbers and we'll get them reconciled. So experts always differ, as we know, and funny, they usually are on the side of the person that paid for them. But we will analyze appropriately his, his chart when it comes to the amount of parking. Again, although it's not an, shouldn't be a factor, I think he, I, I think that you should have the proper analysis and it's proper for us to make a determination here as to where we think some improvements needed in his analysis. He clearly discounted parking, as you pointed out, Ms. Albin, that's on the site. He chose to make assumptions about availability of spaces of, he chuckled a bit because he had to do with bank spaces and we all know, nobody seems to go to banks anymore anyway. But in any event, there are statistics that we can all look to and, and if our traffic engineers are a year or so behind, then we'll bring it up to where it's supposed to be, to be in compliance with our, our goal here of giving you a full picture of what it is we are providing and how we can address concerns within reason and in the context of a 30G.
Okay.
They have missed something, but I I'm getting on myself, but I'm happy.
You're gonna have enough, you're gonna have an opportunity. Mr. Tessie, so we are going to go back to beta with Mr. Mitchell's analysis. If you have an update and analysis that you would give us, then we can have and just send it to Mr. Laro, then he can pass that on to beta as well and we can get a complete package to them.
We'll provide a response as they say.
We are obviously, as you know, gonna talk to counsel regarding some of the statutory interpretations that we've heard tonight, both from the Chair of the Trust as well as from Mr. Cohen. And I think the other thing, it was, it's curious to me that the fire department, our fire department didn't raise some of the issues that were, got raised tonight. So I would like to go back to our fire department and ask them about those and why they didn't raise them. I know DPW raised issues, but the fire department didn't raise the turning radii issues.
I think the fire department, I'm sorry, I just wanted to interject.
They did too, Mr. Bristol, I saw that. I saw that email.
I was gonna say, yes.
Yes.
I didn't mean fire department. I don't believe that the, and I could be wrong, I don't believe DPW was reviewing the plan in the context of having to drop curbs because they weren't on the site plan they reviewed. So we're gonna have Mr. D'Angelo work with DPW. And as I said, where we can
Yeah, hang on a sec. I would hang on. Yeah, yeah, but I would just hang on. We need to go back to the fire department and we need to talk to Rob about, Rob Natali, about how he reviewed it. And because what we're hearing, different opinions, which means we're gonna have to get our own expert testimony or try to reconcile all these opinions. So we're gonna start out, we've got beta, we're gonna go to beta, we're gonna talk to council and we're gonna talk to fire. And if we don't get a good answer from fire, we may get some sort of code where somebody to, to respond to us who is a code, a building, a, an emergency. Because you know that fire, that whole thing under state law is a different thing than the building code. It's all in its own set of statutes, which is crazy. And you know that. Okay, that's what we're gonna do. And give us time to get all of that. Y'all get your traffic redone and give us anything else you wanna give us and we're gonna go back to you once we've got answers and get you back onto an agenda.
Thank you. Well, look, where, on, on fire, I think it's important to realize that our architect and our, both our architects and Mr. Molnar projects, you know, basically in charge of the project, met with not only the fire.
I get it, Mr. Tessie, but
Fire marshal, but also, but also building. I just wanna point it out, point it out to you and it's fine. You have to get comfortable in that regard.
There you go. So we have to get, we have to talk to Rob Natali.
No, that's fine. No, no, I understand.
Alright, okay.
The other point, I just wanna make one, one real
Yes, go ahead.
As I said, we worked in good faith with Mr. Barilak and took up the commission's suggestion, we work with Mr. Barilak. If there is any hesitancy on anybody's part, that here are issues, then the sooner we know about them, the better. So I'm glad you're gonna be working with council and we'll try to get information from staff because as I said earlier, believe me, I had speak to Mr. Ferrari. He will just change the application back to the sixth story, set aside. So that he is in compliance. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Alright, thank you.
Good night.
Alrighty, okay, folks, it's 8:22. Does everybody need a break?
Yes.
Alright. Okay, 20 minutes enough? We only have a little bit of stuff left to do, but it, the Nichols discussion may take us a while and then we just do the, we got the ADUs and then the Nichols discussion and then next minutes. Well, okay, so eight, 8:42, we, 8:43, it just ticked. We are gonna reconvene and eat some carbohydrates. And now we're a complete set again. And, oh yeah, we don't get an attorney this time. What a shame, because we're gonna let Patrick talk. So we now go to the second item in our public hearing, which is the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Department for a zoning text amendment, which to cut it short is for accessory dwelling units. And I will turn it over to Patrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, well, the commission has been working on this for almost 18 months since the RTM adopted to opt out of the statewide regulation regarding the same idea of accessory dwelling units. And the commission has gone back and forth with several designs on it and I think we've come up with a very holistic and appropriate regulation regarding accessory dwelling units. And just to highlight, it, it's only four points, so I don't wanna, again, make this a longer discussion. It needs to be, but the major changes from our current regulations and that are in moratorium and the ones that are being proposed this evening are the following. So the, we've, we've eliminated, or what's been eliminated is the deed restriction and tenant restrictions on the 80 units that we have had in the past. Prior to this amendment, it was either affordability, age or disability were the tenants of the units and that is now open to all persons. We are increasing the maximum size detached, or as we call it in this regulation, external ADUs to 800 square feet in the R6, seven and 12 zones, 1,000 square feet in the R20, RA1 and 1,200 in the RA2 and RA4. The lower zones, R6, that is unique because prior to this amendment, we, we did not allow ADUs in the R6, but we're considering it here. Those numbers align exactly with accessory units, accessory buildings, I should say, or detached structures in the zone, so there's no disparate regulation there. It's, it's equal in, in those matters. And then we've also increased the size of attached or internal in this regulation, units, which is 35% of the existing dwell, or the primary dwelling. And we don't have any standards in here that are in excess of what is permitted in the, for single families dwellings in the zones that we've talked about. And there are clearly defined practices and procedures in the regulation where the other one, other, the older outgoing reg, talked a lot about occupancy and deed restrictions and some of the, the formalities in the process. This does a lot more to explain and define and lay out a procedure or a straight procedure for creating accessory dwelling units in Greenwich. And I think with that, I will ask the commission if they have anything they wanna add and then we can go from there.
Madam Jenkins?
Yes, I think the, the only other thing I'd like to add to Pat's excellent summary is that we are requiring that the owner of the property live either in the primary unit or in the ADU. And that is to prevent people from basically turning it into two rental units in a single family residence zone. And I think it also makes sure that there's a, a high degree of, of maintenance of the property because the person who owns it is living there.
Right, and that is also similar to the, the current regulation too. So thank you very much.
I just have a question, because I was just wondering if somebody is not living there temporarily and wants to rent out the property as two units, for whatever reason, could that be a consideration?
I think the, well, I, I'm going to say that I, I would imagine residency is going to be
By law.
primary consideration. So if you are here and this is where you pay your taxes and this is where you vote, then I would say that you are in compliance, would be in compliance. And if you had a temporary renter of a room or your house while you were away for a few months, that, that would not be a violation of zoning regulations.
Okay, that's what I understand.
But no, you can't go anywhere, in case you were thinking about it.
Only Mr. Levy, actually, that's, that's gonna be
The special Doghouse is gonna be some big accessory structure in a little while.
A question, Mary, you had some corrections, some typos. You mentioned you had some errors and, and, and we probably need to cover those.
Okay. Sent them to Patrick and now I don't have them in front of me. I can run through it. Obviously, the, there's a spelling error in the definition of primary unit. Should be principal P-A-L, not P-L-E. As a former teacher of English, as a new language, I'm embarrassed to say that I didn't catch that quickly enough. There's also some periods missing, the effective date would have to be added. And there are square brackets in 3J that need to be removed. That was the full extent of my Scrivener's corrections, Madam Chair.
Great.
I had a few more, but that's fine. I had a few more, but that's fine. There's some double parentheses and things like that that I noted.
All right.
And I think, Patrick, you mentioned the, the only thing that I was not sure of is the section references because we're adding definitions and sick in, uh. In the earlier things, and I'm not sure all the cross references work, but that's just cleanup.
We will, we will make sure when we put it into the regulation, we will have, we will, we'll do, well, I'll have, I'll have an army of proofreaders help me, but yes.
Thank you. An army of proofreaders in addition to me, you mean?
Yes, more than you and myself.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
One question for Patrick.
Yes, sir.
And that is, there's a rumor that you're gonna be combining all the amendments into one new.
Yes.
Building zone regulation. I'm just wondering if you could give an update on the status of that effort.
Uh, once this regulation is integrated, it, I, it will be complete. Everything that we've done over the past, uh, I'll, I think it's three years, but it may be just two. So we will have a new clean copy for everybody. And thank you for asking me, Arnd, because that, that was my, I'm gonna follow up with a question. No, no one has the answer here is who wants paper copies or who just wants the digital? So we will, uh, I will make sure that that gets circulated and obviously for the public, we will have all that available on the website and in the office.
Here's just so you know, um, Patrick, um, just sharing the perspective. I believe that we all, we all keep two computers open. When we're in hearing, we've got our material on one and we are looking at each other on the other one. And we need the regs to be in hard copy while we're doing that so we can multitask. That is what some of us do and it makes us look really smart because we can say, oh, section six, two oh five. Which by the way, when you reprint it. Can you get us like a fold out or something? Cause I couldn't read it in the meeting today.
Fold out of two oh five?
Yeah, so I need bigger print now.
All the notes.
Yeah.
I couldn't read.
Like we have in the office.
Yeah, it, it should, it should be that way. But if it's not, then, then I apologize. But yeah, we will typically, that's what we do is the tables come out, uh. Double size and those, so that, that should. Uh, I can't speak to the font size. I mean, that, I think that's all eleven or twelve, but you know, we will. Absolutely, uh, make sure that, that those are in the, in the published document.
Yeah, I just, I know it wasn't the notes. I couldn't, I, yeah, there was something, I couldn't read that one page that has all the numbers. It, it gets too, it's getting, and I know it's, I'm sorry, I'm, I have a, I'm ADA now on this one, so. Um, technically visually impaired, so anyway, but we're digressing. Shall we move on?
Public comment, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do we have any public comment on this application? Anybody from the public wish to speak about our ADU regulations? No, there's a bunch of people here, but I think there are people who just haven't left. Um. In that case. There is, does anybody oppose closing this application at this time?
No.
Seeing no opposition, this application is hereby closed. And then. Mr. Bazili, uh, wait, oh, Mr. Hegney.
Is next up.
No, no, I think he wants to make a comment and I am going to, I, okay, let me just check.
He's the next up.
No, I know he is, but he's gotta wait till we close the public hearing. Mr. Hegney, did you want to make a comment on this application? Mr. Hegney?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Did you want to make a comment on the ADU application?
Uh, I think it's a real good step in the right direction. Uh, the one, uh, comment I would make is that. In order for these to be effective, you have to reduce the overall cost. Of getting them through the approval process. And I, I think that's something that I, I have mentioned that to, to Pat. And I think that's something to look at so that we can make this more user friendly. I, I think this is a really good step. I hope that it does provide these types of housing opportunities, but, um. But I, I, I think it needs to be just a little bit more helpful in going through the process. But I'll continue that discussion with staff.
That would be great. Um, and I'm again going to close this. Um, does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Well, this, Mr. Leroux, do you object to closing this application?
Well, I, I just would like to add to Mr. Hegney's comment. I, I believe that it's the intention that these are as of right. Proposals and that the, with the materials provided, except for special permits, these would all be. Uh, zoning, these essentially zoning permits for these.
Here's, here's the issue. I believe that one of the things that. That we're trying to get to, that, that he may be trying to get to, because I've talked to people while we were considering this. In order to build the ADUs. You have to spend a lot of money and satisfy building code and build it. Okay. So the question is, is there any way that we can streamline the process? Now, I'm, as you know. My deepest fear is that we have a unit that does not meet building code and puts somebody at, at life risk.
Correct.
I can't imagine anything worse or scarier that we can do as a commission. However. For example. I can tell you that I heard from somebody today who discovered that on a multifamily that the fire department has reviewed now, you gotta go to the fire department. To get, okay, so it's the question is. Is there any way that we can get John Valerie to look at them and help streamline them? But without giving up anything on health and safety.
That, that is something, I mean, Mr. Hegney in particular, we've talked about this. I, I have. Not had a conversation with the building officials about. Is there interpretation or is there alternate means to have these, um, these type of projects reviewed? But we could certainly do that. And, and again, not to. Make this not the commission's concern because it is, but. How they want to review it is not something that we can control. But again, if we can have a discussion and have that. Start, uh, maybe turning things into it and, and maybe more of a streamlined fashion. I'm all for, uh, facilitating that, so.
Okay.
Comment that, that just the idea of the reconfiguration. Of the department. Is a step towards making things more streamlined. So, uh, making the communication between. Uh, say the fire department and us. Uh, uh, better. Well, may help the process considerably.
When is that happening?
Well, the, 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 the department's under construction right now.
But that's, they're not going to be next to us. Conservation's gonna be next to us.
No, I'm just saying the idea of that is a good one.
Oh, yeah, we, I love the fact that we're gonna be, that Patrick's gonna be sitting next to the head of conservation. That is so exciting.
Yeah.
He's gonna be oozing green.
Poor, poor Ben.
Yeah, and I think.
Have to bring his clippers there to keep the green back.
I think once we have some experience with the more generous provisions here, we'll be able to see where we can streamline it, where, where things need to be. Uh, given more attention. I mean, we don't have any experience into this yet, but, um, I like the idea of streamlining it, making it, um, more easily accessible.
And, and not to belabor this point, but and, and we, I think people have heard me say this. I know Katie said this before me, the, the. The largest impediment for these types of units in town has not never truly been the zoning regulation alone. It is almost always been. The, the cost, right, of, of actually doing the work to make it compliant with building codes and that. That those together make it, uh, made it just not an attractive option, I think. Um, for a number of reasons and, and not solely zoning, so.
But so one of the questions though to ask John Valerie is, is there a way you can satisfy the fire egress question? Without, is there a way that you could have a process? But I'm afraid, I'm always afraid of, there's just not a window. That a body can fit through and all those kinds of things, all those building code issues. That somebody is at risk thanks to a process that we put in place. So that's.
And, and, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to suggest anything that would make that possible. So, thank you.
And again, the provision is in there for code compliance. So without saying there's any less standards in terms of safety, there is to have a one family house.
That, that's, Mary, I think you just kind of put it, hit the nail on the head. There's no latitude in the building code. Um, you know, i- it's, it's all about life safety. And to streamline something, it would have to be in our purview. How, how quickly can we get it in and out of the office? Uh, if you want to make it less expensive, less fee from our end. But it is what it is down the hall in the building department and they have their own process. Trying to streamline it, you know, eh, they've got things that they need to be satisfied. Uh, before, before they even actually taken that, uh, submittal for a building permit. So. Lot of things to kind of talk about.
No, there are only certain things you can do. Um.
But again, I, I, I'm, I'm here to tell you that I'm willing to at least have the sit down and understand so that we all are, um. Talking about the same thing, you know, and, and hopefully may, maybe, maybe there is some things that we can do. Again, like Nick suggested, administrative, you know, way that we handle these processes. That could help with the, you know, making this a little more streamlined, but, um. I, I, I won't know until we talk about code stuff, but again.
That's the issue. So see what John Valerie says. Okay. Um, so with that, um, we got our public comment. And the commission doesn't have any more comments or questions. Does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Does he seeing no objection, this application is hereby closed and. The public hearing is now over. Mr. Bazili, I know you're gonna miss us because we are so much fun. But.
Yeah.
We'll be back. Thank you, sir. Yeah, no, that's why I enjoy having him. All right. And with that, um, we could, um. We can now let Mr. Hegney back in. And we will go to our discussion item, which is Nichols MD LLC for a pre-app review. Uh, for, uh. An existing structure to be utilized as a medical office. I believe it's already got office use, but. Then to construct a four unit residential structure. Uh, behind it at thirty-two Field Point Road. Hello, Mr. Hegney, please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, but the, uh, medical use has already gone through an administrative approval.
Yeah, that's what I remembered.
And the building is under renovation now, uh, maintaining it all of its, uh. Uh, size and, um, and square footage, uh, and maintaining the exterior of the building, uh, as it. It has looked, uh, for the last hundred and thirty years. Um. The, uh, what we're proposing here is to add four residential units in a detached structure to the rear. Uh, if you can go to, uh. I guess, uh, slide six. Probably a good one. So this shows the existing building on the right hand side. Uh, we're, uh, expanding the driveway a bit. And that's being done so the SU thirty vehicles, uh, can make the turnaround. Uh, and, uh, and we can have deliveries that, uh, that work on the site. Uh, we are not elevating the building as much, uh, as, uh. As it would need if we had to drive a, a vehicle that's twelve feet high, uh, underneath it. So that, that enables us to, uh, to lower its profile, uh, unless in the event it, uh. It needed to be attached to this building. So that's sort of one of my first questions. Um, since this is a, a pre-app and I'm supposed to come equipped with questions. Uh. Uh, my first one, actually, my first one is, uh, do I go to HTC or ARC?
Well, are you? You're not getting an HO.
No. But, uh, under section six dash two oh five triple asterisk.
Says if it's found to have, right?
Right. And it talks about historical, cultural, agricultural, uh, merit. Uh, be a significant element of the streetscape, uh, preservation of which fosters a sense of history, preserves architectural heritage. I, I think this building fits under, uh, well, all of those categories, frankly. Uh, and. The, the, the board that I would anticipate would want to look at this more would be HTC versus ARC.
I believe you are absolutely correct.
So sort of the discussion you had, uh, earlier on, uh, on three nine.
I didn't, you don't want to be at Pink Pumball either.
Uh. So, uh, I, I said, that's, that's, that was my first question is, uh, do I go to HTC with this?
And I believe it that our answer, does anybody disagree with that answer?
I disagree.
Okay, well, tell us why you disagree, Given.
Um, it's my understanding that, uh, we need determination of the historic value of the building, existing building.
Right.
And I believe that we didn't need an architectural review of the proposed building. I want HTC to tell me if the building on the street is a contributing building. And I want ARC to, to review the architecture of the new building.
Um, it is a very good point. Mr. Hegney, what's your comment on that?
Um. As long as I'm asking them.
Separate questions.
Different questions.
Yes.
But, uh, to, to go back to your prior application, uh, when I had four ten Greenwich Avenue. Uh, going through this process, oh, we actually ended up having a joint meeting between ARC and HTC. Because I couldn't get them to agree.
Hmm.
One design. They, they were both in, in very different camps. Uh, and the way we resolved it was a joint meeting. Uh. Uh, I, I can certainly see going to, uh, HTC for the front building. Uh, I, I think it certainly merits, uh, preservation. Uh, and then going to the, the, the rear building with, for ARC. Uh. Uh, if, if Rudy is, uh, Rudy's around somewhere, I know, because he's been waiting since.
Yes, he's, he's here. He is indeed here.
I, I, I'd like to get his thought on it, uh.
Before, before you do that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I am going to bump this one. Um, I wanna talk about something that came up yesterday. So, um. Here's the question. In your current setup. Your HTC is going to ask the question about the historic. Streetscape and the impact of what you're putting behind. And HTC, we're kind of saying would have that. I think that's a good angle, right? So now when you're here, HTC is gonna say, well, we want to opine. On the impact on the historic building of how this looks from behind. And we are now asking ARC to do that. And you are going to get caught then in the crossfire because. I, HTC would be absolutely right that how this addition behind here. Looks from the street impacts the historic nature of this building. How does the commission suggest we do that, given Nick's suggestion? Which is, is a sense of, I mean, I see his point, but I also think somehow. Who gets to decide on the streetscape? Should it just be us? On the.
Streets, okay, so as you read, I believe it's through asterisk, three asterisks, A, point nine F I R, that's what we're taking this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Point nine F I R for an existing structure found by planning and zoning after consultation with historic district to have historical, cultural, architectural merit. Okay. FA, not point nine F I R for an existing structure.
Mm-hmm. And you're saying hold on to the existing.
Well, wait, wait, what I'm saying, what I'm saying is that. We're looking at a new structure. So is it point nine F I R for the site or structure?
It's point nine for the site.
It doesn't say that.
No, I'll go, how I would interpret.
Nine for an existing structure, existing structure. Point nine F I R for an existing structure found by P and Z after consultation with HTC.
But that makes no sense. Because if it was an existing structure, then you wouldn't be needing to give them point nine because they're already legally non-conforming. The wording wouldn't be in it.
If you were adding to the building. If you added to the building, then they could go up to point F, to point nine F I R.
Point nine, so they would have to connect the addition. So once again, come back to the question of. Don't go there yet. Don't go there yet, but just to the question of who gets to decide. If the architectural merit, historic merit of this building is damaged by the new structure behind it.
That's the HTC because the building is contributing to the streetscape.
Then ARC does what?
Then the ARC after HTC says. Yes, this front facade, the building, front building is actually contributing to the street. The back building, in our opinion, isn't, is, uh, doesn't work. It works, whatever they say about it. Then the architecture, the design of the building goes to ARC because it's a brand new building.
But that's.
It's not an NHO, it's not an, uh, HO overlay. It's just another building.
But that's the problem, Nick. HTC says, we like this addition. This is what Mr. Hagney is asking us. Mr. Hagney, I'm never going to forgive you for asking this question. HTC says. We love how the new building looks. It fits great with the front. And it is complimentary to the historic nature of the front building. And that goes to ARC who goes, oh. We think the new building sucks and we think it should be revised. Now, we can't do that to an applicant.
So the question we come down is. Does the HTC's purview just narrow to say? The front facade, the, the front building. Is historic. And contributes to the street. End of story.
No.
And then separate goes ARC, the building, next, this, the detached structure in the back. Goes to the ARC.
For those of you who are not going insane by this discussion, we need other people to weigh in because what I'm arguing here is the Department of Interior makes guidelines. When you add something to a historic building, that it not take away. From the historicity of the building. So who do you guys want to see do it? You've heard two points of view. Um, what do you think?
Uh, I, madam chair, I, 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 I agree, I tend to agree with Mr. MacRae on the reading of the language.
Okay, all right.
And I think that if it's attached. And it's an addition to the existing building, then I think it should all be HTC. If the applicant wanted to seek an approval for two separate buildings. I, I, I think Mr. MacRae is also correct. So I, I think it all depends on. What path that the, uh. The applicant wants to go in, um, to seek approval for the project.
Lucky you, Mr. Hagney. Next is Barilak and after that is Mary.
I, I, I love the thought of having a joint meeting. We ultimately decide, do we not? And so why don't we?
I kind of like that idea too.
Just do a joint meeting and say, we, we respect the two purviews of the two bodies with respect to the two buildings, where we're not going to let you guys. Pull this poor applicant into shreds.
Yeah, because what, that's what we don't want. Exactly, Mr. Barilak. We don't want a shredded applicant. I can yell at Mr. Hagney. You can yell at Mr. Hagney, but we don't want him shredded by other people. Mary.
Um, yes, first of all, I'd like to start by apologizing to Mr. Hagney because I raised. The issue of the absence of a narrative on his pre-application at the briefing yesterday, and it was my oversight. So, Mr. Hagney. I'm sorry about that. But I also agree that I think a joint meeting makes sense because you're going to have both. Both points of view. And I think it's particularly important for the HTC to have some sense of whether it affects. The effect of that building to have something behind it. And the only way to do that is be in the room at the same time. So I agree.
Okay, Mr. Levy.
Oh, so I, I, I just want to make sure I understand. Uh, if, if you have a joint meeting, uh, HTC still has to make a determination.
Yes.
Um, which it would do.
At that meeting, they could take a.
They could do it. They could just give a roll call at that meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, I think that, uh. The, the development, uh, makes sense, given that this is how. Other properties have worked. And, uh, you know, even next door, they have, um, buildings behind, um. But, uh. Uh, there. Because it's not attached. There becomes an, an issue about. What is the entrance and how do you get there and that kind of stuff? And, uh, um, anyway, so. You have to work all that, that, uh.
Oh. Which then says they should come back. You're going to come to us first, right, Mr. Hagney?
Oh, yes. Yeah, this is our pre-app. Uh, we're, we'll come in with a full application.
Tell you what, you come into us with the full application. Let's assume you're going to have a joint meeting, but let's see. If we can sort some stuff out to simplify it. I think that's where Mr. Levy was going to simplify that joint.
Yes, I, I think that, that you need to make some decisions first before you go to them and, um. Just, you know, this is, this is a bill, a, a freestanding building. That needs to be well defined. Right now, um, there's no way to understand what it is you're doing. You know, it's. You have the, the parking below and you're not increasing the parking. But, um. So, I mean, there are a lot of little things that you just have to come up with, uh. How they work. And then that, that, that will better determine what, you know, what, what we do, uh, what you should do.
All right, um, Patrick?
Um, I, I'm sorry, this is going to come out of left field, but.
Oh, no.
I have a recollection that a lot of these decisions that the commission has made. Included a preservation or facade easement. I, is that, I, I.
I am disturbed. I am disturbed by the fact that it's only six two oh five. I, I think I said that at the briefing yesterday. I would have loved to have seen. It was i- in the points we were going to make, this was the one of them. I would love to see some sort of. Some sort of preservation commitment. Just because this is a lovely building and it's an asset in town. It's, it's, it's nice.
Yeah, and I, I don't have, madam chair, I, I don't have a list on the top of my head that I can run off of, but I, I do feel like there has been a few that I've come across. That. Use this section, but the commission either decided or. Somehow we, we, we did, there was a preservation, like a facade easement on it and, and I'm, I'm drawing a blank at addresses right now, but.
Well, we've done it a million times with the arm.
There, there, there actually is a, an example. It's at twenty four Field Point, which is. Right in the picture right now.
Oh, sorry.
That was done through. A, it's six dash two oh five. That was not done through an historic overlay.
And did we, and the, the commission at that time get a easement for the preservation part of it or?
Uh, it, it, no, there was no preservation on it. Um, just looking at that, uh. At that approval that, this was done in nineteen eighty eight. There, uh. But it didn't have a preservation easement. I'm, I'm thinking of another one that I did at one eleven, uh, Mason Street. Uh, we did do that as an HO. That was a detached. Building behind the.
So, Mr. Hagney, by citing all these examples, are you saying that you would help us and do? And, and, and you would consider you, you would consider doing a, a facade easement?
Uh, I, it, uh, would I consider it certainly, but it's not my property.
Yeah, you know what I mean. Your client.
I need to discuss that with my client.
Yeah, your client.
It's certainly.
Can you get your client to consider it? Because we'd sure love to do something because it's. Um, I mean, obviously. The configuration is not the original one. This is a filled in porch.
Yeah.
Okay, so this isn't what the, what the building looked like originally, but it came out kind of cool and quirky. In how they've added to it over time in the front. Um, so. Uh, it'd be fun to keep. Mr. Wells.
Just to process suggestion, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So that, so that I, I would suggest we have a special meeting on this so that, you know. ARC and, uh, HTC doesn't have to sit through one of our long meetings before we, we get to this.
Oh, that joint meeting wasn't going to include us.
Oh, okay. Even better.
We were just gonna send, we were gonna send Patrick as referee to assist Marisa.
What? Hold on, what? Excellent.
And we weren't going to have, because they're all advisory to us, so we need to step out of the way and let them advise.
Great. Love it.
Yeah, you, you don't want that, but Marisa's probably going to need some help refereeing.
Sure.
I mean, okay, so, uh, Mr. Mr. MacRae.
So, uh, as Mr. Hagney just pointed out, the building next door.
Yeah.
Is a typical, is a very good, is the, is the example. Of the triple asterix, A point nine FAR.
Mm hmm.
The front building is saved and there is an attached. Addition to the existing structure. That's the poster trial.
Yep.
Because every time I read this, no matter how I read this section of this regulation. It doesn't talk about a detached, separate building. It even goes on to say. The mid-commission may authorize an addition or a connection between such structures. Or modification of coverage, setback, parking, et cetera. Okay, but it doesn't talk about. Doesn't talk about separate buildings.
I think we're all kind of buying that argument of yours. It, it, um. Because we were also going there yesterday. Um, can someone turn off their second computer? Um, we were also, we were going there yesterday with how the, uh, no. Somebody has a second sound on. It's not leaving. Arn? Oh, they stopped. Okay. Um. We, no, it's still happening. We're getting it, getting an echo because someone has a second sound system on. Somebody's got two computers on Zoom. Okay, I think it's good now. Um, so, Mr. Hagney, now that it's our questions, one of the things what Nick just raised. Absolutely on the money. How do you do this? And if you'd like, Mr. Ridberg to comment so that, uh. It, it fits in to the, to the historic building.
Well, one of the things and Rudy chime in on this, uh, what we were looking to do was to have that. Building at a lower profile. The building next door has a layer of, uh, uh, floor of parking. And then three floors above it. We're looking.
You're going to do two.
Parking and two.
Mm hmm.
Um. And, uh, in order to have the, the, the main first floor of residential units lower. Uh, we didn't want to have it to the point where I, we'd have to have a, uh. Uh, a SU thirty truck at twelve feet high. For a UPS, a FedEx truck drive underneath it because then it would have to be considerably higher. And we thought that that was, again, detracting from the historic building in the front. So, uh, that, that's why we thought it was better to go with a detached rather than an attached. Uh, it is the approach that I took with one eleven Mason Street where the, the. Uh, the, it's a detached building with the new units that were part of, uh, of that approval.
So in that case, you would be able to do. If you did an HO. Nick's read of the regulation would work for you?
I believe so, yes.
So if you did an HO, a full HO, then you could have a detached building.
That, 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 there is precedent for that, that the commission has done, I believe.
So there's a decision for you, Rudy, and your client to make, but I, the commission is looking for. Some consistency, I think, behind. Something that works behind. I'm not. Uh, uh, to me, this building, that long stretch of green is kind of weird, but I'm not an architect.
I'm happy to comment, please.
Of course, Mr. Ridberg. We would be pleased to have you comment.
Great. Unfortunately, I guess I'm, I was the instigator of this project. Because they were renovating the front building. Um, and we were talking to them about doing that work. They're going to have their. Uh, their, um, skincare facility in the front building. And at the time, I looked at the building, uh, the Haskell property. And said, okay, there's an interesting way to add to a building. Uh, but I think the difference here, and I looked at it that way first, add on to the building. But we did do a couple of considerations. One is the Haskell building is mostly for office space, I believe. Okay?
I believe you're right.
Where, and then they have residential on the upper floor, the fourth floor. But here, this is two different, totally different facilities. And I felt that, you know, how do you combine a building and put a firewall between? Either, either have two buildings that are separate. Um, let alone, let alone the fact that we have to, uh, we'd have to raise the building up to get the, the trucks underneath. We also then blacked the, blocked the, blocked the back of this building, which is a different use than our building. And we have residential. We want to have light ventilation. We also think we'd be in a good neighbor to the Haskell building by separating the building so that they can get. Light between the buildings and the building in front will stand alone by itself. And when I started the, the, um, discussion with the clients. That they were very interested in keeping this building, um. And maintaining it because they, they liked the architecture of it. I think they liked the, uh. The concept of maintaining it. Um, so, um, I think that's why we tried to push this building separately back. And if that requires an HO, um, I'll let, uh, Tom handle that. So that's my two cents on why we did what we did.
Thoughts from the commission on that? Any thoughts from the commission on, on what Mr. Ridberg just said?
On, on HO?
No, on why he is proposing it as a separate building. And how do you all react to that?
I think, uh, it can't be a separate building and use point nine FAR.
Well, it could under the HO, I think.
Under the HO, but not as it's proposed.
Right. So option door number one. Is they do an HO. With an attack, with a separate building or door number two is. They do six two oh five with an attached addition. And I'm asking the commission for input on that.
I, I like the, uh, detached alternative as, as stated by Rudy. I, I just think it flows better rather than having an enormous, uh. You know, skyscraper on one side, not to disparage the Haskell building, but. I think gives, and it's much more. Uh, enjoyable for the residents as well because they'll have more light. Otherwise, you're going to have one whole side of the building. Connected to the commercial building. So if I'm a resident, I'd much rather have a detached building.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I think, uh, the, the air and light. Idea of a detached building is very attractive for residences.
All right. And then, Mr. Hagney, you just need to double check because I, I don't remember what six one oh nine says. You can go to, I'm not.
Well, we, we, we just did that on, uh, one fifty one Hamilton Avenue.
And you, and, and, okay. So you're good. So you have.
Which is the reason we, we. Went HO after it had a, a, a medical use approved for years ago and not built.
So I think where we're starting to come out is sure, great to have a joint meeting with ARC and HTC, but whatever you guys decide, you definitely need to bring it to us first. So that we can be at peace with it, so that we can negotiate what happens with ARC, HTC if they see it joint. And maybe we'll tell you not to.
Well, I think if it's detached, as everybody's suggesting.
Mm hmm.
It seems all the only solution to that is actually HO.
Which then it just goes to HTC.
We, and we have specific, specific parameters to that.
Mm hmm. That's what I'm saying. So then it would only go to HTC. And we, okay, so that, there you go, Mr. Hagney. You got all the doors in front of you. Aren't we great? We made your life more complicated instead of answering questions.
You know, it, 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 it was a simple question that I started out with, but, uh, it, it's an important one.
And you.
And it really direct, it, it really dictates how this property is going to be developed, depending on, on which way you go. So. Uh. I, I, I'm. Really in the mind that, uh, that the detached. Rudy and I have been kicking this around quite a bit. We, he, he did have an attached. Uh, design. And we thought that this really worked better. So, uh.
Well, if you look at the way it is right now. Adding another attached thing to this is going to, I think it, it might make it look kind of squirrely because it's got this low roof and then it's got this high roof. And then you're going to have another high thing behind and it's all going to be attached, at least if you buy some space. I don't know, uh, what the architects think, but it, the addition on it, if you were dumping this addition, it would be so much simpler. This back addition right here.
Yeah.
But you're not. So, I mean, we got that. Okay.
So, um. That my next question was going to be attached or detached? my next question was gonna be attached or detached. And we've really gone through that.
Yep.
Quite well. And whether we use six two oh five or six one oh nine, that was my other question. And I, I think that's sort of gonna be where we end up with. Whether it's attached or detached, it all sort of interrelates with the regulations and, and the, the various consulting boards that are going to review this.
Yeah, I, I, I like this. There's a lot of advantages to, I mean, if you, if you did the HO, it's a wonderful thing because these are, these buildings look nice from the street. We were saying that at the briefing yesterday. They look so nice from the street. And they soften this area a lot. Because you come from the modern and town hall. And, you know, you come from all these brick structures and then you turn up towards the post road and you have this slowly softening with clavard. So, to have an HO to preserve that streetscape, it would be so great. So, if you, so that's one advantage of doing it separate. Another one.
A couple of the comments that came up at the briefing yesterday, one was the stair tower and elevator overrun.
Six one twenty-seven.
Yeah. Seemed to sort of dominate the facade of the building. Rudy's looking at that in terms of not having the elevator run to the roof deck and, and deal with the staircase a little differently so that it is not as prominent. And maybe is the, the part getting to the roof deck would be a, would be more internal. Those are some of the things he's been looking at. The whole idea was to have the residential building not be taller and it, although on, on some of these renderings, it may look that way. It, it is not taller than the existing building. And Rudy's taking steps to make sure that it, it does actually appear that way as well.
Okay.
I also wanted to say that Mr. Haskell did reach out to us. We have been in contact with him. We'll, we'll continue those discussions with him. Because his, his building is sort of a, a, a fine example of preserving the streetscape and, and, and having, he has seven thousand square feet of office there. So, it's, it's, it's a significant building along the street. And you really don't realize how big it is when you drive by. And that, that's what we're looking for on this, this property as well.
Yep, exactly. And that's gonna be, I think if we could get rid of that concern, your, your H D C conversation, regardless of whether or not A R C is involved, is a lot simpler. Mr. LaRoe, you have your hand up. And then Peter Levy. Sorry, I didn't see Mr. Levy till now. Go ahead, Mr. LaRoe.
The trees in this area of the site that are on the site plan and the, let me go up one. I think they're here in this. They don't show up in the, in the rendering. Is that, is that because they're just to show the building?
Correct. Looking to show the building.
Got it. Okay. So, I think I see it here. This, these, these are the, they're just ghosted or whatever here. Okay.
Yeah. And, and the, the trees on the north side would all be preserved. Some are on our property, some are on Mr. Haskell's, some straddle. But we would be looking to retain those.
And, and this weird trapezoid configuration on the rear parking lot, is that just keeping the existing condition or?
That, that, that's the lot configuration as we have it now. To be able to change that would involve dealing with sixty, that actually is a piece of sixty-six Field Point Road.
This asphalt here?
And while I'm telling that, the tri, the, the
What?
The notch in this.
I'm not, I'm, I'm, I'm just talking about the, the asphalt. I'm assuming this is the existing condition that we're looking at.
That is the existing condition, yes.
So, I'm sorry, this, this, I, I'm just, I'm struggling to figure out why the parking lot here needs to get wider as it gets deeper into the lot. And that's, that was my other question.
I can comment on that. So, the, we, we gained an additional parking space. The spaces that are there now, like always in these older buildings, are not truly conforming to town standards. So, we've adjusted that. And then there's an additional parking space below your arrow. There, it's a drive-in. And then you, you know, you still have your eighteen and twenty-three foot backup space.
Oh, that makes sense. Understood.
And it wasn't, there used to be a two or three car garage there, if you, if you ever looked at the old survey that was there that filled the back of that lot, which had been gone for quite a while.
Okay.
But I think we have a lot of, you know, we've added, we've, we've kept the trees. We will add some additional landscaping. And, you know, our building, our coverages all work well. So, and we have a new handicap, they have a new handicap ramp brought into the building in the front.
And, and this is my last pitch. Is, is there any way to start talking with everybody here about maybe having some interconnection? I don't know the topography exactly how it goes north and south, but I know, I know making a left out of here is probably not the easiest thing at certain times of the day. And having inner connections would, would, would be a solution to that. So, I, I just, I'm just making a pitch. I understand that, you know, you need other parties to say yes here. So. Okay.
Yeah, there, there is a bit of a drop off where, where that triangular cut into this lot is. And that, that's the lot that goes out to, to Dayton. We'll, we'll, we'll take a look at it.
It sounded like a cool idea when Patrick suggested it yesterday.
I, I think it benefits everybody in the long term, but obviously, you know, people need to see the
See the light. They need to see the light.
Yes. Anyway.
Okay, Mr. Levy, go ahead.
So, I, I was wondering if, if you might look at the opportunities here a little bit more broadly. And the simplicity of connecting the, the new and the old should not be dismissed. There are ways of dealing with the existing site limitations. You could have a circular driveway in front so you don't have to worry about the trucks going around and back. And as far as you could have a much better entry into this new building on, on the backside here and eliminate this stair and elevator tower by connecting them and, and, and go entering the parking lot more in the center of the building, in your building. So, there are things you could do. And the other thing is, you, you know, right now, you have a, a real separation of, of use. Well, you can change that around if you connect the buildings. You could, you can adapt and reuse the front building in a different way. Which, and that's just gives you more possibilities for connecting them, which might be a, a good solution here because it's awkward the way you have it right now. So, in, in effort to make it a little bit more work more easily, if, if the, you know, if, 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 if you don't necessarily separate these, but you combine the two buildings and, and work out how the, you know, having commercial and residential work in one larger building, I think could also be quite successful.
Any comments on what Mr. Levy just said? Because I think we need to give them some sort of consensus, kind of, I mean, not that we're taking a vote, but just some thoughts here.
I'm happy to comment again, Rudy.
Okay.
So, again, that was a discussion we had day one and, and we were not totally late to the party. But again, the, the totally, the different use that's up front and that they're trying to maintain the interior of that building, which is itself from the eighteen hundreds, they're already having, you know, their, their fun working with bearing walls, wood frame walls and so on in there. They're putting an elevator in that building to serve their needs. But the elevator doesn't work to serve the back building. They don't want to have the residential. They'd have to come into their building to make the elevator work where they want to put it. It's a beautiful old staircase in there that they want to maintain. So, I did ask them that day one. And that's when I was, we were first discussing saving the building, maybe combining the buildings. So, then you would have then a connector where the trucks don't work. I don't think that we want to tear apart the front lawn, the beauty of these lawns here, all are deep and, and, and wonderful. We don't want to have happened where it happened on some of the other streets where the front lawns are all used with parking and driving and so on. So,
And a big truck parked in front of the building doesn't add to the streetscape.
Well, I don't think the radius, the radius up front doesn't work as well as it does in the back. And there's quite a lot of topo in the front. So, we did look at it and, and I, I'm not dismissing the thought that Mr. Levy has, but they do not want to have the, the two, the two groups tied together. But, so that's where we went with that.
Mr. Ridberg, or no, actually, it's Mr. Hegney who's gonna know the answer to this question. Did they do surgery at all?
I, I don't believe so.
No.
Is an M D. But I, I don't believe that's provided, but we'll, we'll, we'll have that information for you.
And the reason I'm asking is if they ever need to have an ambulance at the building, having the addition be separate might, that might sway towards having the addition so that the ambulance could come from behind, to behind the building. So, that's just something, if they ever need an ambulance, if they have frequent use of ambulances at building like a private service. Just trying to figure out. Ms. Jenkins, you have your hand up. I can't see you.
Yeah, I, I think, again, I said earlier, I prefer the detached look on just in terms of making it clear that this isn't a second thought to a business separate residential building. I think the residents would find that much more attractive.
Okay. Mr. LaRoe.
Did I make one more comment?
I don't know. If you're not careful, you're gonna end up on the planning and zoning commission, which is not well paid.
Yeah. I just wanted to respond about the ambulance there. I do not believe they do surgery. But nevertheless, the reason that we're providing the handicapped ramp in the back into the front building, albeit that it's already up almost four feet from the ground. That's why you've noticed the large ramp that's there to get in that building. Really doesn't work well to come into the front of the building because it is totally non-ADA at that point. They want to maintain the old doors to create, you know, the front of the building. So, that's where they're gonna go in the back of the building.
Got it. Okay, Mr. LaRoe. I think that sways it because if you had an ADA ramp in the front of the building, it would really change it. Mr. LaRoe.
Madam Chair, I have a letter from the public that I'd just like to read or summarize.
Okay, is, I don't see anybody. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? First, let's do that. Thirty-two. Field Point? Please raise your virtual hand. No. Okay, so just your letter from the public.
Yeah. So, this letter is for Mr. Haskell, who owns next door at twenty-four. And he, he talks about not being able to connect with the applicant, which I know Mr. Hegney has been addressing. But he has two points. One is that he's not opposed to the project, but he has some, you know, concerns. First was regarding traffic and, and parking that you frequently visitors come into his site and park in tenant spaces and it creates, you know, problems for his property. So, without a proper parking management or adequately parked plan, they could be made worse. And secondly, you know, his property is, enjoys the south facing sun because there's nothing, you know, in the rear of thirty-two. And is concerned about the loom factor that the building has if the other building is to go up and, and, and cut that off. And that's it. And again, he just, he's, he hopes he can have more conversation with the applicant and that is it.
Unfortunately, Mr. Haskell did not have my correct email address since I'm not sure where it was going, but it didn't come to me. He reached out to my client over the fourth weekend. And we did exchange emails on Monday and I sent him another letter yesterday spelling out what our plan was and offering to meet with him and go over it.
Okay. Anything else?
I, I think this has been a very helpful discussion.
It was more than twenty minutes, that's for sure.
Well, our presentation was less than twenty minutes.
No, no, it's the whole discussion is supposed to be twenty minutes, Mr. Hegney. Just bear that in mind.
So, I can pick, poke my head out of the door. I didn't, I guess I say it was all my fault.
Okay. No, because several of the topics raised were what we were gonna ask Mr. Hegney anyway. We had a concern about how the building was gonna look from the street. That was our key concern yesterday. So, I think we're in good shape that we got that one. All right. So, with that, we will send you on your way. Come back to us before you do anything else. Don't file with H D C or A R C until you've talked to us. Although if you're gonna go the HO route, you could go ahead and file with H, with H D C.
To that end, Madam Chair, could we continue this discussion through the pre-app?
Yes, we would love that.
All right, good.
That would be great. Because, and if you want to jump on one of the meetings before the break, that would be great. Just come talk to us about what you're thinking and what it's looking like.
Okay. Give me a chance to, to talk to my client and see what, what her thinking is about you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, folks. And with that, we can go to our, you want to do the, let's go first to do the A D U vote and then we'll do the minutes?
Yeah, we can do that.
All righty. Oh, is it, Patrick, just for kosherness? If I'm not gonna vote, can I do everything else? Or if I'm not gonna vote, cannot, do I have to cede all my admin? Like, do I have a second to someone else?
You know, you, if you're going to abstain from, from a decision?
Yeah, I'm not gonna be, that if I can, can I not be seated on this and could I cede to Mary?
If you, if you want to recuse, then we would have to put an alternate in your place. Yes.
All righty, Mary's gonna
If you recuse, obviously you can't be part of the decision.
All righty. So, I'm gonna not be part of the decision. And may I may, I, I'm gonna just step out of it completely and I'm gonna let, I'm gonna cede to Mary entirely for this. Is, I know Barilak is still seated for low. And Mary is going to seat for me, but I believe that she should vote on this because she did so much work and it is hers. And I believe she should go on record. So, I'm gonna just mute myself.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's very considerate of you to do that.
Okay, so seated on this would be Jenkins, Wells, Barilak, Jeski?
It would be Macrae Levy, Jeski, Barilak, Jenkins.
Okay. Great. Okay, so for motion, text amendment, accessory dwelling units, P L P Z twenty twenty-three, two, three, six. This amendment seeks to modify section six five A, six ninety-five, et cetera, with new language defining and pertaining to the requirements for accessory dwelling units on residentially zoned properties pursuant to six twenty-two of the Town of Greenwich Building Zone Regulations and six, eight, sections eight dash three of the Connecticut General Statutes. Commission finds that the suggested revisions are in keeping with Guiding Principle number two of the two thousand nineteen P O C D, specifically objective two point one D and two point four. Therefore, a motion to approve the text amendment as written. Do I have a second?
Mary?
Second.
What?
Who it?
Wait, we're getting something here.
P O C D is the, that's the section we need to reference that it's in.
Yeah, two thousand nineteen P O C D, Guiding Principle number two, objective two point one D and two point four.
Thank you.
Did I, did I not say that?
You did. I heard it.
I, I, I was just, I, the, the ghost from beyond was pushing me to say that, that's all.
Okay. Next time I'll, I'll say it slower and louder.
See, Mary, you're on.
Mary, second?
Second.
Okay. How do we vote? Ms. Jenkins?
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Geski?
Hi.
Mr. Levy?
Hi.
And Mr. Barilak?
Hi.
Hi.
And Mr. Macry, is that an I? So motion carries?
Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Jenkins.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mary, for all the hard work.
Thank you.
Really.
Learning, learning experience.
It was a, I mean, really, she did a lot of work on this and she said, this is too much like being a practicing lawyer, which is why we could never get this is why we could never get Barilak to do anything.
Don't, don't, don't get involved writing an ordinance for less than affordable housing trust. Just don't do that.
So I think that, you know, Mary did just a fantastic job on this. She should be doing the uh zone, the um subdivision regulations.
Is this called no good deed goes unpunished?
No, we're, we're gonna do those a teeny tiny piece at a time. Mr. Yaski, we're gonna do the minutes now. I hereby move approval of the following minutes for twenty twenty-two, May twenty-four, June seven, June twenty-one, and July seven. Do I have a second?
I second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. Barilak, how do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Macry?
Hi.
Mr. Levy?
Hi.
Mr. Yaski?
Hi.
Albin is also an I. And with that, the motion passes five, nothing. And we are adjourned, my friends.
Hi, everybody.
Two, all right. Good job, everybody. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Bye-bye.
Bye.